Thank you councillors. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. We acknowledge this country and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders as traditional custodians, their language, songs and dance. We pay respect to elders past, present and emerging. May we continue to peacefully walk together in respect and in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies?
Mr Chair, I advise that councillor Cunningham and councillor Atwood will be absent today and I move that they be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that councillors Cunningham and Atwood be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All in favour please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Thanks Chair. I wish to advise councillor Cook will be absent, so I move that she be granted leave of absence. Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Strunk that councillor Cook be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All in favour please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4673rd and the 4674th meetings held on Tuesday 8th of March 2022 be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that the minutes of the 4673rd meeting and the 4674th meeting of council held on 8th March 2022 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All in favour please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it. Councillors, I draw your attention to question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Adamant.
Thank you Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, over the past two weeks, we have seen the spirit of the Brisbane community shine as our city makes its way through our largest ever clean-up. Could you please update the chamber on some of the efforts you have witnessed as you have visited suburbs throughout the city?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Adamant, through you Mr Chair. And you're right, absolutely right. It is, it's one of those things that has been said a lot, but it's been said because it's been meaningful. And that is, we've really seen once again the spirit of Brisbane come out in recent weeks. It's always been there, but there are certain times when it really comes to the fore. You get to see what a city and what a community is really made of in a time of crisis like we've seen. And, you know, we can't forget that the people of Brisbane and the Brisbane community has still, is still going through the tail end of the Covid pandemic as well. It's lasted for now over two years. And so to have that pandemic which has created a lot of pressure and a lot of stress on so many people, concerns with so many businesses, and then to have a natural disaster and a flood like we've seen now, on top of that, that would be enough to break a lot of people in a lot of places around the world, but not here in Brisbane. And just to witness the way that everyone has come together, whether it's been the unofficial mud army that started straight away, the friends and family army helping each other, the neighbours army, the official mud army, whether it's been the ADF personnel that have stepped in and done a fantastic job, whether it's been the council workers and contractors that have helped us, whether it's been the community organisations and the sporting clubs that have really rallied together, there's just been so many remarkable things that have happened. And I want to thank the Brisbane community for being who they are, for being such a strong and resilient community. Now, that is not said in any way to undersell the significant impact. I'm not saying or suggesting in any way that everything's alright. There's still so much recovery that needs to be done, but one thing that is for certain, the Brisbane community has stepped up and that spirit of Brisbane is alive and well and it's never been stronger. It's been, like all of you, I've spent the last couple of weeks out and about as much as possible. And there's been so many little wins and little stories and anecdotes that have just brought joy to my heart. It is the story of someone who has been flooded, you know, they're looking at the, all of their possessions, the contents of their life out on the curbside, yet they'll say the neighbour down the road got flooded worse. So I'm okay, I'm okay, you know? And it's the, it's the stories of the people that were in our evacuation centres like Diane in Rockleigh and in Skip Street that I was chatting with the other day as we did the clean-up and hearing her story about what she had been through and also now back in her property but living in a caravan in the property because the house is uninhabitable at this point in time, but still remarkably resilient. It's the stories like at Downey Park on Sunday afternoon when I went there and saw girls playing netball. Downey Park was smashed by the flood, yet literally within short period of time, the courts have been cleaned up and they're playing netball again. It's just these fantastic examples and stories of people bouncing back and being resilient. Now obviously the clean-up continues, the work continues, the recovery continues and that will take some time. We're getting to the point of almost completing the first pass of the biggest curbside collection effort the city has ever seen and we're really making sure that we do that job thoroughly. And as I've repeatedly said, we will come back again until the job is done. And we're also working on our support for a whole range of community organisations that have been impacted through our $5,000 grants. The form for the rates relief is now online and live, so people can apply for that and there's been a lot of interest in doing that. But also the work continues when it comes to our community assets that we manage, whether it's parks or bikeways, community facilities, a whole range of other facilities, the work is gearing up on those, not only in direct response to the flood, but as part of the recovery process. So I particularly want to thank the council officers who have done such a fantastic job in what is an extreme circumstance. The council officers who are not doing their normal jobs at the moment, and there are so many council officers doing a different job to what they would normally do. You know, whether it's the parking inspector that was out in Fairfield when we're down in Williams Street and Turner Street in Fairfield, who was just helping with the clean-up, part of the mud army, whether it is the librarians that are out there doing different things to what they would normally do, there are so many examples, whether it's the parks officers who are now involved in curbside clean-up, there are countless examples of people going above and beyond and doing the right thing for our community.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Over the past two weeks, Lord Mayor, it's very clear that drainage is a serious issue in our city. From the 2019-20 financial year to the 2020-2021 financial year, you cut funding on drainage infrastructure by nearly $1.5 million. Resident complaints about drainage subsequently increased by 62% from 2019 to 2020. Even before this flood, residents have been crying out for better drainage infrastructure in places like Hemant. Residents get flooded after light rain and recent housing developments that your LMP administration has approved have made matters worse. In my own ward, there are drainage projects including tidal valves and stormwater drainage that council officers have identified as real and serious issues that require funding in the budget because there is not enough funding in the drainage maintenance budget to do this work. Lord Mayor, why have you been neglecting Brisbane's drainage infrastructure?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you Mr Chair. Yes, yet another question based on inaccurate and not factual information. I think all of us would remember councillor Cassidy's wonderful interview with Steve Austin recently about drainage, where he was trying to illustrate that somehow drainage had been cut when Steve Austin pointed out that actually we were spending more on drainage. And when councillor Cassidy was asked what he thinks, what he thinks we should spend on drainage, all he could do was giggle. He giggled. He didn't know. He just said more. Well, the reality is, we have continued to invest appropriately in the whole range of things that respond to flooding. Now, it is, it is a fallacy that one single thing will stop flooding.
Councillor Johnston please.
It is a fallacy. There is no amount of drainage that you can build that will negate the fact that Brisbane is built on a flood plain. These decisions that were made 150, 160 years ago in some cases, and certainly sometimes before the city of Brisbane...
Councillor Johnston please.
...even existed, these decisions are legacy decisions that we all live with. Entire suburbs, entire suburbs, places like Rockleigh, places like Fairfield, if you took the logic that you can solve flooding there, you would clear the entire suburb of people. There'd be no homes, no businesses. That's not a realistic way of responding to this. And so drainage, things like flood buyback, things like flood resilient homes, things like backflow valves, things like flood mapping and awareness for residents, things like resilient programmes for infrastructure and assets, the whole suite of them are the appropriate response to flooding. But there is no one single thing that will solve the problem.
Councillor Johnston please.
And anyone suggesting that there is one single thing is a snake oil salesman, a snake oil salesman, giving false hope to residents for political purposes. That is not...
Councillor Cassidy.
That is not right in this sort of situation. Now let's have a grown-up conversation about the things that need to have.
Councillor Strunk.
Let's not try and sell snake oil to the residents of Brisbane that one single thing will solve all the problems. I even saw on the TV there was someone suggesting that we should have the big London floodgates, you know, the big ones that stop the tides coming in. Well, I mean, not only would that cost billions of dollars, but it also, it ignores the fact that stuff was coming down the river as coming up the river. And so these simplistic solutions do not do anything for anyone. They simply don't. As I said, there's a whole suite of responses that we've been undertaking as a council since 2011 and there's a whole suite of responses that we will continue to undertake. And I've made it very clear that we are absolutely open to tweaking our investment in different areas based on the outcome of this event and what we've learnt from it. We need to make sure we learn from it and if there's more investment that needs to go here or there, then we will certainly consider that and we're open to it. But suggesting that one single thing is a silver bullet is very misleading and very disappointing.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor McCohey.
Thank you Chair. My question is to the Chair of the City Standards Committee, councillor Marks. Councillor Marks, Brisbane is currently dealing with the biggest ever waste clean-up in our city's history. Tens of thousands of tonnes of waste has already been collected from curbsides with much more to go. Could you please provide an update to the chamber on Operation Collect, including some of the milestones reached to date?
Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you Mr Chair. And through you, I thank councillor McCohey for the question. As councillor McCohey knows, the severe weather Brisbane recently experienced was not your average summer storm, so therefore this is not your average clean-up and recovery effort. We've seen the devastation of floods and what families are dealing with. And the Shrinna Council is prioritising support for Brisbane residents to clean up and safely dispose of their household flood-related waste. Council officers, contractors and the ADF have been out every day in communities helping to rebuild lives. They've been working through the night to get families and businesses back on their feet. And as a part of the Lord Mayor's three-pronged waste strategy, a special flood-affected curbside collection was instigated to clean up Brisbane. Operation Collect should not be mistaken as a normal city-wide collection, curbside collection. As all of us as local councillors know, a general curbside collection is where people, residents get to put out the stuff that they actually don't want anymore. This Operation Collect is they basically have no choice, they're pretty much entering their whole houses and lives onto the footpath. And in many cases, I was out there with councillor McCohey at one point, their actually, their walls and their ceilings are actually also joining all of their worldly belongings on the footpath. So there was enormous amount of what flood-affected waste that's been collected to date and has been put out. Obviously, we've still got waste being taken directly to our resource recovery centres and we've had more than 19,000 free trips by the residents. Operation Collect has had thousands of people on the ground making hundreds of trips as we speak, picking up flood-affected waste and clearing it off our streets. Council has got every available truck, waste compactor and contractor, every available person and machine on the ground cleaning up the city. And I want to make it very clear to the chamber, Operation Collect is moving through all the flood-affected areas and no one will be missed. I also want to take at this point to say a very big thank you to those council officers, those guys and girls that are out there on the ground. We potentially don't know their names, we potentially may never ever get to meet any of them or some of them or all of them. And especially as a Chair of City Standards, there's a number of people in my portfolio, chances are I will never get to meet them, but I know that they're out there working very hard for our residents, so I want to take this opportunity to say a very big thank you to them. I also want to raise an emerging issue with the chamber today, which is illegal dumping. And I've had multiple reports of residential and commercial flood waste appearing in parks and community facilities across the city. So our message to the residents of Brisbane is clear on this, there is no need to dump your waste in community facilities or parks. If you have flood-affected waste or household items, it'll either be picked up through Operation Collect or take it to one of our four resource recovery centres for free. Our compliance team is monitoring illegal dumping across the city and fines will be issued to those who continue to do the wrong thing. I am aware that there was a situation out in one of the industrial areas where the compliance officers went out and spoke to those local businesses and were told that the flood, the waste that was on the roadway was washed down in the flood, so I don't know about any flood that you've ever been in, but I've never seen one that stacks a whole lot of tyres neatly in big piles and that. So anyway, that was their story, so they're sticking to it. So I just want to say again, thank you to the council officers for all the work you've done.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Johnston.
My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, I refer you to your answer from last week's question about flood warnings and I quote, you said the following. "I've said repeatedly, based on the information that we got," and I'll repeat that, "based on the information that we got and the timelines we had, we got it out as quickly as possible." End quote. For most people in Brisbane, that was approximately 8:00 or 9:00pm on Sunday 27th of February, well after numerous houses in Tennyson Ward had flooded in Oxley, Fairfield, Yoronga, Corinda and more. The previous day from 11am on Saturday 26th of February, I was reporting to the LDCC flooded homes around Tennyson Ward, as is our role in an emergency. Why were you not listening to the information from your councillors on the ground in suburbs known to flood to provide stronger, clearer and more timely warning and evacuation advice?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Johnston, through you Mr Chair for the question. Obviously, the matter of flood warning and early warning systems and early alerts is very topical and I thank you for raising this question. In terms of reports of flooding across the city, we definitely had significant reports of flooded roads, flooded creeks, flooded sporting fields, closed roads throughout the Friday night and the Saturday, but I am yet to see any indication that there were flooded homes at that point in time. And I certainly couldn't find any records from you...
Point of order to you councillor Johnston.
...in that respect.
I have the emails, I've already provided them to Justice De Jersey this morning and that advice, that advice...
Councillor Johnston.
That advice, the Lord Mayor is lying to the council chamber...
Councillor Johnston.
...and that advice was provided to the LDCC.
Please sit down, that is not a point of order, Lord Mayor.
It seems it doesn't really matter whether I answer the question or not, or what I say. Councillor Johnston has a point she wants to make. The reality is, I have seen no information from councillor Johnston or anyone else that there was flooded homes on the Saturday. Remember, Saturday was the day that the Premier was saying there's nothing to worry about. So there's definitely flooding going on in creeks and through a lot of different areas and roads were closed, we knew that, we all saw that. But look, I'm not suggesting that I was able to be in everywhere at every part of the city at once to see this, but based on the information coming in to me and the information coming from a whole range of different sources, I wasn't aware of any flooding that was happening on Saturday of homes, of homes. There was other types of flooding happening, as I've pointed out. But look, this is something I'm happy to have a look at and the emails that councillor Johnston is referring to, I'm happy to have a look at those. I have not seen those emails. And I can tell all councillors that the last thing I was doing was actually waiting for her emails to come in at that point. I was not doing that. I was, I was working with the council officers, looking at the flood mapping and the flood modelling. I was working to make sure we got early notification out to people as the situation evolved, but I certainly was not at any stage on Saturday given an indication that houses had flooded on the Saturday. So yeah, happy to have a look at this councillor Johnston, and I say that genuinely, if, if there are emails, that's good. I'll have a look, but I certainly didn't see them. And I don't know anyone else in my team that was aware of those emails or reports either. So happy to have a look at that, but it's certainly news to me councillor Johnston.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further questions? Councillor Owen.
Thank you. My question is to the acting Chair of the Finance and City Governance Committee, councillor Huang. Councillor Huang, strong cooperation between the Morrison Government and the Shrinna Council continues to deliver for residents with the allocation of $23 million in the LRCI, which is the Local Roads and Community Infrastructure Grants, for targeted local projects. Could you please update the chamber on some of these projects which are being funded by the Morrison Government and the Shrinna Council?
Councillor Huang.
Thank you Mr Chair, and I'd like to thank councillor Owen for the question. Earlier this year, we have, we were pleased to receive confirmation on the latest council project to receive funding from the Morrison Government's Local Roads and Community Infrastructure Programme. This is the third phase of the programme. In this round, we will receive $23 million, as councillor Owen mentioned, towards seven key projects right across our suburbs. This adds to the $11.7 million allocated in Phase 1 and $40.7 million in Phase 2. Overall, the LRCI programme will deliver $75.8 million in funding towards 74 projects across Brisbane. Forty-nine projects have already been completed and I'm pleased to update the chamber on the seven latest Shrinna council projects to receive funding. Well councillor Owen, you will be excited to hear that over $7 million will be provided to improve roads in Palau. Stage, yep, Stage 1 of Wadeville Street and Richer Road Corridor Improvement Project will improve safety and reduce congestion. Works will include improvements from Wadeville Street at Parkwood Road to Ven, is that Dierren or Dyrren?
Ben Dierren.
Ben Dierren Road, Palau, including the installation of traffic signals, right turn improvements on Richer Roads into Palau State School and the new children's crossing on Richer Road into the school. This will benefit all road users, including pedestrians, cyclists and public transport passengers. And there's also $4.3 million in funding for the Shumcliffe S. Cup, S. Cup, S. Cupman, excuse me? S. Cupman, yep, sorry. This is a local heritage listed natural asset which requires works to protect its environmental and recreational values are protected, maintained and enhanced at this iconic Brisbane foreshore destination. The funding will initiate priority stages of the improvement works to support the natural systems and enhance visitor amenity. We know S. Cupman is affected by severe weather events, including the recent record rainfall event. These works will be timely to ensure public safety of visitors to the S. Cupman is improved and will support and reinstate the natural systems of this area to become more resilient in the future. And also, there's also $4.5 million towards council's Witten Barracks Community Heart project in Indrupili. The Witten Barracks site played a vital role in military intelligence during World War II. The three cell block buildings on the site are of significant historical interest and are listed on the state's heritage register. The works will include the refurbishment and reuse of the historic Witten Barracks precinct to deliver a significant community asset. But we, and we also received $6 million towards the new Brisbane International Cycle Park to be located within Marari Recreation Reserve. We are upgrading this facility to be a Destination Premier International Cycling and Wheel precinct. The works will include the construction of a portion of the overall proposed development. This exciting project will see the criteria track upgraded to international standards and the modern clubhouse build to cater for the demand that we know the upgraded facility will generate. And there, there is also funding for lighting upgrades on Ipswich Row in Ulungaba and at the Cadran Grove Open Village. These projects will improve safety and reduce energy consumption. We will also be supporting the Brecon Ridge Scouts and Girls, Girl Guides. These groups are both located in MacPherson Park and this federal funding will support building maintenance works to replace the roof at the scout facility and deliver drainage and plumbing maintenance for the Girls Guides, Girl Guides, sorry. We once again thank the Morrison Government for their support, of the Shrinna Council and the people of Brisbane through LRCI programme. These projects have supported our economic recovery during the pandemic and will continue to support us as we recover from the floods.
Thank you councillor Huang. Further questions? Councillor Griffiths. Mic's not on, councillor Griffiths? Councillor Griffiths, we're just trying to sort out your mic issue, we're not hearing you. Would you like to reallocate that question to one of your team? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Yesterday, the Mackay Regional Council sent a crew of field service workers to Brisbane to help out with flood clean-up. In their own words, they said they were answering an SOS from Brisbane City Council. Now while this help from Mackay is appreciated, it shouldn't be necessary, it's clear your LMP administration's obsession with contracting out the basics like mowing and painting is taking its toll again. Thanks to your decisions, council's workforce is now so hollow that we have to beg for help from other regional councils. If more of the basics were done in-house by employees, we could be redirecting those workers to help with flood recovery of course. Lord Mayor, will you now admit that your decisions to contract out the basics are failing this city?
Lord Mayor.
Mr Chair, I can tell you that the decision to cut, to contract out grass cutting was made by the Australian Labor Party. And I can tell you that grass cutting played no part of the flood recovery process. Grass cutting contractors are still required to cut grass, they're not required for flood recovery purposes. So another spurious example that's been used here and one that's particularly hypocritical.
Councillor Cassidy please.
But I really do wonder about the type of person that would try to make a political issue about another council helping us out. What, what type of people would do that?
Councillor Strunk.
What type of people would criticise the fact that other councils are offering and have, and have agreed to help us out? Like that is a good thing? That is a good thing? And I want to commend the various councils that have offered and agreed to help us out, including Redland City Council. Obviously, Redland had some relatively minor impacts of flooding, but nothing to the scale of Brisbane. And so they have some crews that they provided to us to support us. So that is, that is something we are genuinely grateful for. The Highlands Council, the Mackay Council, and we've had a number of other councils, sorry, Gladstone Council provides some support as well. And I've got to say, if they are ever in a situation where they need help, we will reciprocate because we really appreciate their support. But I made it very clear last week in question time, when I was asked a question about contracting out, that we actually have more staff since I became Lord Mayor in field services in that area. And few, City Standards, that's right. Old habits die hard, City Standards. We have more full-time equivalent staff than when I became Lord Mayor and we have fewer contractors.
That's right.
So how does this fit with Labor's political narrative? It's, it's simply a made-up bogus thing. It is a made-up bogus thing.
What, do you want me to say something?
No, we don't want you to say anything.
No, I'll have to reject. Little had to reject. We heard you though, thank you.
Sorry for that.
Confirmed, we hear you.
We, uh, we've been so grateful for all of the support. It, it, it's like councillor Cassidy saying, oh, why do you need the ADF? If you had more full-time staff, you wouldn't need the ADF. I mean, this is, this is an emergency situation here. The whole point of this emergency response is that it goes beyond and above our business-as-usual operations. And we've diverted people from all different types of jobs in council to help us out. And this, this whole attempt to try and politicise something which is just wrong is really shameful. It's sort of like saying, you know, I'm not going to give to the salvos because the government should be solving that problem. You know, we should be grateful for councils like Mackay and Gladstone and Highlands and Redlands. They really, they show the spirit of Brisbane and the spirit of Queensland. It's a pity that councillor Cassidy doesn't.
Thank you, further questions, councillor Landers?
My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, while there was a temporary pause on some of our much-loved community events and programmes, I understand that many of them are back up and running. Could you please update the chamber on what residents can look forward to when it comes to our programme of community facilities and events?
Thank you councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and through you, I thank councillor Landers for the question and for her interest in the flood recovery across the Lifestyle and Community Services Programme. Can I just start off by saying that the entire Lifestyle and Community Services Programme area has put in a tremendous amount of effort in the past two weeks? Not only in helping our sporting and community groups across the city, but also by ensuring that community facilities are operational and able to service the needs of the community. On the topic of our community organisations, I'm happy to report that many of the community and sporting clubs across our network have been recovering through the support of both council sport and recreation officers and their dedicated network of community volunteers. We've seen across Brisbane countless working bees organised by our grassroots community organisations, with volunteers and members embodying the spirit of Brisbane and doing their part for their community. After a massive effort over the past two weeks, I'm very proud to report that last weekend, all major sporting organisations recommenced training activities across Brisbane, with peak bodies such as Football Queensland announcing the return of all competitions as of Friday 18th of March. It's important to mention such milestones as it represents the fact that our community and sports clubs are beginning to recover. In terms of council managed assets and services, I'd like to take this opportunity to highlight the activities currently on offer across Brisbane to residents. Beginning with our much-loved libraries, I'm pleased to report that over the past two weeks, all our libraries within the library network were open to visitors looking to use them. At a time of great need, I'm told that some of our libraries saw an increase in customers using our facilities to access power, internet and computer, computer services. And it makes me very proud to hear that these services could be offered to the residents of Brisbane who needed them. In regards to scheduled events, I'm happy to report that library activities had returned as of the 7th of March, bringing back more things for residents to see and do across Brisbane. Visitors to our libraries are once again able to experience a wide variety of activities, including our first five forever reading programme, our very well-received writers-in-residence programme, along with some new programming over the coming few weeks to assist residents to reinvigorate their gardens after flooding. For those who find themselves within the CBD and looking for some great activities to see and do, one need look no further than our very own Museum of Brisbane. Museum of Brisbane is an oasis from the hustle and bustle of the city, a sleek contemporary space boldly placed on the rooftop of the city's premier heritage building, City Hall. It provides exhibition programmes that explore aspects of Brisbane's history and culture through social history, visual arts, craft and design, and is proudly supported by the Shrinna council. I'm happy to report to the chamber that the Museum of Brisbane is open to visitors and its programming continues, including its tours of both the clock tower and Brisbane City Hall. The clock tower includes a look behind Australia's largest analogue clock faces and time to explore the observation platform that shares a unique view of our city. And of course, the city hall tours allow visitors to see its neoclassical façade, mosaic tiles, stained glass windows and soaring ceilings. In addition, I'm happy to report that Museum of Brisbane's latest exhibition, Making Place: 100 Views of Brisbane, will be open to the public on Saturday, the 26th of March. Making Place will present more than 100 historical and contemporary depictions of the Brisbane region from the Museum of Brisbane collections. Residents are encouraged to become immersed in a newly commissioned sound artwork by artist-in-residence Lawrence English, site-listening Brisbane, that captures the city's many soundscapes. I encourage you all to visit while this exhibition is on offer and flag this exciting exhibition with the residents of your ward. For those looking to get out and about and explore the history and culture of Brisbane, I'm also very happy to report that our Brisbane Greeters Programme is also back up and running with some minor modifications to some of our greets. The Greeters' Choice CBD Walking Tour continues to run seven days a week and connects visitors and locals to the hidden secrets, historic stories, as well as current events and opportunities for attendees to shop local. As many of you know, March is Women's History Month and we have a special greet that recognises and celebrates the women who have contributed to our history and helped shape the city of Brisbane. There really are a lot of activities taking place across our city right now and I would like to take the last few moments to highlight these. The Planetarium is currently fully operational and ready to accept visitors and school bookings, with fall holiday programmes being offered over the Easter holidays.
Councillor Howard, I'm sorry, your time has expired, further questions? Councillor Griffiths, we can hear you.
Yeah, can you hear me now? That's good. Thank you. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, in 2005, Brisbane City Council introduced a voluntary home buyback scheme allowing residents with flood-affected properties to sell their homes to council. After 2011 Brisbane City Council flood review, it was recommended to increase and expand this programme. In 2015, the LMP significantly reduced funding for this programme. And then in 2018, your LMP administration cut the programme. In the recent floods, we saw many homes that were inundated in 2011 go under again. These homes were clearly built on floodplains and as a result, poor planning decisions by this council were located in, in terrible spots. Lord Mayor, why did your LMP administration cut the council's voluntary home buyback scheme?
Lord Mayor?
Well, thank you. That's a, that's a, it's an interesting question, councillor Griffiths. I can tell you that I wasn't the Lord Mayor in 2018, if your memory is that bad. It wasn't, I wasn't the Lord Mayor until 2019. But based on a decade of experience with the voluntary home purchase scheme or flood buyback scheme, this, this council, we invested over $50 million to buy 112 homes. So that's a significant investment, $50 million. You know, when you think about the different things that council can invest money in, that is a lot of money that was put towards this programme and 112 homes were purchased. And by the end of that process, we were getting a situation where, you know, an average of, across the programme, two in three people were knocking back the offer to sell or for us to purchase their home. And in the final sort of period of that programme, we, we were getting very few yeses at all. So it was really, there was a lot of people that just weren't interested in selling. And so this, this is something that I've made clear that we're happy to have a look at reactivating. But for it to be, for it to be a well-funded programme, it will require support beyond what Brisbane City Council can provide. And so when we had the flood reports that came out of 2011, it was actually suggested and recommended at that time that the flood purchase scheme or the flood buyback scheme should be a three-level of government scheme, federal, state and local. And guess who came to the party? It was only us. It was only us on our own. And so with that investment of $50 million, a certain amount was achieved. But when you think about it, more than 20,000 or around 20,000 homes experienced some form of inundation in this recent flood. And then there were also a range of businesses as well. So, you know, something like 28 to 30,000 properties experienced some inundation. Now, where do you start? Where do you start? And so at the time, the flood purchase scheme was based on creek flooding of Q2, basically. It was, it was creek and river flooding of Q2, which, which basically means that it would flood several times a year on average. That's, that's how regular it was. And they're, they're the homes that we started looking at purchasing. And even for homes that flooded several times a year, two-thirds of people said no. I mean, it's one thing to, to flood in 2011, then again in 2022. Imagine if your house flooded twice a year? But even in that situation, people were saying no. So I, I would simply say, just like I said with the drainage question, just be careful of thinking that this is a silver bullet because it is not. It can provide some good outcomes. And I'm certainly not opposed to a voluntary purchase scheme. But there are billions of dollars worth of property that were impacted in the 2022 floods, billions. No government alone can afford to buy all of that property, nor, nor would anyone actually choose to buy all that property. And more importantly than that, you can be sure that a large number of those people wouldn't want to sell. Large number. So we're certainly open to reintroduction of a buyback scheme. It was run for a decade in this city. And it's interesting because I didn't see one under the Labor Party. Under Labor, there was no flood buyback scheme. All we had under Labor were secret flood reports, remember? Remember? They covered up the flood reports. They, they did a bit of modelling behind the scenes and, and thought, oh no. We can't let anyone know about this, let's keep it secret. And so our approach has always been different. And so we started back in 2005, that decade-long programme, invested more than $50 million into it. But that was just one of many things that we did. And I think, I think overall, the most important thing that we have done is to make freely available to everyone the flood mapping for every single property in Brisbane. That way, people can make informed decisions about where they live and where they want to buy a property. And those decisions are really important. One of the things that has struck me as well during this last couple of weeks is, I was talking to Guy, actually, I was with you councillor Mackay in-
I'm sorry, Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Thank you. Further questions, councillor Hutton?
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of Economic Development and the Brisbane-
Excuse me councillor Hutton, councillor Griffiths is raising a point of order. On mute again? Still on mute? Can we roll on?
Here we go.
Okay.
Is that it? I'd like to suspend the rules to allow me to move a, a motion.
Seconded.
Thank you. I move, I understand, I've got three minutes to move this, move this motion. So as we know and as we've just heard, Brisbane has gone through yet another major flood in ten years. And it's been a massive impact on residents' business and in particular, their homes. I received, as did the Lord Mayor yesterday, an email from a local resident in Rockleigh, a number of local residents, but a resident called Luke. And he was asking that myself and the Lord Mayor go and meet him and other residents in Rockleigh to actually see what they've endured. Many of these residents down there have lost everything and actually they were flooding on Saturday, Lord Mayor. They were being evacuated from their homes on Saturday. Many of these residents had to be evacuated from their home and he's asking to participate in the buyback scheme and to, or to participate in the resilience home, home programme, not just for himself, but for other residents of Rockleigh. Rockleigh, as you just said, Lord Mayor, many of those homes flood two times a year or flood into the living areas once a year.
Councillor Griffiths?
And it doesn't, doesn't make the news.
Councillor Griffiths, councillor Griffiths, you need to establish why this couldn't be a notified motion, why you couldn't put it on the notice paper?
This couldn't be a notified motion because this came through yesterday after notified motions had closed. So the reason I'm raising this now is this resident hasn't seen the Lord Mayor in Rockleigh, would like to meet with the Lord Mayor in Rockleigh and is asking that the Lord Mayor attends a meeting in the next two weeks with myself and the Lord Mayor and residents so that we can actually discuss the impact of flooding on those homes and on the buyback programme and the resilient flood homes programme.
Okay. Councillor Griffiths has moved a motion for the suspension of standing rules. All in favour of that motion to suspend standing rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Councillor Griffiths? You may now move the motion, councillor Griffiths. And can you circulate it, please?
Okay. So the motion is that I'm requesting the Lord Mayor, Shrinna, and to meet with myself and the owners of the property at 14 in Galar Street and other properties within Rockleigh within the next two weeks, which is the 28th of the third, twenty, of this year, at a time best suiting each of, each of us to review the flood impact on our community. I'd like to work with council on property buyback and flood resilience home programme in Rockleigh. And this resident says, I have purchased, purchased, pursued with council over a number of years regarding these programmes and they've often, they've been knocked back and he wants to have those programmes.
Councillor Griffiths, is that the motion as you've worded it?
That's the motion.
Okay, have you forwarded that?
Seconded.
Have you forwarded that through? Okay, it's a very long motion and I have no opportunity to repeat it back word for word.
I can read it again if you want.
I will take it that the motion is to, that the Lord Mayor meet with you and a resident in-
Point, point of order, Chair.
Point of order to you.
Chair, this is clearly a shambolic urgency motion. Just perhaps councillor Griffiths can, can, you know, reset this, write it down, send it through to you, you know, after the, after the afternoon tea break.
Councillor Johnston? Councillor Johnson, no shouting out. I'm sorry councillor Murphy, I didn't hear your point of order.
My point of order, Chair, was this has clearly not been a well-thought-through urgency motion. It's not structured properly, hasn't been sent to you. Perhaps councillor Griffiths can reset, send it to you after the afternoon to- Sorry, I'm trying to make my point of order.
Cam, we, there's a very long motion there councillor Griffiths with a fairly long preamble. Can I take it that your motion essentially is that you would like the Lord Mayor and you to meet with a resident in your, your area, your ward?
Yeah, Rockleigh, its residents in Rockleigh by the 28th of the third, yes, to discuss flooding.
Okay, I'll take that as the motion councillor Murphy. I'll take that as read as your motion councillor Griffiths, you have 10 minutes to speak to the motion.
Yes, thank you. And, and as we've heard, residents all over the city were affected by flooding. But in particular rightly was it-
Councillor Griffiths does require a second hour.
Oh, yes.
Councillor Johnston!
No, no, that's, that's, that is, Mr Chair, that is not appropriate. That kind of conduct is not at all acceptable in this place.
Councillor Johnston? Councillor Johnston, I consider you displaying unsuitable meeting conduct and accordance with section 21.4 of the meeting's local law, I hereby request that you cease your unacceptable behaviour in this place by standing, shouting and otherwise displaying unacceptable behaviour. I'm doing my job councillor Johnson by, by reading out- Councillor Johnson, I consider you are displaying unsuitable meeting conduct and accordance with meeting 21.4 of the meeting local law, I hereby request that you cease your unacceptable behaviour. I believe the motion was seconded.
I did second it.
Yes. Councillor Griffiths?
Okay, thank you. Look, in terms of this motion, this motion, it's really simple. It's asking for the Lord Mayor to come out to Rockleigh, meet with me and residents. And he still hasn't contacted me or discussed anything about Rockleigh in relation to that suburb and the, the massive impacts we've had down there, not just on, on homes, but on industry. Industry, we haven't even started scratching, which is disappointing that our leadership in this city isn't, isn't interested in Rockleigh. I really have been writing year in, year out with, about this resident. We've been taking this up in terms of the buyback programme. His home, this resident's home was eligible under the previous buyback programme, but when we went to apply for it, the buyback programme was over. when we went to apply for it, the buyback programme was over. This resident is, we went through this in 2011, where the previous resident had his home wiped out, and he moved out of that home. Now we have this young family in the home, they've been wiped out. Many of these people have no insurance. I know I keep hearing the Lord Mayor say, well, all they've got to do is check on the maps and find out whether their property floods. Their properties do flood. These people buy these properties because they can't afford to live anywhere else. They can't afford the insurance. So the insurance a year for these properties is $8,000. We have people in Rockleigh now who have mental health problems, who are on low incomes, who are even trapped in their homes now, even in their homes, and they're in these homes that constantly flood. And I want to get a resolution on this so that we can offer the community of Rockleigh a chance to resolve this issue, so we either do buyback or we do house-raising, particularly targeting the worst-affected homes, so that we're getting those homes out of the water, so that in 10 years' time, when the Olympics are on and when supposedly the next flood will hit, we'll actually not have to be going through this with these residents. I think it makes sense. It's really good for residents to resolve this problem. It's not just our council that will be dealing with this problem, it's going to be every council in Australia dealing with this problem that's caused significantly by climate change. We need to move with the times. And I think what this resident is asking is reasonable. He's asking for a meeting with you, Lord Mayor, you determine the budget, he knows you determine the budget. They know, residents know that you have the majority of councillors, 19. They want to meet with you, they want to see you on the ground, they want to show you through their homes and show you what they've gone through, so that we can actually get a resolution to this, because ultimately, what I'm trying to do here is get a commitment and get a resolution to this, like we had. And let's just be honest here, Lord Mayor, it was the Labor Majority Council that actually introduced the buyback programme. It was done by the Labor Majority Council. So let's, and it was cut by the LMP. So let's be honest, the Labor Majority Council brought that programme in. And he and I want to see it continue on, not to be cut by the LMP and to be told, essentially, these people, what I heard you say, Lord Mayor, is these people, they chose to buy their, tough luck, really. They're buying there because they can't afford it anywhere else. And these homes are affordable homes that should be, that we should be making safe for all residents. So, Lord Mayor, I encourage you to have a meeting with me and these residents on site by the 28th of the third. That's what this motion is about. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers? Lord Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chair. What we've seen here is a shambolic attempt to try and politicise something which should not be politicised. It is quite clear that councillor Griffiths wanted to do his usual stunt, and just go back to the residents, say, LMP voted against this motion, they don't care. This is the kind of thing that happens when you're prepared to burn people for political reasons, like the Labor Party is. Now, this is a real person here, this person should not be turned into a political football by councillor Griffiths. Now, I don't need a motion of council to meet with people in Rockleigh, because I've already been out there and I didn't see councillor Griffiths out there. The reality is, I care about these people, but there were 30,000 people flooded in this city, and I cannot possibly meet with all of them.
Councillor Johnston.
But what I will do is I will meet with this person, but I'm not going to meet with councillor Griffiths, because he politicises everything. It is shameful and disgraceful. I'll meet with this person, and I've got a good story for this person to talk about, because he is genuinely interested from this email in what can be done to help him, and I want to help him. I want to help him. Councillor Griffiths, this is shameful. This is shameful. Councillor Griffiths wants to use this resident for political purposes, and it is disgusting and shameful.
Lord Mayor?
Now-
Councillor Griffiths, point of order.
Yes. Yes, claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted, Lord Mayor.
Now, in this particular case, this property, the resident is asking either to be part of a buyback scheme or to be part of the flood resilient homes programme. And I've just said that both of those programmes, as far as I'm concerned, are on the table, and I am open to both of those things. But one thing that councillor Griffiths maybe is aware of, he should be aware of it, because he's been the local councillor for almost 20 years, I think, is that in our voluntary home purchase scheme, when it operated, we went to the previous owner of this same property, and we offered to buy this property. This property. And the owner, previous owner, wasn't interested. And so we tried to buy this property.
That's right.
This same property. How dare councillor Griffiths try and politicise this? Like, we wanted to do the right thing, we wanted to buy this specific property, and this goes to show, the home purchase scheme is voluntary. It is voluntary. But I want to help this resident, I will meet with this resident, but I'm not going to be dictated to by a motion of this council to get involved in some kind of political meeting with councillor Griffiths. So I'll be voting no to this motion, but I will be meeting with this resident.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak in support of this motion by councillor Griffiths, and want to just talk to some of the accusations that this Lord Mayor has just thrown around.
Sorry, excuse me, councillor Cassidy, I'll take the point of misrepresentation first. Councillor Griffiths.
Yep, that's it. There was two points of misrepresentation. One, I'm not using this gentleman politically, he actually knows that I was raising this today, and he was happy for it. He's trying to get a result. The second one was that I'm not interested in resolving these problems, I'm very interested. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. So the Lord Mayor just now has thrown around some accusations that Labor councils are trying to politicise the response to the flood recovery, and he said that last week as well. And I just want to take the Lord Mayor to task around this, because the only people that have been politicising both the flood crisis and flood recovery are LMP councillors. Last week, we had the Lord Mayor slandering councillor Griffiths, spreading lies that he wasn't on the ground in his community. He was then forced to apologise. And the Lord Mayor stood up as a leader of this city in a public place, in the council chamber, and told a bare-faced lie about the whereabouts of councillor-
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Go back to Dubai, sit down.
No, point of order. That sort of, can I ask that councillor Cassidy get some emotional control over himself, please? And also, can I ask, the use of the terms that he's using about the Lord Mayor-
He lied.
Are not appropriate in this place, and I ask that he withdraw it, please.
Thank you, councillor. Why aren't you being asked to withdraw that observation, please? Councillor Cassidy, will you?
Are you asking me to, Chair?
I am.
I will.
Thank you.
We then had this strange situation during the middle of this flood crisis, where an LMP councillor was using a fake account to troll Labor councillors about the whereabouts of councillor Griffiths.
Councillor Cassidy, you do need to come to the motion.
Yeah, that was a lie. Councillor Mackay will take that. So that LMP councillor, instead of supporting their community, was using a fake Facebook account to troll-
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Deputy Mayor.
Councillor Cassidy is misleading, and if he has any evidence, he needs to send it to the CEO or the CCC. We have no idea what bollocks he is talking about.
Councillor Cassidy, you're making a number of observations here, which may be consistent with things that happen, but I please ask you to come to the motion before us.
Is the term bollocks acceptable?
Councillor Cassidy, I'm asking you to come to the motion.
No, I will, I will, Chair, but I just want to know, is the term bollocks acceptable?
Are you using that word, councillor Cassidy?
No, councillor Adams just said what I said was bollocks. Is that an acceptable term?
I haven't made a ruling before on bollocks, but in the context, I would ask you to come to the motion, I'm not going to make a ruling on the word bollocks.
And then we had last week councillor Owen, who got up and said that the Lord Mayor had sent her to Rockleigh to ground-truth what councillor Griffiths had been saying publicly. Now, what that was, in essence, was councillor Owen getting up in this chamber and saying, the Lord Mayor thought councillor Griffiths was lying about what was happening on the ground, and she was sent out to supposedly ground-truth what was happening there on the ground, and she said she only went to the Rockleigh markets.
Point of order. Councillor- Excuse me. Point of order, councillor-
I know the motion was a bit long-winded, but you did clarify what the motion was about. Could you bring the leader of the opposition back to the motion?
Yes. Councillor Cassidy-
I'm responding to accusations of the Lord Mayor levelled at Labor councillors.
To the motion before us, please.
So the Lord Mayor, during his debate, during his debate, made accusations about Labor councillors politicising the flood recovery, and I'm responding to those. We had councillor Adam Allen out there on his social media last week, saying that LMP council workers were the ones doing the clean-up, instead of Brisbane City council workers. So when this Lord Mayor gets up here and he's got the gall to stand up in this place and say that other people who have been showing incredible leadership out in their wards, like councillor Griffiths, in supporting their communities, and when this Lord Mayor gets up and says, oh, no, that's all political, they don't really care, people will see right through that, because out in councillor Griffiths' ward, they see leadership, and from this Lord Mayor, they do not.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
I rise to speak on the motion moved by councillor Griffiths, and to support his calls for buyback and to meet with the residents, and the Lord Mayor to meet with the residents of Rockleigh. In 2011, half of Rockleigh was in Tennyson Ward, and I went through the floods with these people. Some of those homes were bought back and some weren't, but a lot of the areas that we're talking about today were actually part of Tennyson Ward. Parts of Rockleigh still remain in councillor Griffiths' ward, and now he has all of the suburb of Rockleigh. Unlike every single other councillor in this room, I've actually been on the ground with him almost straight away. We were very lucky to have Azuchi offer to assist us again, and they came directly to councillor Griffiths and myself, they were so good in 2011. And we very gratefully accepted their offer of help and staged flood recovery on the Mud Army Clean-Up Day from a street in Rockleigh, in behind the showgrounds. Zuchi went out into Rockleigh, Oxley and Fairfield. I know we're both incredibly grateful for everything that they did and all the other What hasn't happened, and it still hasn't happened up until now, is the Lord Mayor of this city has not bothered to call one of the worst flood-affected councillors in Brisbane, who represents one of the poorest parts of Brisbane, who does his best with very little. I think the Lord Mayor's attacks on the councillor for Rockleigh and the people of Rockleigh are so inappropriate.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
No one could possibly misread what you have just done in this place as anything other than a deliberate, nasty attack on the councillor for Rockleigh, who represents the people of Rockleigh. Now, let me be clear on the public record about this. I know that this Lord Mayor is playing political games. He rang me in the first week, and despite my own forgivings about his behaviour over many years and that of the LMP, I took him out into my ward and I showed him what was going on. I know he's been doing other things in my ward and using residents without their knowledge, and I think that's pretty appalling. But I know-
Point of order.
Point of order to you, Lord Mayor.
Claim again to be grossly misrepresented.
Noted.
I know what you did with John Purcell, I know you took the state media out there, I know what you did. You didn't ask him in advance of doing it, you just did it.
Councillor Johnston, please, to the motion.
And I'm trying to do that, thank you, which is why I didn't go into the detail, but I know what you did. But what I want to say here is, if this Lord Mayor was a genuine person and a genuine civic leader, he would have called councillor Griffiths. Even after last week, after last week in the chamber when councillor Griffiths raised it, the Lord Mayor could have done so, and he did not. He did not. Now, today, instead of responding in a human way, in a way a leader should do, and saying, yes, councillor Griffiths, we'll meet with you and your residents in Rockleigh, the Lord Mayor stood up and attacked him. That is completely unacceptable. The only people who have politicised what has happened in this city over the past two and a half weeks is the Lord Mayor. Councillors haven't been able to get information from this council because they're Lord Mayor announcables, and the only way that we can get that information is after the Lord Mayor has announced it. As late as today, councillor Marks said exactly that thing in committee this morning, that she couldn't get back to me about flood stuff, but the Lord Mayor would be announcing it. Meanwhile, he tweets out, and it's in his tweet. This council, for two weeks, has treated this flood as a PR exercise for the Lord Mayor, and where people have been in need and where they are still in need, he won't even speak to their local councillor, and he stands up and publicly attacks him in this place. Now, the Yorongah Community Centre has been a godsend in my ward. They are helping families from Maruka Ward as well. Yesterday, I received a call about Corella Street in Rockleigh, and I've been liaising with councillor Griffiths' office about this matter. An elderly man was taken to hospital, sitting in his damp home with no furniture, no power, nothing. A concerned neighbour caught the ambulance. It is not this council's sole responsibility to help people in need, that has to be done by all levels of government, and I am not letting the state government off the hook. They have community disaster teams, and they should be on the ground. But let me be clear, when the councillors in this place stand up and they report concerns to the disaster team that is running our response, that are connected to all of the agencies, when the local councillor says, you need to talk to people, you don't attack them. In a crisis, you extend the hand of friendship, you extend the hand to help, and you go out there and do it. You don't go out there in your Liberal Party shirts from another ward and campaign in other people's wards, and that what was going on in Week One of the floods. You do not do that.
Councillor-
And that is what they were doing.
Councillor Johnston, I'm going to have to bring you back to the motion before us, please.
You do not send Angela Owen, who has no authority, none, zero authority-
Point of order, Chair. Point of order to you, councillor Murphy.
Chair, we've had 10 minutes of personal attacks here, can we just get to the motion or sit down, rather than, you know, go through all of this, you know, because I'm sure we'll hear it again later anyway.
It's not a quick point of order, but I do bring you back to the motion, please, councillor Johnston.
You do not send Angela Owen to stand outside food businesses in Rockleigh.
Point of order, Chair. I will do a correct point of order. To the relevance of the motion, please.
Yes, councillor Johnston, I draw you back to the motion before us, please.
You do not send Angela Owen to stand outside food businesses in Rockleigh. If I can finish my sentence-
No, you can't, it's not relevant.
That's what this is about.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
I know Capa doesn't know where Rockleigh is.
Deputy Mayor.
Relevance to the motion.
Relevance to the motion, please.
It's about Rockleigh.
No, councillor Johnston, it's a long way from being relevant to the motion, which was a request that the Lord Mayor meet with a resident in that suburb. Please, to the motion before us.
Yeah. It is about representation, thank you. The Lord Mayor won't meet with them, he sent councillor Owen out there with no responsibility to stand outside and try and hang on to the coattails of the army-
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Instead of going himself-
Point of order to you, Deputy Mayor.
Point of order. The relevance to the Lord Mayor meeting the resident of 15 Galar Street.
Yes, thank you, councillor Johnston, there is a very specific motion before us.
And buyback and assistance in Rockleigh, I listened to the motion. I know these guys don't want to listen to the motion, and all they're trying to do now is disrupt my response. Let me be clear, this Lord Mayor has failed to help people in Rockleigh, he's failed to listen to the local councillor out there, and he's attacked the local councillor for doing his job here today. It is shameful behaviour, and he's had the prating guard of the young Liberals, who are now in their 30s and 40s, standing up, running interference, and that is shameful. Get on with your job and help people, that is what you are here for, not to spend time attacking councillor Griffiths. Now, I say this because I still talk to the residents of Rockleigh, who were in my ward, on a pretty regular basis. And I know that the- And I know that the residents of councillor Griffiths wards are hurting very badly. I have seen it firsthand myself. This council needs to do more and in a flood, you have to do things that you don't like, Lord Mayor, but you must do them.
Point of order to you, Deputy Mayor.
Relevance to the Lord Mayor meeting with a resident on a specific address.
Thank you, noted councillor, deputy mayor. Please councillor Johnston, there's a specific motion before us, could you address that, please?
In a flood, you have to do things, Lord Mayor, that you don't want to do or you don't like doing, but you have to do them. Now the Lord Mayor's made it very clear here that he doesn't really want to do this. He thinks it's all political, but it's not. It's about helping people, it's about making sure that this council addresses the needs of Rockleigh and the person who knows Rockleigh the best is the local councillor. And the Lord Mayor again today has said he does not want to speak to him, he does not want to hear from him and has personally attacked him.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Lord Mayor, your points of misrepresentation?
Yeah, there were two points. First of all, the claim that I attacked Rockleigh residents. I've never such, done any such thing. In fact, I said that we wanted to help them. Secondly, councillor Johnston said that apparently I'd visited a person called Mr Purcell and brought the media along. This was Mud Army Day and, and like a whole lot of other people, I had spent hours and hours helping Mr Purcell clean out his shed of, of all the flood damaged materials. I didn't bring the media along. I, I simply helped Mr Purcell.
Oh, councillor Johnston.
I simply helped Mr Purcell like other Mud Army volunteers.
Supposed to be a succinct point of misrepresentation, not a new debate.
I ask you to.
And I certainly didn't bring the media along.
Thank you, noted. Further speakers? Councillor Sri.
Thanks Chair, I rise to speak to the motion and I, I guess I just wanted to highlight that all of us have been through a pretty rough time over the past few weeks and we're all quite stressed and prone to thinking the worst of each other. And I guess I just wanted to encourage all councillors to show a bit of care and kindness. And I, I do support this motion. I think it's quite reasonable that a councillor whose ward has just experienced quite severe flooding would want to meet and would expect to be able to meet with the Lord Mayor. I often encounter residents who are really surprised at how hard it is for councillors like myself or councillor Griffiths to get a meeting with the mayor and I know how, how busy the mayor is, but we are elected representatives and part of our job is to provide advice to the mayor about the needs of our constituencies. And residents expect, they say to me, John, can't you just go and get a meeting with the mayor? They, they just assume and that's kind of what I'd assumed as well before I got elected. I thought, all right, if I can convince tens of thousands of people to vote for me, the mayor will be up for having a catch up once in a while. Apparently not and I think that's why this motion. I'll, I'll take the interjection. The mayor has pointed out that we do get to meet here in this chamber all together every Tuesday and that's true, although I would note that the mayor is often absent for prolonged periods of the meeting. And I don't say that as an attack, it's, it's a simple matter of fact that the mayor doesn't stay for the whole meeting and the mayor also routinely refuses to take questions while he's speaking during the meeting. So unlike one-on-one discussions or small group discussions, this is not necessarily a place of genuine dialogue. So I appreciate that the mayor is busy, but Lord Mayor, through you Chair, there are opportunities for further dialogue and collaboration and cooperation across the chamber. And I do think it would, it would be helpful sometimes if you could make more time to meet with councillors individually. Certainly there are lots of issues that I've felt haven't been addressed, which could have been addressed through more constructive dialogue and direct discussion. I do appreciate through you Chair, Lord Mayor, your sensitivity on this matter. I can see that you've been personally hurt by some of the comments in the chamber and I can see that other councillors have also been hurt by things that the mayor has said. So like I said at the start, I think it's important that we all show a bit more compassion and patience with each other, but through you Chair, to the Lord Mayor, when we've come through a flooding event like this and hundreds of residents have lost homes and had major property damage, I think it is a baseline and very reasonable expectation of councillors in flood affected neighbourhoods that the mayor would make time to meet with them individually. That, that's a very simple sign of respect and I appreciate the mayor doesn't think other councillors have shown him respect, but it is a two-way street and sometimes you do have to take the higher ground. I would love to meet with the mayor as well to talk in detail about the flooding impacts on my ward and, and the issues that my residents are still dealing with. I don't have the opportunity to raise those issues in detail here in the chamber because we are quite constrained about what we can talk to. The Chair regularly draws us back to the substance of the motion, et cetera. So we don't have a wide ranging opportunity to talk about every single issue we wish to raise, raise with the mayor. And we also get frustrated because sometimes written correspondence with the mayor can be quite slow. So I do think it's important that the mayor takes the time to meet with councillors of flood affected neighbourhoods. He has the time to meet with lots of people. I see that he makes time to meet with certain stakeholders and certain industry groups a lot more often than with others. And I do think it would be good for the mayor to spread his time around a little bit more evenly and recognise that the thousands of residents in Maruka Ward deserve to have their elected representative be given some face time with the mayor. I don't think that's an unreasonable request and I think the decisions that the mayor makes would be of a high qual, higher quality, they would be better decisions if he took the time to hear more directly from local elected representatives. He is depriving himself of access to important information and insight by not meeting with councillor Griffiths on this matter. I, I can see that there's a lot of party politics at play, I'm not, I'm not going to wade into that territory, but as a matter of common sense, councillor Griffiths clearly has relevant information that would be useful for the mayor to consider in deciding how best to support the recovery and future resilience of this city. And as, yeah, as a, as a matter of common sense, it's more efficient for the mayor to have that conversation directly with councillor Griffiths where they can ask each other questions, where they can build trust, where they can form constructive dialogue rather than back and forth arguments over, within this public chamber or long and inefficient email correspondence, neither of which are optimal forms of discussion and negotiation. So I, once again, firmly support this motion and I'm glad to hear that the mayor is going to meet with the resident themselves, but I think it, it would be a bare minimum, it would be a very small but important step for the mayor to at least make time to meet with councillor Griffiths one-on-one. Like I said, I'm surprised that the mayor hasn't yet been willing to meet with me either. I'll wait my turn, I think probably some of the other wards have been more severely affected by flooding than mine, but I've got quite a few residents in my electorate who are homeless now and I would really like to meet with the mayor to discuss what we'll be doing to support those residents going forward. And the fact that the mayor hasn't been willing to meet is, I think, quite disappointing. I, I know that I found it easily, easier to get meetings with the previous mayor Graham Quirk than I have with councillor Shrinar. And, and I hope that going forward, the mayor will make more time to meet with Labour, Green and independent councillors because otherwise our only avenue to raise issues is in these open public meetings and I think that does undermine the tone of discourse and does contribute to a more adversarial political environment because we can't have direct conversations with the mayor. We're forced to raise stuff here in the chamber, which is then experienced as party politicking. Anytime I raise a negative issue in this chamber, it's experienced as an attack by the LNP, even though I'm just trying to raise an issue in good faith and I don't have other avenues to raise it. So through you Chair, the Lord Mayor, please just meet with councillors. We have useful insights, just because we're not from the same political party as you doesn't mean we don't have something positive to contribute to the city.
Thank you, councillor Sri, further speakers? Councillor Griffiths, the motion as I've taken it and with your agreement earlier, I believe it is that the Lord Mayor meet with you to meet a resident of Galar Street, Rockleigh by 28 March to discuss flooding.
Yep.
If that's okay, you have.
So it's flooding and, and the Home Resilience Programme.
Well, it was, it was a long preamble and that was what I read out as the motion when we started the debate.
Anyway, it was both of them.
So I'll either take this as the motion or ask you to send.
Take this as the motion, but I, I did say Home Resilience too and it's in the email. But anyway, I mean, they can discuss what they like to discuss.
Yep. So the motion, the motion is with the Lord Mayor and, and yourself meet with a resident of Galar Street, Rockleigh by 28 March to discuss flooding?
Yep.
Okay, you have summing up opportunity?
Yes, so thank you and thank you to those councillors who spoke. What we're doing by this motion is trying to solve a problem out at Rockleigh, a reoccurring problem that I thought were on the way to resolving in 2011 when there was an increase in funding for the buyback programme. And I actually at that time called for money to be put aside to assist those residents who didn't want to sell but assist them to raise their homes. Council has since brought that programme in. What I and the residents of Rockleigh who are constantly going through this problem want is a, a long-term solution to it and, and part of that long-term solution is having, having the Lord Mayor out there with me so that he can, so he can see what residents are going through and so that he can understand it. Certainly in the past, Campbell Newman has been out there and I think Graham Quirk had been out there as mayors and they haven't been afraid to meet with me and meet with residents and we've seen implementation of some programmes in council such as the buyback programme. So I'm disappointed that the Lord Mayor doesn't want to talk to me. I'm disappointed the Lord Mayor sees me as so political. That is my job, you know, and I do it well and he'd be criticising me if I didn't do it well. That's my job. My job is to get results for my community and if you won't talk to me, then I have to use every means possible to show up what you're doing. So if you want to work with me and get resolutions for these residents that I represent, that I got voted for, that I got 70% of the vote for, then you need to actually be involved in talking to me. I am, I have been disappointed with the way council has treated Rockleigh. We've had no bins for six days, no food bins, while other wards had them in two days. We've, we've had hundreds of, hundreds of trucks of waste dumped next to a park at Acacia Ridge and I wasn't, wasn't raised with me. We haven't been able to get road closures in Rockleigh, so many things, we haven't been able to be listened to. But I'm at least pleased that the Lord Mayor will come out and meet with this resident and I would ask the Lord Mayor to reconsider because I would like to be there at that meeting as well and the resident has asked them at that meeting as well. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Griffiths. The motion before us is that the Lord Mayor and councillor Griffiths meet with a resident in Galar Street by 28 March to discuss flooding. All in favour of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk. Ayes to the right, noes to the left. Please ring the bells. Yep, back to traditional. Oh, sorry, yes. Ayes to the right, noes to the left. Thank you, thank you Clarks. Councillor Griffiths, I'm assuming you're with the yeses? Yes, thank you. Clarks?
Mr Chair, the, I, sorry, the noes have it, the voting being six in favour and 18 against.
Thank you, that motion is lost. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report. Well, sorry, that ends question time, to be formal. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report of 7 March 2022.
Yes, Mr Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 7th of March 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you, it has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday 7 March 2022 be adopted. Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Before I move on to other items, I just wanted to talk about the lighting up of council assets, which has continued on despite other challenges that our city is facing. Last night, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge, City Hall and Reddick Cliff Place and the Tropical Dome at Mount Cootha were lit up in yellow to support Endo Enlighten campaign and this campaign aims to increase awareness of the, of endometriosis. And Endo is an extremely common disease with one in nine women being infected by the disease. And obviously we support a further public acknowledgement and awareness of this disease and support for people that are suffering from it. Tonight, City Hall will be lit up in green for Coliac Awareness Week. Celiac, sorry, Celiac Awareness Week. Yeah, it has been a lot. Celiac Awareness Week. Currently 80% of people with celiac disease remain undiagnosed and the aim of the Awareness Week is to increase diagnosis rates among the population. On Wednesday, the Story Bridge and Victoria Bridge will be lit up in red, white and blue to celebrate Alliance Françoise, which is the alliance, a global network of French language and cultural centres and organisations in 120, 132 countries. On Thursday, what is it? St Patrick's Day. St Patrick's Day. And I saw that the parade occurred on the weekend through Brisbane. Unfortunately, I couldn't get there to be part of it due to, it was in Saturday, was it? Was it Saturday? Oh, guess what? I was in Rockleigh. I was in Rockleigh. But apparently according to the local councillor, I don't know where Rockleigh is, I've never been there. Look, St Patrick's Day and the local Irish community are just fantastic, they're such a great part of our local community and one of the, the most vibrant parts of our local community and certainly they have been out there on the weekend celebrating and they will continue to celebrate through Thursday and beyond. This Friday is the National Day of Action Against Bullying and Violence and to mark this day, all of our council assets will be lit up in orange. On Saturday night, it's the annual Dance for Daniel Ball and everyone will be aware of the red colour that's synonymous with Dance for Daniel Ball and the Daniel Morecambe Foundation. So we're lighting up the assets in red. And on Sunday, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge and Reddick Cliff Place will be lit up in red again, but this time for Red Bow Month. Red Bow Month raises awareness for people living with muscular dystrophy, lighting up the assets to help raise awareness of this disease. What we just witnessed when it came to that motion from councillor Griffiths was really incredibly disappointing. It is, you know, if councillor Griffiths was genuine, he would have approached me directly about this issue and not in a public forum and because not only did councillor Griffiths do it in this political way, but he had also previously appeared in an article on the ABC with this resident where he had quite clearly, it appears, fed the resident misinformation. It seemed the resident was unaware that this particular house was previously, we attempted to purchase it through our flood buyback scheme, that same house. And so we were genuinely keen to do something about that specific property and I remain confident that we can do something to help properties like this. Whether it is a renewed flood buyback programme or whether it is a flood resilient homes programme, I believe that both of those things have some merit and I'm, you know, looking forward to working with the other levels of government to make sure that we can really gear up the efforts. There's things that we can do as a council, but there's so much more that we can do with state and federal support and I know that it is really positive that for the first time in a decade, the state government is now talking about a buyback scheme, a flood buyback scheme. Because after the 2011 flood, when the recommendations were that there should be three levels of government. be three levels of government funding this scheme, we were the only ones doing it. We were the only ones doing it. And so now it is positive that we have other levels of government talking about this. Because in the end, the aim should not be about scoring some political points, it should be about getting the right outcomes here and that's what I'm determined to do. But unfortunately councillor Griffiths, in all of my dealings with him and everything I've seen in the time that I've been a councillor, you cannot work with him. You just can't work with him. He politicises everything. I've seen it time and time again. Neighborhood plans, every local issue, he just politicises everything. And it's incredibly disappointing. So I'll work with his residents, but he's made it clear that he's not interested in working with the Lord Mayor of the day. And that's not just me, that was Campbell Newman, that was Graham Quirk. A leopard doesn't change its spots unfortunately and so it is disappointing, but I accept it is what it is. And so if he doesn't want to work constructively together, which all of his actions would indicate in the past to be the MO, then I'll work with his residents instead because we do want to get better outcomes here. And in this case, it is, you know, a situation where there's a definite need there. There is a definite need. I was also in Rockleigh as well, on Sunday, because I've been very... Not only have I been out visiting the council crews, but also in any downtime I've had with the family. Unfortunately, my kids have had to jump into the van and to a flood affected areas and we've been doing that consistently, not only on a sort of, I guess, work basis, but also off the clock as well, so to speak. And so whether it's going into councillor Johnston's ward, councillor Griffiths ward, councillor Hutton's ward, councillor Mackay's ward, councillor Wine's ward, I've been getting around as far and as wide as possible, even to councillor Cassidy's ward on the weekend in fact. We saw the good progress of the clean up that's been occurring out there. So I know the different parts of the city that have been impacted, I've seen it with my own eyes, I've been in the streets myself and I've talked to a whole lot of residents right across the city. And we want to get better outcomes here, but the way to do that is not to play political games, is not to move politically motivated motions. So it is really disappointing, but unfortunately I'm not surprised. Item A is the East Bank Flood Resilience Project at Mount Crosby. It's a project managed by SEQ Water. Now councillors would be aware, more than likely, that the dams were previously controlled by councils and then it was the state government in the millennium drought that created a new entity called SEQ Water and removed the dams from council control and put them into state control in a state government agency called SEQ Water. So SEQ Water manages all of the dams across South East Queensland as well as the water grid as well and they are effectively the bulk water supplier to South East Queensland. This submission facilitates the construction of a new two lane bridge over the Brisbane River to replace the existing one lane Weir Bridge on the site. In addition to this, it facilitates the construction of a brand new kindergarten as well and the relocation of a workers cottage within the area. All of these assets will be transferred into council ownership once complete. SEQ Water undertook a review of the flood resilience of its assets in Mount Crosby and the study identified a number of essential assets that needed to be relocated or refurbished to reduce the risk of them being damaged by flood. The design of the new bridge considers the challenging topography of the site and will be approximately three metres higher than the existing Weir Bridge, which provides increased flood immunity. Will also be able to withstand far larger and heavier vehicles than the existing Weir Bridge can. In addition to this, the local CNK Kindy, which is close to the Weir, will be moved to a brand new custom built facility further away from the substation. This means that on the completion of works, the former CNK Kindy site will be used as part of council's hall portfolio for short term lease by community groups and individuals.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension, seconded.
Motion, a motion for an extension, a time for the Lord Mayor, moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landers. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
SEQ Water anticipates awarding the tender for construction at the end of the month. So good outcome. Item B, look, this is one, when you read the headline, you immediately think, what is going on here? It's quite an unusual submission to be coming through, but as you will see shortly, it's been requested by the community and it's something that we need to consider. So item B relates to the exhumation of human remains from council owned land used for cemetery purposes. Now occasionally council receives requests from residents asking that a family member that is currently buried in one of our cemeteries be exhumed from the ground and buried elsewhere. And so this is often about family relocation and essentially having a family grave site, moving someone from one place to another essentially. So this is something that we do get requests from, from time to time from the community and they can be made for a range of reasons, including culture and religious reasons. Also families wanting to have their families together in one place after death. Council manages twelve cemeteries across Brisbane, ten of these we are the trustee of land owned by the state and two we own outright, being Malkavat and Pinnaroo in Bridgman Downs. Council currently has delegations in place to approve exhumation requests on land that council holds in trust from the state. However, in the other situations, which is the land we own outright, no such delegation exists. And so that's effectively what we're asking for today. That would then make it consistent with the other cemeteries so that we have the one set of arrangements in place for all cemeteries. So on November, twenty second of November twenty twenty one, cemeteries received a request for an exhumation in Malkavat Cemetery. The request was made by a family who regret their previous burial choice and plan to exhume and rebury their loved one to better meet their religious and cultural position. As mentioned, council is the owner of the cemetery land and there is no delegation available to deal with this situation. So with the support of councillors, we'll be able to deal with this situation. Unfortunately, it's taken some time to get to this point, but hopefully after today we can have it resolved and then move forward in a consistent way in all of our cemeteries.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further speakers? Further speakers? Councillor Wine.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I rise to speak on item A, which is the East Bank Flood Resilience Project at Mount Crosby in conjunction with SEQ Water. The Lord Mayor rightly identified that this submission covers the construction of a two lane bridge over the river at the Mount Crosby. There is demand for a two way crossing. At the moment, there's only a single lane with a load limit of nine tonnes. Demand for use in that area for a range of reasons requires two lanes and an increase in the ability for heavier vehicles and for freight to use that particular location. SEQ Water did undertake a review of the flood resilience of those assets at Mount Crosby after the twenty eleven floods. The study was completed in twenty seventeen and a number of assets had to be renewed or relocated and this is one of the main ones. The items also include existing electrical substations will be moved to a less flood prone area. A master plan was developed with a heads up agreement was entered into between council and SEQ Water in twenty eighteen. SEQ Water submitted a development application for a master plan to council in the same year and approval to proceed has been granted. The master plan includes a number of new and upgraded assets that will be funded by SEQ Water, that's an important element that should be of interest to councillors, that SEQ Water as part of their master plan will be upgrading the assets through their funding and once completed will be transferred to council. So those items will be transferred to council on completion after SEQ Water has upgraded them. That, more detail on that bridge I was discussing earlier, the two lane bridge, it takes into account what is challenging topography in that area over the river and is approximately three metres higher than the existing Weir Bridge, which will provide increased flood immunity. Now, this has been in discussion with council for obviously some years and takes particular relevance at this time. Why would we be so interested in these sorts of things? It also allows western suburbs people an alternative route. At certain times during these sorts of events, people in the western suburbs would, among the first to be isolated in the city. It also provides an alternative to nearby colleges crossing, which basically goes through river level. The bridge will be designed to be inundated in large and extreme weather, but be able to be reopened as soon as floodwaters pass. And recent experience has shown that we can rely on our engineers to be able to provide that level of construction to be able to survive significant rain events and significant flooding events. The new weight bearing capacity for the bridge will be forty two point five tonnes and the new bridge will cater for vehicular traffic. The Weir will still be in use and will be able to cater for both pedestrians and cyclists. The Weir will remain in the ownership of SEQ Water. I would also like to note that on the eleventh of March of this year, SEQ Water made a statement that the Mount Crosby Weir Bridge is temporarily closed as a result of a weather event. SEQ Chief Operating Officer Stuart Cassie said the bridge was inundated by water during the event and visible inspections had identified significant damage to the deck surface and guardrails. Safety is our top priority, we have closed the bridge whilst engineering assessments are undertaken, Mr Cassie said. We are arranging for a qualified third party engineer to attend site and assess the damage and once this is completed, we will update the community. I continue to quote, we acknowledge the closure, will inconvenience local residents and we thank them for their understanding while we undertake assessments and ensure their safety. Mr Cassie said SEQ Water would provide a further update once the assessments on the bridge were completed. The transfer includes a number of other assets, not only the bridge, but also the hall and a kindergarten, all of which will be upgraded before the transfer to council.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair, I rise to speak on both of these items. The item A, as we've just heard, is the plans to upgrade the Mount Crosby Weir Bridge. This has been significantly damaged in the recent floods, the communities of Moghl, Belbarry, Anstead, Karana Downs, Kolo and Mount Crosby were all cut off completely and isolated during the most recent floods. All five routes out of this area were cut by river and creek flooding. It was one of the tens of thousands of residents who lived there needed emergency help and would have to be airlifted to hospital because obviously these roads are not flood proof. Food and water was also in desperately short supply by the end of that as well and this community was cut off during the twenty eleven floods. Now, the LMP has been in charge of the budget here for the last eighteen years in this council chamber and we're only talking about these upgrades. Council is an integral partner in this project. Council is an integral partner in this project in flood proofing this area because we'll be accepting the roadworks and the bridgeworks.
Councillor Adamant, please.
You'll get your turn, don't worry. So the need to upgrade this river crossing and river crossings in this area was evident after twenty eleven, but this LMP administration has been sitting on their hands and continued on with business as usual. So we didn't hear them out there banging the drum, I don't recall any big soaring speeches by councillor Adamant here in his time or the councillors before him about the need for this work and knowing that it's been needed well and truly for the last decade or more. But we're glad that SEQ Water has identified that this will be fast tracked and council will finally accept the responsibility to maintain these roads out there. But those communities certainly deserve better and so the story out in those leafy western suburbs is the same story, Chair, in the outer northern suburbs or the outer southern suburbs or the outer eastern suburbs. They're missing out, they're missing out under this LMP administration who is so focused, so focused on inner city projects and so focused on those big glitzy things that they can put on the brochures, on the glossy brochures and shove into people's letterboxes, but instead of delivering the basics out in the suburbs. So it is about time this LMP council got serious about flood proofing our communities, not just here out in the western suburbs, but right across the outer suburbs of this city. Clause B is the exhumation of human remains from council owned land used for cemetery purposes. This item is essentially streamlining the process for families who need to relocate their loved ones to another resting place and we certainly think there should be a delegation in place and this shouldn't be something that needs to be debated each and every time it comes up, so we'll support this item today.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Adamant.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, I rise to speak on item A, the East Bank Flood Resilience Project at Mount Crosby in My Ward. The Mount Crosby Water Treatment Plants are a critical part of the SEQ Water Grid and supply about fifty percent of South East Queensland's drinking water, including Brisbane, Ipswich and Logan. The East Bank Flood Resilience Programme involves a number of improvements to reduce asset and flood risks to essential bulk water infrastructure at the historic Mount Crosby East Bank Precinct. SEQ Water recently awarded the construction contract for the programme Civil and Enabling Works to McIlwain Civil Engineering. That contract includes earthworks and the construction of retaining walls, a substation pad and a sealed road to the substation. The Eastern Access Road will be upgraded, including conduit installation and reconfiguring of the six way intersection. Once complete, Enerjex will then construct a new substation. This project will reduce flood risks to critical water infrastructure at the East Bank Precinct by preparing for the construction of a modern electrical substation on higher ground. And during that works period, the CNK Mount Crosby Community Kindergarten will continue to operate as normal. Chair, it's timely, given the events of the past two weeks, to stress the importance of relocating the source of power to the water treatment plants to higher ground. I can't begin to contemplate the consequences to our water supply had it gone under and been lost at this plant two weeks ago. SEQ Water is to be commended for implementing its East Bank Flood Resilience Master Plan. It will safeguard essential infrastructure, provide certainty about the facility's ongoing maintenance and upgrade the bulk water storage facilities at Mount Crosby. The features of the master plan include the location of the new pump station and substation to land above the one per ten thousand AEP flood level, a new high voltage power switch room, the relocation of the historic Draymans cottages to near the community hall specifically for community use and the relocation of the Mount Crosby Childcare Centre away from the utility installation. But Chair, I've left the best till last and as both the Lord Mayor and councillor Wine have mentioned, that is the construction of a new two lane more flood resilient road bridge across the Brisbane River. As outlined last week, the Karana Downs and Mount Crosby communities were isolated for four days, no way in and no way out. And to councillor Cassidy's point on that, access was cut on Mount Crosby Road and Moghl Road, both state owned roads. The existing bridge went under and when the waters receded, there appeared to be considerable damage to the structure. Its ability to take vehicular traffic again will be determined over the coming days, but you have to wonder whether it stays as a car bridge outnumbered, which makes the new bridge an even greater priority now. The estimated cost of the bridge and connecting roadworks is twenty million dollars, which will be funded by SEQ Water with council eventually taking over the responsibility for its ongoing maintenance. The construction of this bridge will play a key role in providing greater access in and out of that part of My Ward during flooding. Another key component that councillor Wine's alluded to is upgrading Colleges Crossing, which is in the Ipswich local government area. The Labour Member for Ipswich West should be telling his colleague, the Minister for Transport, that the time for talking is now over and that residents of the outer western suburbs want to see some action on traffic solution at Colleges Crossing and soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to enter the debate on item B, the exhumation of human remains from council owned land used for cemetery purposes. And, Mr Chair, through you and I appreciate the leader of the opposition indicating support for this because as we know, these sorts of requests don't happen very often, but for it to have to come to full council is really something that could be distressing for families. The current request was of course made on the twenty second of November twenty twenty one and so the reason that it is here before us today is that that request did need to come to council, but also it is the ability for us to, for this submission, seek to establish the delegation with the CEO which will align the approval process with land held in trust. with land held in trust and ensure a more expedient response to such sensitive customer requests. So, I think I don't probably need to say much more than that. I do appreciate the support from the opposition on this, on this item, and I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, we now move to, oh, Lord Mayor's not here, no summing up. Deputy Mayor, do you want to do any summing up? So, we now move to the vote on this item. All in favour of the E and C report seven March, twenty-twenty-two, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Deputy Mayor, the Economic Development and Brisbane Twenty Thirty-Two Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee report for the first of March meeting.
Mr Chair, I move the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane Twenty Thirty-Two Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the first of March, twenty-twenty, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Hutton, that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane Twenty Thirty-Two Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday, one March, twenty-twenty-two, be adopted. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Just for an update, don't forget that the Business Hub is still alive and kicking and there to support your local businesses, particularly through this flood recovery. Tomorrow, there is an SEQ Flood Recovery Support to Get Back to Business that's being held from nine AM to eleven AM. Generate Demand for Your Business, Not Leads, which is on Thursday from nine till eleven, and then the Art of Building a Premium Brand with Visual Content, which we talked a bit about today in committee, next Tuesday from nine till eleven. We got some fantastic feedback too from the International Women's Event Panel, which was without doubt the best they have ever seen, is one of the feedbacks. So, well done to Beater on that. There were three women who presented, and they were both inspirational and impressive. Came from another business. There's also some comments here about the mentoring that continue to be strongly advised by anybody who has, needs some support in business, but those who've been through the programme. Meeting with, and I won't name the name of the mentor, was a fantastic opportunity to gain valuable insight into my business endeavours. He was able to offer me invaluable advice surrounding both my initial questions and also the operations of my business as a whole. So, please, councillors, pass this on to your businesses, particularly if they have some extra need for help coming out of the floods if they were affected. Or, even if they weren't physically affected, maybe it's affected whatever their business model is, and they need some help going forward on that as well. As I said last week, the Business Hub and the Nunda Village Hub as well are nice and busy. And I think Mr Al said this morning, busiest day in the Nunda Hub last Friday, with a lot of businesses coming in there to use the spaces as their working spaces as they need to recover from the floods as well. So, please let, make sure you let your businesses know. Excuse me, Mr Chair. The committee presentation last week was on the Virtus Oceana Games. They are being held here in Brisbane, Brisbane in October twenty-two. This is the world's largest elite sports event for athletes with an intellectual impairment. So, we are very excited to bring this back to Brisbane in November, welcoming up to a thousand elite athletes and officials from New Zealand, Asia, and the Pacific nations. In twenty-nineteen, we demonstrated our inclusivity, accessibility, and warmth by having a friendly atmosphere to all the elite athletes that joined us during the very successful INUS Global Games. And this is the same company, new iteration now called Virtus. So, they announced the rebrand to Virtus Games, and we are very, very proud to be the host of this elite competition from around Asia and the Pacific, a little bit more global this year as well. We've just finalised the funding agreement, which provides financial support as well as in-kind support to help coordinate and promote the event. The federal government is also committed to supporting the games with an investment of nearly two million dollars, and we're yet to hear if the Queensland government will come on board too. Hopefully, they will, particularly through stadiums Queensland. Off the back of being confirmed as the host of the Brisbane Twenty Thirty-Two Olympic and Paralympic Games, we really are working hard to cement our position as the national capital for major sporting events. And I think the officers involved in coordinating this event alongside Sports Inclusion Australia, it's going to be a fantastic sporting event to be involved in. We're grateful for the community, and I will be helping, getting you to help me spread the word as we get closer to October as well. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? No further speakers. We now put this motion to the vote. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Deputy Mayor, the report of the eighth of March from your committee, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane Twenty Thirty-Two Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the eighth of March, twenty-twenty-two, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane Twenty Thirty-Two Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday, eighth March, twenty-twenty-two, be adopted. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. The committee report for last week was the CITREP at the time, after we came out the back, obviously, of a week and a half of the devastating flood events. I very clearly explained to the committee the role of the City Office of Analytics in supporting the LDCC, particularly in garnering the information required as it came through the LDCC for the coordination of the Mud Army. Having been there on the ground eleven years ago, I wasn't quite sure that, I wasn't quite ready, I think, as anybody was, to experience a second Mud Army as well. But I can assure you, the support that was done through the analytics and the technical advantages we had this time with the advancement that we have with our City Office of Analytics was absolutely, without doubt, something that made the Mud Army work so well on the Saturday morning as well. For the coordination team that were within there, Tash Tobias and the team, it was fantastic to see maps of where the callouts were, whether they were isolated or whether they were entire streets in those most heavily-hit suburbs as well. Being able to use that information to coordinate the buses, the volunteers from the three sites that we had as well was absolutely invaluable. And again, as we continued through the week after the Mud Army, making sure we left no resident behind on all of those people that had called out, that they required help during that time, and ensuring that they got the help they needed over the weekend, or that we could get out there with the ADF and council crews to help them as well. So, I have to say thank you very much to the Economic Development team and everything they did for the Mud Army and the analytics and the LDCC. I know they're working now with some fantastic audits that are being done across the city and helping them make sure that we map, we gather the information, and we can step into that recovery phase and reconstruction as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on this report and offer some observations about the flood event, flood crisis from my perspective as the councillor for the Deegan Ward. It's now been two weeks since the end of the flood crisis in My Ward. The clean-up began immediately after on Monday, twenty-eighth of February. And while it's been a long road already, there's still a long way to go. And, and this is what happened along the way, or will, will be part of it anyway. On the twenty-third of February, I began warning people on my social media channels of the wet weather ahead. It had just started raining then, seems like a long time ago now. That continued through to the twenty-fifth of February, when that rain began intensifying. On the night of the twenty-fifth of February, we started seeing localised flooding occurring. I contacted council to report local roads being underwater. By nine thirty PM on Friday, twenty-fifth of February, the Zulmia depot had run out of sandbags. I attended the depot.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
I recognise that councillor Cassidy wants to share this information, and it is for GB. It's not what I talked about in my committee, or anything that my committee had related to.
Councillor Cassidy, there are very specific what the report is about. If you could talk to the report, please.
Yes, the deputy mayor said that the, what the, our leader of the opposition is saying wasn't relevant. She identified the CITREP and the analytics, analytics behind that. And those CITREPs, of course, include weather forecasts, strategic priorities, intelligence, and a number of other very important issues. So, I don't know why we shouldn't be able to speak to the CITREP.
Councillor Cassidy, you're speaking to issues that arose before the Mud Army, which was, and the report is about the analytics that were used to deploy the Mud Army. That is the, that is the motion before us.
Well, if you don't listen to it now, you're going to have to listen to it later. So.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
So, councillor.
You didn't rule on my point of order, number one. And number two, the analytics are part of the CITREP and vice versa. So, why can't the leader of the opposition speak to those points?
What this clearly shows then, Chair, is that the deputy mayor and council and the LDCC took none of this on board in developing what the Mud Army was supposed to be doing. And this is all information I fed up through to the LDCC, which the deputy mayor talked about, which then was to inform the flood recovery, which I was going to get to. But you're saying, you're saying I can't talk about any of the flood events that led up to the formation of the Mud Army? Is that, is that the ruling?
My ruling is that the report is very specific to the analytics that were used for the deployment of the Mud Army. But councillor Cassidy, I'll allow you to speak to the broader issues.
Thanks very much, Chair. So, as I was saying, I contacted council about the lack of sandbags, and by the next morning, there was a resupply. By the twenty-sixth, we had started seeing more localised flooding. The Iron Bumpin' Lagoon had broken its banks. By Saturday morning, twenty-sixth of February, I began publishing important information from the CITREP documents on my social media. These included road closures, sandbag details, tide heights, and rainfall, which were included in CITREPs, which by this stage I'd finally started receiving. On Saturday morning, twenty-sixth of February, Queens Parade, Groth Road, and Zulmia Road were underwater. By Saturday night, there were more local roads underwater. Rogan Road at the intersection of Sangate Road, many of the avenues in Sangate from Second to Eighth Avenue, and the rain was intensifying. Upon inspection on the Saturday night, Groth Road had signs and traffic cones. However, Zulmia Road just had a couple of traffic cones as a road closure. I witnessed several cars driving over the top of them and into the water. I attempted to contact council and members of the LDCC that night, but couldn't get through. I put the cones back as best I could in the rain. By Saturday night, sandbag production had begun twenty-four hours a day at Zulmia. There were approximately three thousand bags available first thing Sunday morning. These were taken up in the first hour or two. I'd been on the road since six AM on Sunday, twenty-seventh of February, and did several local updates on social media, warning people of the dangers of this weather. For one of those, I was joined, of course, by a federal member, Annika Wells, and state member Sterling Hinchcliffe, who'd been providing their own updates to the community respectively. At eight thirty AM, Annika Wells and I had dropped sandbags to Brighton for people to collect as they weren't available outside of the Zulmia depot. And after this, I went back to that depot, where I stayed until about four PM that day. When I arrived, it was disorganised, the line of cars was growing. I spoke to the council officer in charge, Daniel, about the situation. On that shift, they had around ten staff working on the single machine at the Zulmia depot. He had requested traffic control at six AM, but still hadn't arrived by nine AM, when he asked Annika Wells and I to assist with traffic and alerting people to the growing wait times for sandbags.
To the relevance, if councillor Cassidy would like to point to the paragraph where sandbagging at Zulmia depot has anything to do with the update from my committee for the flood response.
Every CITREP included details about sandbags where they weren't available, and, and.
Can you point in the report where it mentions CITREPs?
You, you talked about CITREPs, and we talked about CITREPs in the committee last week. I don't understand what the reticence is about this, Chair.
Point of order. Yes, would councillor Cassidy take a question?
Sure.
Paragraph four refers to internal data, intelligence, the LDCC, and information gathered from the LDCC. Would that include the type of information you're discussing?
Very much so, and this is information I. Absolutely, this is information that I was gathering as a local councillor and attempting to pass through to the LDCC, to Noah Vale mostly on that Sunday, and to council as well. As I was saying, what was happening on the ground, we began directing traffic. That council officer managed to find some signs in the depot to close the right turn into Jennings Street from Zulmia Road to assist this. The federal member, the state member for Aspli by this stage, and one of my staff members, Tom Hinchcliffe, directed traffic and gave public information up until twelve PM that day. Three hours, we stood out on the road in the rain, directing traffic and providing public information. Once the traffic control turned up, I, along with my staff member, had a handful of other local residents who had turned up began disseminating sandbags and organising vehicles. There was no order, and when a large bag of sandbags came out, people were rushing to them and in some cases getting one bag per drop, which meant some people would wait an hour to fill their cars up. We eventually made a system which made filling cars much quicker and more efficient. In the end, it probably didn't matter because most people, by the end, were waiting three hours to collect sandbags at the Zulmia depot. Not just my residents, residents from right across the north side, from Wavell Heights, from Nunda, from Brackenridge, from Fitzgibbon, as well as residents in My Ward as well. There was only one sandbagging machine operating, so despite the council crew there filling as fast as they possibly could, they simply could not keep up with demand. People were doing runs of sandbags out to Sangate and Brighton for friends and neighbours, but it was clear just having one location on the north side was a mistake. More preparation should have been made, and twenty thousand sandbags should have been on standby at Zulmia alone for an event like this. The Zulmia depot is now just a storage facility for council now that operations have been centralised at Eagle Farm. This has absolutely hollowed out council's capability to deploy across the northern suburbs. I remained at the depot all day and continued to provide updates to people via social media and attempted to get back to Sangate around two PM. But by that time, discovered all access had been cut. Lemke Road, Sangate Road, and the gateway were all underwater, so went back to the depot. Many, many people who had come to get sandbags at the depot would have been in the exact same situation I was trying to get north from there. As the depot workers' shift came to an end, I went with Daniel to visit the council staff who'd been filling those sandbags. They were absolutely exhausted. Some of them weren't sure if they were going to be able to get home themselves, and some of them were gearing up to put in a second shift. I left the depot around four PM and stayed at my staff member's house. At six forty PM, I alerted people via social media the situation was getting dire, and that if people could take their neighbours in, they should, and people should call triple zero if they were trapped. I spoke to one resident who had put his wife and child on a boat in Deegan, and that, and he remained in his two-storey home surrounded by two-metre-deep water. He watched, he watched as they were taken away by neighbours, knowing that his young son would have died in that dangerous water if he'd fallen from that boat. I spoke to Lord Mayor Adrian Schriner that night and said people didn't know what to do. There had been no warnings, no communication from council as the lead agency. I spoke to Sterling Hinchcliffe, who escalated that message to the Emergency Services Minister. Some SES crews made it to Deegan, but most people who were rescued were done so by other local residents on small boats. One of those rescuers was another staff member of mine, Quinn Story. In regards to communication from council, from council and council's LDCC, on twenty-sixth of February, there were just four posts on council's Facebook page. One of those was about storm preparation in the middle of a storm. Another was about general possibility of flooding and telling residents to stay home. The third was about an evacuation centre and services being suspended. And the final one included incorrect information that had to be altered. It stated that the Brisbane River could see flooding due in part to releases from Wyveno Dam, which was not correct at the time. The next update didn't occur until two PM on Sunday, telling people to check the Brisbane River flood map to see if their property was at risk of flooding. Most of the feedback on that post was that the map wasn't helpful, unusable, or didn't reflect current flooding. At three fifty PM, council then shared an urban utilities post asking people to conserve water. At five oh seven, a post went up telling people to stay put in their homes, not to drive, not to swim, or walk through floodwaters. This post did not tell residents how to call for help in the event of an emergency. There was no SES or emergency services details in this post. Then at seven forty-eight PM, council posted a link that didn't even work. Some residents received a text about seven PM warning of possible river flooding, three hours after houses had already been inundated by creek and flash flooding. I didn't receive a message until seven fifty AM the next morning, fifteen hours after the peak of that flood. And I will reserve some more comments for further in the meeting, Chair.
Yes. Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for fifteen minutes, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
We have a motion for afternoon tea adjournment, moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Sri?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on the report, and in particular on how the data analytics team was used to deploy the Mud Army. And I offer this insight in the hope that it will be taken as constructive feedback. I'm not trying to cast aspersions or anything like that. But my understanding, and perhaps the deputy mayor will be able to correct me in summing up, is that broadly speaking, there was a process whereby councils collecting data on which households had been affected by flooding and might need support from the Mud Army volunteers. And that was coming through a couple of channels, through council offices going out, through councils making reports, and through residents making direct requests. And my understanding is that that data was collated and then basically. And my understanding is that that data was collated and then basically turned into a list of streets where the Mud Army ought to be deployed. What I saw on the ground and what seemed to be happening in a couple of areas was that the volunteers would then be bussed out to those streets and supervisor, usually a council staffer, would then go door to door and direct volunteers to each household where someone was home and said, yes, we'd like some volunteer help. That process sounds good at first glance, but it did actually miss quite a few residents the first time round, and that was because the initial data that council was collecting accurately captured, okay, residents of, for example, 109 Ryan Street do need support, residents of 111 Ryan Street don't, whatever it is. But when the Mud Army volunteers were actually deployed on the ground, they weren't referring back to that original data of exactly which households had requested support. It was almost like the data gathering exercise started again on the ground, and I see the logic of having that kind of informal and flexible approach to coordination and volunteer deployment on the ground. But I was there on a couple of streets and I watched the supervisors go up to each household and say to the residents, hey, do you want any volunteers here? And if residents didn't happen to be home at that very specific time that the person came through, then no volunteers were allocated to that particular household. And so I don't know that this is necessarily a failure of the data analytics team, or whether it's a failure of sort of the deployment side of things, or how the two relate together. But I was in contact with one resident in West End who said they specifically requested volunteer assistance, but then the Mud Army volunteers weren't deployed to their house. And I suspect what happened there was that when the supervisor who was deployed to Ryan Street in West End was going door to door with the line-up of volunteers behind them and saying, how many do you need? They didn't get any, they would have called out, no one would have heard them, and so then they just move on to the next house. So I think that's what happened, and maybe councillor Adams will correct me, but I was watching the deployment in East Brisbane and it was a similar phenomenon there, where I think residents had, from specific households had requested help, but if on the day the Mud Army volunteers rocked up and there was no one answering at that particular moment, then they moved on to other households and other streets, and they didn't necessarily directly check back in with those residents to see if they still needed help. And in the end, there were a couple of households where we were contacted by residents who said, oh, we asked for the Mud Army to help, we were told they'd come out, but they've missed my house. And so then we were sending like Greens volunteers out to do the cleaning, and that was good and we were happy to help, but it does, I think, highlight a gap in the deployment strategy. And so I'd be interested in whether councillor Marks or councillor Adams or anyone else wants to reflect on that, because I appreciate it's difficult, but it strikes me that if residents have signed up and said they'd like volunteer support, we should have their contact details. And so then I wonder why we're not able to contact the residents and say, hey, we'll be coming to your street at roughly this time or roughly on this day, and then the resident can be there to direct the volunteers and arrange for the kind of help that they need. But that didn't seem to happen, so, I mean, we've all heard the criticisms of the Mud Army volunteers not being deployed sooner, and I understand there were concerns about further weather events, that sort of thing. I personally think they could have been deployed a lot sooner rather than holding them off until the Saturday, but I won't reexamine that point. But I do think that even on the Saturday where they were being deployed, they were just being deployed to a street or to a particular neighbourhood, and there wasn't enough rigorous reference back to the data that council had already collected to make sure that every household that needed assistance was getting assistance. So yeah, I'm not actually sure whether this is a problem of the city analytics team. Reading here, it just, the report doesn't say a lot of detail, it just says the map data was also used to inform deployment of the Mud Army 2.0. So yeah, I'm not clear whether, did city analytics compile a really comprehensive list of specific addresses with the street numbers and the contact details of each resident? And yeah, and did the council officers on the ground have those details when they were on the ground on Saturday deploying volunteers? And if they had those details, were they instructed to call up or check in with the households that had requested assistance but where a resident didn't seem to be present on the ground at the time? Because I think, yeah, it does seem like a few residents were a little bit disappointed, where they thought they'd be getting help, there was a lot of promotion, there were a lot of billboards recruiting for the volunteer Mud Army, a lot of buzz around the idea, but then residents actually on the ground didn't receive any help through that channel. And later on, I think a similar thing kind of occurred with the Defence Force and the Fire Service, but I know council doesn't control those bodies, so I won't hold council responsible for that. But yeah, certainly there was a gap there in that we were collecting data, we were using that data to map where volunteers were needed, but then we weren't being specific enough and allocating volunteers to the specific households that had requested support. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, further speakers. Councillor Johnston?
Yes, I rise to speak on the Economic Development and Olympics Committee report regarding council's early response to the Brisbane 2022 floods. Now, I think the first problem with this is early response seems to be a bit off, so that part's problematic. But I do want to speak specifically to issues of the Mud Army and also city analytics. Firstly, I do want to thank all the volunteers who did come out on the Saturday. I am sorry that they weren't put to good use. It was very clear almost immediately that they were being dropped in odd spots or, you know, had run out of things to do. I think like most councillors, I got a call at 2.30 in the afternoon from the divisional manager, asking me where to deploy people. I mean, a third of my ward was flooded and she's asking me where to deploy people. I think something went wrong. I think the, I think the problems this time round were the opposite to last time. So in 2011, without question, what happened was wrong, and it was obvious on the streets, everywhere I went in my ward, people had signs up saying Mud Army, no thank you. They were everywhere. And that was a response to the problems of 2011, where people came with the best of intentions and went into houses with no one in them and threw things out. Now, that didn't happen this time, which was good. But a lot of people had been badly burnt and weren't prepared to allow people they didn't know into their homes. The bigger problem, I think, is this expectation of a Mud Army, and it's really interesting to me that we've not actually heard, and even in this, we don't know, there were reports from the Lord Mayor that 15,000 people had registered to come and help. I have no idea how many people actually went out on the day, and no one's actually said, so that'll be something I'll put on notice unless the deputy mayor knows. I'd be really interested to know how many people actually were deployed on the day, and I presume council does have that data. The biggest problem, I think, is the way in which council went about organising where the volunteers were going to go, and certainly councillor Sri touched on this a moment ago. It's my understanding that council had the following information available to them. Within a couple of days, two to three days, they had, right from day one, despite what the Lord Mayor thinks, reports from councillors on the ground about where streets were flooding and where houses were flooding. Two, they had drone footage of the flooded parts of Brisbane. They had on-the-ground reports from council officers who were roaming around, looking at areas that flooded and providing ground intelligence back to council. They had satellite mapping, and council provided us with that satellite mapping a couple of days ago. They had the flood maps that council issued saying where it was going to flood. So council had all this information about where it was going to flood in Brisbane. The problem, I think, is, and I was pretty upset, I can tell you, when councillor Krista Adams sent out an email to everybody, a blithe little email, just saying, send us a street spreadsheet with all your names, addresses, phone numbers, contacts, whatever, for people who you want help for. Now, I haven't finally confirmed the number in my ward, but it'll be somewhere close to 2,000 homes, I'm thinking. Currently, it's 120 streets. They range from water under the house through to catastrophic flooding into second stories. So a lot of people's homes have been adversely impacted. I did my very best, like I did in 2011, but when you don't have an office, you have no power, two of your staff don't have power at home, one only had foot access to her own home, and council goes outside of the established disaster arrangements to get you to write down thousands of households on a spreadsheet, that's just not on, that's not on. Council had the flood maps available, they knew where it flooded, they had the drone footage available, they knew where it flooded, they had the on-the-ground intelligence from both myself and council officers. And I just find that this idea that council needed more information to actually get a response out to communities in need and streets in need to be nonsensical. And I have to agree with councillor Sri, it was really interesting in talking to people, and I've been on the ground in every street and spoken to residents in every street, not all residents of each street, but as many as I can. In Sherwood, for example, Mud Army volunteers went into one street, but they didn't go into the adjoining flooded streets. And I don't know why, if they'd have walked to the corner, they would have seen the next street that was flooded and gone there. So I don't, I don't really understand why that didn't happen, because obviously, if I write down Egmont Street and Macalla Street, there are adjoining streets to that that are immediately flooded. But it's not down to what I said, council's got maps, it had drone footage, it had near mapping, it's got flood maps. You know, the flood did largely follow the outline of where council thinks it was going to flood, without question, right? The severity of it was about half of what it was in 2011. So we're very lucky in my ward, 2011 was much more substantial than 2022, as bad as 2022 was. It's a miracle that the Brisbane River didn't flood more, because there would be thousands more homes in my ward that would have been devastated. So I think one of the biggest issues that comes out of this, that will certainly be part of any submission I make to Justice to Jersey, is why is it even in the middle of last week, council was writing to us saying, please send us a list of the streets in your ward that flooded? They had all that information, they had it all, they knew where it flooded. Council published those, as dodgy as they were, they published those maps on Sunday. They had where it flooded. Why is it then that they're still asking a week and a half later for where it flooded? I was, to be honest, pretty upset when that email came through from councillor Adams, because we were also told that this is how the Mud Army would be getting assistance to people. And I'd already spent, I think, five days it was at that point, relaying through information to council's LDCC team, which is where councillors are supposed to give information about the floods and get information about the floods, so that we can liaise with our community and assist council's flood response. So when the politicisation of the floods started, and that was an early point in that process, it added a level of distress and confusion to what we were supposed to be doing, that was just not appropriate. And I believe I might have said that, and I believe it again today too, that the person who botched this in 2011 is the person who's botched it in 2022, but for different reasons. And I just failed to understand why it happened the way it did, and I will be genuinely seeking answers about this. There are reports on the day of this, which just strikes me as astonishing if it's true, that the Mud Army volunteers were all given tetanus injections before they left their meeting point at the planetarium or wherever it was. Now, once you get a shot in your arm like that, you're not supposed to do heavy lifting or go out and, you know, do things like that. I don't know why volunteers were told to get tetanus shots before going out. Obviously, people are put into risky situations with the debris, so I understand the point of the tetanus shot, but I don't know why, for example, it wasn't done when they returned, when they could go home, instead of them being sent out into 35-degree days, going around helping people with sore arms. And that's an on-the-ground report back to me, someone asking me why that happened, and I didn't even know, I did not know. So I don't know if that was a condition of having to volunteer, I don't know if they were just offered as a voluntary thing, I don't know why they were done before, which is my issue, rather than later, or why, you know, why they weren't sent to a doctor or, you know, wherever. I think, I think the thing that council needs to understand is that...
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers? Councillor Strunk? Oh, sorry, councillor Landers, you would, okay, councillor Strunk first? Okay, councillor Landers.
Thank you. Chair, I rise to speak on IDMA and the Mud Army 2.0, and the fantastic response by the community that delivered support to flood-affected residents. In my local area where creeks and overland flow caused damage to properties, we were able to get in and start the clean-up on the Monday. Our own local Mud Army came together with the aid of the wonderful Brackenridge Lines Club, who helped with moving water damage items to the curb, pulling up flood floor coverings and providing comfort in a listening ear to residents impacted. This meant that we had most of the heavy lifting done by the end of the week, and we had volunteers ready to join in the next stage with the Mud Army 2.0, and to assist residents affected by river flooding. And I even met volunteers who had been impacted by creek and overland flooding, who had cleaned their homes and wanted to help those inner-city residents begin their clean-up. Having been a member of the 2011 Mud Army, it was quite surreal to now be on the organisational side of the clean-up operation, and it was an honour to join with councillor Davis and our wonderful council officers to assist with the mobilisation of the Mud Army from the Mount Coother Botanic Gardens Marshalling Station, which was one of three stations on that day. And I know that councillor Owen, councillor Wong, councillor Toomey and councillor Howard also assisted, and of course, all councillors in those affected areas were on the ground helping as well. Along with many volunteer council officers, we gathered at 6am to prepare for the volunteers to register, provide equipment, and also divide them into teams to be briefed and bussed out to where they were needed. We were also joined during the day by the Brisbane greeters, who helped to welcome and marshal volunteers into the centres. I want to thank the teams behind this huge coordination and mobilisation of volunteers. It was a well-oiled, efficient machine, and I want to acknowledge the council officers, bus drivers, Brisbane greeters, truck drivers...
Point of order to you councillor Sri.
Will councillor Landers take a question?
No. The ADF, and all involved in the coordination of the Mud Army across the city. There were others behind the scenes of this Mud Army as well that people won't have heard about, and one of our first jobs of the day before volunteers arrived was to put together at least 100 brooms kindly donated by Freidenberg Home and Cleaning Solutions of Pinkham Bar, along with mops and wipes. We had the help of the local stake member, Christian Rowan, and councillor for Pullenvaugh Greg Adaman, who also later headed out on one of the buses with the teams. The Mud Army 2.0 consisted of generous and kind community members who worked in humid conditions to clean mud from people's homes, remove damaged goods and organise damaged goods on the curbside to allow for easier and faster pickup by council trucks and bobcats and the ADF. It was sturdy work and no doubt, for many, quite heartbreaking to witness. We thank them for their support and for bringing comfort to so many people at their most vulnerable time. Just being there and showing people that they cared meant so much. And of course, like all armies, they need to be fed, and this support came from young and old across the community. From Bernadette Highland Wood and her family, who delivered food in brown bags with beautiful drawings on them that the children had done, and notes for the Mud Army, saying thank you... saying thank you with bread rolls that were donated by St Lucia Breadhound and ham by the IGA, to Mari, who individually wrapped dozens and dozens of Anzac slices, to Dylan, who delivered gorgeous vanilla cupcakes with caramel buttercream, to Harris Farm Markets for the fresh apples, pears and bananas, and the wonderful Stuart Homeschool Borders, who baked muffins all day and made two trips down the hill to deliver them to our hungry volunteers and returning Mud Army. These country girls said they know what it is like to experience difficult times. And they were so happy they could help and do something. At the end of the day, we welcome back busloads of muddy, hot and hungry troops with food and water and so much thanks. We listen to their stories and we witness them exchanging phone numbers with newly-made friends that they had worked side by side with during that day. We are so very proud of Brisbane, and I know the rest of the councillors join me in the gratitude that we have for the Mud Army 2.0.
Councillor Lenders. Further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Listen, I rise to speak on this item and certainly to reflect on how the Mud Army was rolled out. But I suppose there's an old maxim in managing any business or organisation, and that is if you fail the plan, you plan to fail. And so much aspect of the plan that Brisbane City Council was operating was really a fail in so many ways. It wasn't all a fail, absolutely not. But my rise is to speak about those areas that we see that we didn't do a very good job in as a council. The Mud Army probably was the one that struck me the first, actually. And I'm blessed to be in a ward that we didn't have any flood inundation, right? And so my ward residents decided to do other things, and that is to volunteer for the Mud Army and for other jobs as well. And so I started to get some feedback in regards to some of the people that actually volunteered for the Mud Army, and of course, it was cancelled after one day. Now, I can only assume if you gather 15,000 people that are willing to work and you're only even, I don't know if you deploy them all on that day or not, but certainly if you gather that many people and they're willing to work, you certainly want them to give them more than one day's work. So I can only say that, I can only see that either the demand was less than what we planned for or the other way around. I don't know. I'm sure Justice to Jersey will get to the bottom of it in regards to the Mud Army and other aspects of the response by Brisbane City Council. So if we... Some of the other issues, I suppose, was in regards to the Mud Army, but another broader issues as well was the communication, or the lack thereof. People didn't really know what, who to communicate with in regards to wanting to volunteer in my ward. I'm just going to speak about my ward, although I did hear some other anecdotal evidence from other wards as well around me because those wards, of course, were much more greatly impacted, or were impacted very greatly, actually, including the Maroka Ward, the Jamboree Ward, and of course, Division One of the Ipswich City Council, which is on my boundary as well. So it's really important that communication is meted out in a way that people can actually hear it or see it. And I know that's difficult because a lot of people lost power and it's really hard to communicate these. And so consequently, I would think that a local councillor would be a good source of that information, that they would be able to disseminate that information out to their residents that they represent. So in saying that, you've got to know what you're doing. And yes, there are some councils in this place that did go through 2011, so they were new, but there's a lot that didn't know. And, you know, when the water's rising and you don't know, you know, you sort of panic a little bit, I'm sure, especially if a lot of your residents are being impacted. And of course, it gets very emotive. And, you know, and if you don't actually have that background information as a councillor as to what your job is, it's really hard to help other people as well. So much so, in the planning, last year in August and February this year, in the Finance Committee, there were two separate chairs for both those meetings, a presentation on the disaster preparedness, my Brisbane City Council was presented. And at the end of the presentation, I suggested, no, I asked actually, that councillors should be given a half-day seminar, a full-day seminar, it didn't really matter. But we need to know what our job was. And so I suggested during both presentations at two different dates, and they were just ignored. When I say ignored, it wasn't taken up. They heard me, but that's where it ended. Nothing was done after that. And here we got the 2022 floods. Who were the thoughts? You know, 10 years after the last ones, we'd be going through them again, but we've got to be prepared. So if you fail the plan, you plan to fail. And if you don't give the local councillor the information that they need to know to do their job and to support what Brisbane City Council's trying to do or their council's trying to do, well, good gracious. I mean, we're an asset. There's 26 of us. And people come to us and they want to know things. And it's very embarrassing. So what I did, in absence of that, we have these severe storm weather kits the Brisbane City Council put out some years ago. During one of those presentations I was talking about in finance, right? We were presented, it was in finance, we were presented, and I thought, this is a great idea. Councillor Owen brought one of them in, and I thought, wow, what a great idea, you know? Storm season every year, you put them out? So we just grabbed as many as we could prior to the floods. Now, I didn't have a crystal ball, but it, you know, it was a storm season and things were, you know, it had been raining a bit, so we grabbed as many as we could. And literally, we distributed hundreds right throughout my ward. And they're a great thing that council puts together. So I'm thinking that, well, listen, you know, if those 28,000 people that had been inundated with flood right across Brisbane had one of those kits, right? They would have been a lot better off in knowing what to do, even down to what to do with the pets. Of course, people love their pets. There was even a brochure in there on that as well. So let's, Lord Mayor, maybe some of that money that we spend on that monthly circular that goes out to every resident, costing hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe we should put some of those kits together and distribute them to every one of our residents right across Brisbane. It would be certainly more helpful than that Inside of Brisbane, what's it called again? Living in Brisbane. So I think maybe that would be a better way of spending the money. Now, again, back to the Mud Army. It was, you know, I remember in 2011, it was almost an organic development back then. Brisbane City Council did a good job, wasn't perfect, as councillor Johnson was saying, in regards to a lot of stuff being thrown out of the houses and people didn't want to put that out on the curb. But that was really a direction oversight, I suppose, when people were being told what they could expect when they went out to do that work. So I'm not going to blame council necessarily for that. But this time around, it was really a fail. One day... Yeah, listen, whoever managed it, whoever oversided it, I should say, right? Because council officers take direction from the chairs, from the mayor, deputy mayor. It was really a fail. And if you think one day of a Mud Army, after all that effort and money was thrown at it to get it up and running, you think that's a great thing, well, I've got news for you. I don't think the review's going to look at it that way either. So I'll just conclude with my comments there. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Adams? Oh, sorry. Did you have, councillor Griffiths, did you have your hand up?
Ah, yes, I did.
My apologies, deputy mayor. Councillor Griffiths?
Does the deputy mayor want to go?
Have you sum up, Mr. Chair?
Councillor Griffiths, I'll give you the floor.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I also wanted to participate in this debate as well. I think it was fitting to thank residents who participated in the Mud Army. I know many of them did it with the best intentions and did really well, from what I saw. I think it confused me about the data because I know we've been putting information through as requested, through to the LDCC for the whole time. And even now, we're getting lots of requests through the office for the Mud Army to come and help them out. And basically, the LDCC are telling my office and telling residents, no, you're not getting any assistance now, it's over. So I'm a bit confused about the role of the LDCC. And I think people are confused about the role of the Mud Army. And it seemed a big mistake that it was only for a day because I know in my community, we were running a local hub in Rockleigh, and councillor Johnson was there, and we ran it in a car park that was with a local business, Dewar's Refrigeration. We were there for six days, so we went there from Tuesday to Sunday. And we had volunteers on the ground and we had computers and we basically went from door to door to find out the needs of the residents. And then as volunteers came down, we connected them with residents. I pick up on councillor Johnson's point. People had good experience of Mud Army last time, but they also had a bad experience of the Mud Army last time. Certainly, I would say about a third to a half of people in Rockleigh didn't want the Mud Army. They reported that they had items stolen. They reported that a lot of stuff was taken out of their house that wasn't seen as valuable but was thrown away. And they felt overwhelmed by the Mud Army. Certainly, the message we gave residents who went in was two things, be respectful and be safe. And they were, so the two messages that really worked well. Many residents actually requested a sign for their fence to say, no Mud Army, or yes, please Mud Army would be great. I did raise that with councillor Howard, but it couldn't be done in the short timeframe that we had. But I think in future, that might be something to consider because a lot of people don't want the Mud Army and a lot of people do want the Mud Army. What residents did want in Rockleigh was locals working on their properties and locals they knew. So we worked with the Sushi Foundation, we worked with, who didn't want to go through the Mud Army. We worked with one of the local churches. We also worked with many, many volunteers. And we connected them up in about groups of four or five where they went to the same house and worked there for a few days. And that was from the Tuesday on, and it was very effective in terms of getting results. Even on the Sunday, when we were packing up at the end of the day, people from all over Brisbane who were in the Mud Army came to Rockleigh to give us a hand through that volunteer model. So I actually think, rather than, I wouldn't say the Mud Army failed, but I would say the Mud Army's a good idea, but we also need to look at it. And I would say as a community-up approach as well as a council-down approach to get a really tight outcome for people. And I just think that's a good use of resources. We could go on the ground faster, be doing more and almost act like a hub where we provide a service to the community for a week or so. I would certainly put that, I'll put that model up. You know, it's certainly a model we used in 2011, and it was very useful in this time round, and we perfected it this time round. I would like to also thank Jackie Meany, who was from the Lions, who helped me in 2011 and helped coordinate my staff, the business, so Dewar's Refrigeration, and many, many, many volunteers, too many to name. We still have a lot of issues going on in Rockleigh. We had a suicide as part of the flood event. And there are people who are greatly affected by mental health issues down there. People who can't leave their homes, who need to leave their homes because their stuff's going to be stolen. So their doors are swollen up, so they can't either open their doors or they can't close their doors safely. The need is so great and it's going on that I really think there's more room for the Mud Army. So that's my feedback, but I think an okay job, but I think it could be done better. And once again, I think it's a shame that local councillors weren't consulted, weren't listened to. And that seemed to be a consistent experience, not just for me but for other councillors in relation to this whole exercise. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers? Deputy Mayor, my apologies from before.
No, that's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have enjoyed listening to the feedback and I have, actually, I take the opportunity now to share the very specific job that the Mud Army had and to rebut some of the complaints I'm hearing because I'm getting a bit confused that I listened to a half an hour of E and C and probably more in question time of councillors on the other side whinging and complaining and screaming across the chamber that they were never consulted. And now they're whinging and complaining that I emailed them and that the divisional manager phoned them. So I don't know if it's, I don't understand. We are damned if we do and if we damned if we don't.
Councillor Johnson, please.
Damned if we do and damned if we don't. The Mud Army had one very specific job. And that very specific job for the Mud Army is to help clean the mud out of the houses or move any of the equipment or stuff that is damaged onto the curbside. Now, this was a very different event, yes, to 2011. It was also a very different event with regards to the timing. And I have to say, I agree with councillor Shree. I really wish we could have gone out early with the Mud Army. We were ready Thursday. We were ready and raring to go on Thursday. And a personal phone call with the Lord Mayor and the Premier, the Premier made it very clear under her advisement that she did not want people going out in the next two days because of the weather events that were forecast, that she did not want to see Mud Army on the ground before lunchtime Saturday. Word for word, not before lunchtime Saturday. So when we were ready to go on Thursday and then everybody got a pseudo-holiday on the Friday, the mud militia did get out. The people got out. Those 15,000 people that volunteered with Volunteer Queensland were not going to wait. When the weather forecast was wrong, they were not going to wait. And they got out there and they started getting in there and helping, which is fantastic to see.
Councillor Johnson?
As I say, I'll take the interjection from councillor Johnson, that had nothing to do with the Mud Army. It's exactly what I'm saying. If we could have been out there on the Thursday and Friday, I'm sure we would have been out there with loads and loads and loads of more buses than we had on the Saturday. But there was an advisement from the Premier to stay at home. So we could not run the Mud Army. So by the time we were ready to hit the ground and we got the permission to go early on Saturday morning, a lot of the work had already been done. A lot of that onto-the-curbs-side work had been done. We did learn from 2011, and we do now with workplace health and safety. Now, the Mud Army cannot and were not allowed to lift curbside collection onto trucks. That was not a part that they could possibly do. The focus was to get it onto the curbside if the residents wanted it. And we heard from two councillors that a lot of residents didn't want it. And we were very clear with that as well to our Mud Army when we gave them their briefing. We did have flood maps. We did have drones. We knew where it is inundated. We knew where it was river. We knew where it was creek. But we didn't know what was going to be left by the time we got out there on the Saturday. So as we heard the whinging continually for the previous hour, I contacted councillors and I did not ask where has it been flooded, quote from councillor Johnson, why send a list for where it's flooding? I didn't ask for where it was flooding. I asked, and here's the email, to get a better understanding of how your communities have been impacted by floodwaters and what type of assistance they need. Now, I know with councillor Johnson, it's all about not letting the truth get in the way of good story. But the idea was to make sure we knew what streets needed curbside, no, 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 what curbsides needed help to get their stuff out onto, what houses needed help to get the stuff onto the curbside. That was the question. And the spreadsheet I sent had flood assistance, stuff being moved, curbside collection. Now, the experience when we got out there on Saturday was exactly as councillor Sri said, a lot of it had been done. And thank you to all the councillors who did give us their feedback without the sniping. And most councillors did. I know councillor Strunk did it, but we do know that you weren't that affected, so we presume councillor Strunk that you weren't that affected. And you told us that on Saturday as well, that a lot of the work had been done. And that was one of the issues on the Saturday. So the many, many buses that went out with 50 people in a bus, they can't just turn up at one house, there's 50 people on a bus. We had the maps, we have all those details and every one of those people were contacted within 24 hours if they didn't have on a phone or an email. Emailed on the Sunday, phoned on the Tuesday, on the Monday if they didn't respond. Everyone who had contacted us for the mud army. So there's many more in the LDCC that weren't mud army requests, but the mud army people were all contacted. And that's why you also got a phone call from the divisional manager overseeing and coordinating the mud army on Saturday afternoon in can you give us any other streets where they still need help for people to put stuff out on the curb? And I will quote from the briefing note that I know the Lord Mayor got through LDCC. Councillor Johnson left, no answer, we left a voicemail. Councillor Griffiths, explain.
Councillor Johnston, please, no more interjecting. Please, no more interjecting. I will warn you, councillor Johnston. Councillor, as you have failed to comply with the request made previously to take remedial action for your unsuitable meeting conduct, I hereby warn you in accordance with section 21.6 of the meeting's local law that failing to comply with the request may result in an order being issued. Councillor Adams?
Thank you. This is the briefing note from the Saturday afternoon. Yes, councillor Johnson did speak with Mr Tobias later in the weekend, but not on that Saturday afternoon. Did speak to councillor Griffiths, he explained he checked through his list and there was a concern he would come back.
Point of order, councillor Johnston?
Councillor Adams is lying.
Councillor?
And I suggest that she checks with Mr Tobias before she continues to say things that are false, obviously false and untrue. No, I'm not going to put up with people saying things like that that are not true.
Councillor Johnston?
I spoke with Mr Tobias.
Councillor Johnston, please sit down.
No, and not until that is corrected.
Councillor Johnston, as you continue to fail to comply with the request to take remedial action for your unsuitable meeting conduct in accordance with section 21.8 of the meeting's local law, I hereby make an order reprimanding you for your conduct. Your conduct and this reprimand will be noted in the minutes of the meeting. Councillor Johnston, as you continue to fail to comply with the request to take remedial action for your unsuitable meeting conduct in accordance with section 21.8 of the meeting's local law, I hereby make another order reprimanding you for your conduct. Your conduct and this reprimand will be noted in the meetings of this, in the minutes of this meeting.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston?
Firstly, I dissent in your ruling. But secondly, what are you going to do about the direct lies that councillor Adams has just told in this chamber?
Councillor Johnston, as you fail to comply with the request to take remedial action for your unsuitable meeting conduct in accordance with section 21.8 of the meeting's local law, I hereby order that you leave and stay away from the chamber, the antechamber and the public gallery for the duration of this meeting. If you refuse to comply with this order, your conduct will be treated as inappropriate conduct in accordance with section 21.10b of the meeting's local law. Please leave the meeting. Councillor Johnston, as you fail to comply with my order to leave the chamber and stay away in accordance with section 21.9 of the meeting's local law, 2001, I hereby order that you be removed from this place. Your conduct will be treated as inappropriate conduct in accordance with section 21.10b of the meeting's local law. Deputy Mayor, may I please have an adjournment of motion while councillor Johnston is removed from the chamber?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn this meeting until councillor Johnson is removed from the chamber. Seconded.
We have a motion for an adjournment. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. We have an adjournment. Good call, okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you. How much time, oh yeah, it's on there. Thank you very much. As I was saying, we wanted to make sure that we knew exactly from the councillors on the ground that we've heard many, many times here this afternoon that you should be contacting the local councillors on the ground who know exactly what's going on. So we took the opportunity, I shouldn't say we, the mud army team took the opportunity to ring the councillors on Saturday afternoon to say, hey, we got your list the other day, we really need to know, is there anything else for the mud army, any streets that you need? And as you said councillor Sri, a few here and there, which we've contacted one-on-one, but not streets that people were giving us for a busload of 50 people to turn up and take stuff onto the curbside. So as I was saying, the briefing we got from the team was that there was a call to councillor Johnson at the time from this officer, no answer, left a voicemail message. Called to councillor Griffiths, he said he explained, again, no answer, left a voicemail, he got straight back, straight away, we tried again. He explained that he was going to check with the list they had been tracking and would call back if there was any other locations and there was no return call. Councillor Strunk said, when he rang back, all okay here, thank you. Councillor Cook, I've said the spreadsheet, what we really need now is curbside pickup and we understood that, that's not mud army work. The same with councillor Cassidy. We had 120 of our own volunteers today, as councillor Cassidy said today, what we really need now is curbside pickup. Councillor Johnson did eventually get back, and I said the next day, but it wasn't, it was later that afternoon, to the divisional manager when she answered the phone and said that most of the areas were done, they'll be ready for a second visit, but the issues were the bins, which she'd been asking for for days. Advised, there was an elderly lady at Fairfield Road, which was another issue that was followed up, but not streets with actually places for curbside to be filled from houses. And councillor Cumming, thank you very much, will get back and check the impacted wards. We also rang councillor Hutton, councillor Adaman, Matic, councillor Wines, who said similar things, thank you very much, people have been out, they've been about. And as we saw, as I was saying earlier, a lot of this work that the mud army were doing was already done in the days leading up when there was an inclement weather forecast. Mud army held up. I know with councillor Matic that we were down there, he's not here at the moment, councillor Matic, we're down there from Tuesday, they had their mud militia out for four days before the mud army, making sure things were getting onto the curbside and being collected. So we did have the flood maps, we did have the drones, we knew where the flooding was. What we were trying to ascertain was where could the mud army come and specifically help you? So no, we could not go into empty houses and they didn't go into empty houses. They could only move things to the curb, not lift onto trucks. There was tetanus shots offered, but the people had, the volunteers had the choice of before or after, totally up to them as well. And my assistance was very clear that it was about sending us where do you still need help for the mud army, not for where did you get flooded, as was mentioned by councillor Johnson. I would like to just say in my remaining 20 seconds, councillor Strunk, I am absolutely disappointed for hear you say that council failed. Those council officers in the mud army team worked 12 hours a day from the Monday through to the Saturday and it was a 14-hour day on Saturday. I was in there from 5:30 on the Saturday morning and the team were there long after me when I left at 6 o'clock that night. They did a spectacular job and thank you to everybody who volunteered on the ground.
Thank you, councillor Adams. We now move the vote on this report. All in favour of this report, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Murphy, Transport Committee report, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 1st of March 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Owen that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 1 March 2022 be adopted. Councillor Murphy?
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair. As you were aware, last week consisted of two committee meetings. So prior to the recent flood event, we had planned on receiving an update on the progress of the Green Bridges program. So I'll keep this report brief so I can get to updating the chamber further on flood impacts and there are a few milestones that we have achieved on Green Bridges, so I'll just touch on them now. Firstly, I'd just like to thank the Connect Brisbane team and their contractors for their efforts during the flood event. As councillors would be aware, during the flood, there was concern around one of the crane barges being used for the Kangaroo Point Bridge, a structure called a jack-up barge and that was at risk of tipping and floating downstream. Fortunately, this catastrophic situation was avoided thanks to our highly skilled contractors. They were able to monitor and level out the barge before being able to tug her downstream safely where she was moored at Marri for safety checks. I'm pleased to report to the chamber today that the barge is unharmed and is returning to work on piling the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge as we speak. So a great outcome there. On the topic of other bridges in the program, I can advise councillors that we are in the final procurement stages now for the Breakfast Creek Green Bridge. And I know that you, Mr. Chair, are very keen to see us get on with this really important active transport project connecting Newstead Park to the Laurisbonny River Walk. And public consultation on the preliminary business cases and concept designs for the West End Green Bridges has now closed. We have received more than 1,000 survey responses and approximately 770 people attended 10 information sessions. So the team will now be working to analyze that and produce a consultation report and will of course update the community on the outcomes once that has been finalized. Of course, as I have said previously, there will be further consultation with communities at those landing points as we get further down the track with those bridges. I'll leave further debate to the chamber. I look forward to giving an update on the flood impact in the next committee report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further debate on this report, 1st of March? No further report, no further debate? Thank you. We now move to the vote. On the report dated Tuesday, 1 March 2022, Transport Committee report, all in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Murphy, the report, please, of the meeting dated Tuesday, 8 March 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 8th of March, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Owen that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 8 March 2022 be adopted. Councillor Murphy?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. In the second committee meeting last week, I provided an update to the impact of the recent flood event on the transport portfolio. It was a snapshot of what our immediate response looked like. I can now give a further update to the chamber in the same vein. Across the last week, we've been working to assess the damage to our assets and our infrastructure and we've started the cleanup and repair process. While we enter this next stage, I can say that the dangers still exist out there from damaged and washed away bikeways that people are traversing despite the fact that they aren't washed away. And our ferry terminals, all of which are still closed and some of which there is still some dangerous amounts of debris around. So please stay away from damaged infrastructure. I know it shouldn't need to be said, but it does. If it is closed off with tape, please don't go in there, there's a good reason for that. I wanna just touch on our ferries. Now, over the past week, RCF and our ferry team has been working very hard to assess all of our vessels. We've worked with Maritime Safety Queensland to move our vessels onto hardstand for inspection. We've also been steam cleaning the interiors to protect against inundation of rainwater, any dangerous mould developing. Unfortunately, the severe weather and the flooding sent a large amount of debris down a river, as we saw, which impacted our terminals and our vessels. And we're still working on vessel assessments, but it's clear that a number of city cats will require repair work before they can be returned to service. I want to assure the community that all of our vessels are insured and that we have commenced an insurance process as part of our flood recovery. Our ferry services, excuse me, Chair, remain suspended at this time, but we're working very hard to restore services as quickly as possible. Although some city cats have suffered damage from debris, most of our vessels remain in good shape and I can advise that it will soon be possible to restore some services. Once our vessels and terminals are cleared and cleaned, we will restore services where possible and will gradually rebuild our network up to full capacity. Just on ferry terminals, as the Lord Mayor and I have outlined over the last week, our ferry terminals withstood significant flooding, strong river currents and impacts from debris in the river. While all of them have sustained some level of damage, we have not seen a repeat of 2011 when seven terminals washed away. Where some of the terminals built to replace the ones lost in 2011 have swinging articulated gangways, some have released due to the velocity of the floodwater. Work is underway on planning the assessment and reattachment of those gangways at this time. We've also seen strengthened flood resilient pylons do their work to protect against the ferocious currents of the Brisbane River in flood and a large amount of debris impact as well. The flood reconstruction ferry terminals at Milton, QUT North Quay, Holman Street, UQ and Regatta were the ones that suffered the most extensive damage in 2011 due to their location in the river and the speed and path of debris traveling downstream, as well as the depth and flow of the river. Due to their position in the river, we can expect these terminals to be some of the hardest hit. But as I said, the major difference is in 2022, these terminals are still standing. We've been able to undertake an initial assessment of the terminal's condition using drone and land-based inspections. MSQ is progressing hydrographic surveys on the river to be able to reopen it in conjunction with the Australian Navy. And I thank them for their assistance in this task. We have, we've had Royal Australian Navy clearance divers down in the river all week doing the very hard work of assessing our terminals and that will, that will help us to a great extent at getting these terminals back in action ASAP. So I want to thank them. At this stage of the assessment, we anticipate needed repairs to some of the gangways, electrical work and ballast trades. Our team and our contractors at River City Ferries are very keen to get services back up and running as soon as possible and so we are making assessment of ferry terminals an absolute priority, Deputy Chair. In terms of cleaning, we've made good headway while the surveys are taking place underwater. Cleaning at Howard Smith Wharves and South Bank is complete. North Shore Hamilton and Brett's Wharf Terminal clean is commencing today and Tenerife and Mertha-Mooring will commence tomorrow. So we are making good progress. Mr. Chair, on bikeways, I'd just like to discuss our bikeway network. Can I first just acknowledge that we need to do better in communicating the impact that the flood has had to our bikeway network? And I look forward to having more details to share with the community about the detours, the damage and the rebuild that will follow in the next week. But I want to thank the community for their patience and their understanding. Now, the combination of river and creek flooding that we have experienced in this flood event has had an enormous impact on our bikeway network, as I alluded to last week. 234 kilometers of 395 kilometers of off-road bikeway was inundated by the flood, plus upstream creek lengths, which is still being determined. So a very, very significant impact to our city's bikeway network. Our key priority is of course to just keep people safe. Signage and fencing has been and will be continued to be installed where needed for safety. Where sections are closed, I ask the public to respect that for everyone's safety. Where cyclists are being asked to dismount, again, this is for their safety and we ask that they do that in their own interests. Surveys and inspections are underway, a lot has been done and there is a lot more to do, Chair. The full extent of damage is currently still being assessed and even today, some areas are only just becoming accessible due to safety concerns and obviously the spread of infrastructure damage that we've suffered across the city and the necessity to ensure that roads are clear to be able to get trucks, bobcats into clear streets and allow people to get back into their homes. Teams of council offices are working through the priority of our bikeway corridors and will keep informing people where cleanup is needed and where repairs and detours are happening as well. Some of the first priority corridors include Kedram Brook, Ithaca Creek, Inaugural Creek, plus there are several others within the initial priority corridors, of which, as I said last week, Bicentennial Bikeway was our top priority. The data from this assessment will start coming through this week as works progress. This data combined with field inspection data will be brought into a mapping tool to illustrate and report on the status of the bikeway network. And this will be used for mapping a bikeway network status and informing our cleanup and repair work, plus... Plus, we will establish a landing page on council's website to keep people informed as to the rebuild. Now that council has dealt with much of the curbside flood damage waste of our residents and resources are being reallocated to bikeways more and more as we speak. The huge task of mud and debris removal is now well underway, and we are increasing resources as they become available. Cleaning in many locations has involved the removal of up to 30 centimetres of mud and silt, and we can't just simply give it back to the river that gave it to us. Deputy Chair, we have to dispose of it, dispose of it properly, and that is not an easy task. All known affected bridges and other crossings such as culverts and causeways on our dedicated bikeways have been inspected. A total of 175 structural inspections have been undertaken thus far. The good news is that we have very few bridges and culverts in need of a full rebuild on our dedicated bikeways. However, we do know that a large sections of bikeway have been demolished or substantially damaged. At the Kedram Brook Brightway, for example, there are large amounts of damage to the bikeway at the Thistle and Bradshaw Street Crossing. Shipping container has collided with the Gilbert Montrose Street Bridge, and multiple sections of the bikeway that were there prior to the flood are simply not there anymore. They have been completely washed away. As we know, and has been discussed here in this place, the Bicentennial Bikeway has been cut by the Drift Restaurant and is currently closed. After the Drift Restaurant is removed, Deputy Chair, we will need to take some time to clean and inspect the bikeway to ensure that it is safe, and this will be dependent on a damage assessment, including structures, pathways, shelters and railings. And I'm very glad that the state government through Queensland Reconstruction Authority are now working, after a 10-year hiatus, for removal of the restaurant. It has been far too long, but at least we are getting on with the job now, and I'm very hopeful that we can get that sorted out soon and have the bikeway reopened to the public. Finally, Chair, last week I reported that all of our bus services were up and running again, which was a great achievement, given buses are one of the city's most vital transport services, two-thirds of the Brisbane travelling public travel on buses. Although the network is back up and running, there are still some route diversions and some temporary stops in place around the city where we continue to manage flood impacts. And of course, councillor Allen's ward in Turnbull was severely affected. The Turnbull Shopping Centre, for example, remains closed, and the centre itself experienced significant flooding and repair. Chair, our green and public transport network has been hit hard by the floods across Brisbane, and the task to rebuild and repair will be significant. But I want to thank the community for their patience while we do this in the safest way possible, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, Councillor Murphy. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Sri.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak to the report. Just briefly, I'll note that it's often kind of annoying when the signs say cyclists dismount, but there's not a sign further along the bikeway telling you you're allowed to get back on again. So I don't know, it doesn't happen on every bikeway, but maybe it'd be nice for the people putting the signs out to think about that stuff a little bit more. I wanted to speak primarily about the importance of some bus services to fill gaps in the ferry network. It's been about two and a half weeks now since the ferries have been unavailable to residents who normally rely on them for transport, and obviously there are understandable reasons for that. And all the information that's been made available so far suggests to me it could be quite some time before full ferry services are restored. And we've asked these questions a couple of times now. I haven't yet had really firm answers from the mayor or councillor Murphy, and perhaps councillor Murphy will be able to elaborate a little bit in his summing up remarks. But I guess residents who live close to these terminals and who rely on them for public transport really are wondering whether any alternative bus routes will be put on to cover those gaps, or indeed whether improvements to the frequency and operating hours of existing bus routes could be made in the near future so that there's an alternative bus route available. As I've mentioned previously, the 192 stands out as an obvious service that could be improved. The 192 runs from UQ St Lucia through West End and then into the city, so it provides an overland, a bus connection between UQ and West End, and has the added advantage of picking up Highgate Hill and other parts of Dutton Park as well. So it's quite an obvious route that would benefit from improvements anyway. But in light of the fact that the West End Ferry Terminal is down, we've got a lot of residents at the southern side of West End who are basically along, it's now quite a long journey to get to UQ. They have to get, walk to the Blue City Glider, and then that takes them into the centre, and then they get another bus back out. It's a significantly longer travel time journey, particularly in Peak House when Montague Road is heavily congested. So I would appreciate if councillor Murphy can explain a bit around what is the process for getting extra services added in a situation like this? I appreciate that some negotiation with the state government is probably necessary, and I recognise that the state's often very slow to reply on these kinds of issues. But it also strikes me that Brisbane City Council must have some contingency funds available where it can wear the upfront cost of increasing some of these bus services or improving some of these bus services temporarily and later on seek reimbursement from the state government. I don't accept the proposition that in a disaster where there's a big gap in the public transport network, Brisbane City Council should just throw their hands up and say, oh, well, we can't do anything until the state government says so. I think we have an obligation to residents who've come to align those public transport services that we will provide stopgaps and get them happening quickly. I had thought that two weeks after the flood event, by now the council would be announcing some interim bus routes. When the Kangaroo Point ferries went down a couple of years ago, the council rightly put on a free bus loop between Kangaroo Point and the CBD, and it didn't take too long to do that. So I do wonder what the holdup is, what the timeframes are in terms of these gaps. I mentioned the 192 service already. Another service that perhaps would benefit from increased frequency is the 232 bus service. This would connect more residents of Kangaroo Point and East Brisbane into the CBD, noting that the Mowbray Park Ferry Terminal at East Brisbane is out of action, as are the various ferries up at Kangaroo Point. But the 232 also connects east to Belimba and Hawthorn, and strikes me as a really obvious example of a bus service where if the frequency and operating hours of that bus service were improved, more residents would be enticed to travel by bus, and we would be able to avoid some of the severe traffic congestion issues we're now seeing on Litten Road. It's been quite noticeable in the last couple of weeks just how many cars are driving along Litten Road, and I attribute that at least in part to the fact that the ferries are out of action. And I do think council really needs to be looking at this and getting on to this more quickly. I've emailed the relevant divisional manager and asked those questions internally and haven't yet had responses. I know how busy people are, but there are a lot of busy residents as well who, they need to get to work, they need to get around the city. A lot of those inner-city residents in particular have, they don't own cars of their own. They've essentially done what council was trying to encourage them to do, which is not rely on private motor vehicle transport, sell your car, we've got a good public transport system in the inner city, you can walk and ride, et cetera, et cetera. So residents have taken that on in good faith, they've tried to switch to public and active transport, and now council is not providing the public transport that they've come to rely on. So again, I appreciate it's a flood, it's a bit unusual, but the council does need to be a little bit quicker at getting replacement or alternative services up sooner, recognising that by some accounts, this was probably only like a one in 50 years flood. There's some debate about that. But this was not as rare an event as, say, the 2011 floods were according to historical records. And there's every possibility we might see more floods of this level over the coming years. And in that context, the council needs to get a lot quicker at introducing replacement bus services when the ferries go down. I don't think it's satisfactory anymore for council to say, oh, this is completely unforeseeable, we didn't know the ferries would go down, we didn't know the river would flood, therefore we've been caught off guard. I appreciate there are lots of challenges, but it should, we should have this as a fail-safe that's built into our public transport system where if the river becomes unnavigable due to heavy storms or floods or any other issues, that there is a quick and straightforward process to get extra bus routes put on to the network. That should be built into the way the transport network is planned. That's a sort of basic resilience and redundancy planning in how you run a transport network. It shouldn't take three, four weeks to get alternative routes up and running. I will.
Thanks, Councillor.
I will finally add, and I appreciate this might take slightly longer, that the other route that really ought to be introduced as soon as possible is the Gold City Glider to connect Hamilton into the city and down to Wollongabba and Annerley. I know that those North Shore residents are also feeling the pinch in terms of loss of access to their City Cat services, and that Gold City Glider service is the really obvious bus route to introduce to fill that need. That would get residents into the city centre and also down to Wollongabba and vice versa. So I'm looking forward to hearing a bit more detail from councillor Murphy on who are we waiting on, what are the key roadblocks, how long can residents expect it'll be before those replacement bus routes are introduced? And will they be completely new bus routes, or will it be a case of we're just going to improve some of the existing services such as the routes I've just mentioned? Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor Sri. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, Deputy Chair. Just very briefly, in response to councillor Sri's comments just then, I will just say, councillor Sri, we have approached Translink about ferry replacement services in areas that are currently without a City Cat or Kitty Cat service as a result of the closure of the city's ferry network. Those discussions have commenced, and I'll be in a position to further update the chamber as to the progress of those discussions probably next week. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. All will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against? And no? The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, please. Infrastructure report.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 1st of March 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Maddock that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 1st of March 2022, be adopted. Councillor Wines, you have the call.
Thank you. The Infrastructure Committee presentation on that particular meeting was about retaining walls and embankment reconstruction and rehabilitation. It was a presentation we'd had prepared for some time, but it became particularly timely. And for no more councillors than yourself who had those issues in both Settlement Road and Mount Nebo Road about retained walls. Now, it's a substantial programme that's undertaken by the Division for the integral longevity of council assets, but doesn't necessarily get a lot of notice. That's probably for the best. You probably want to know that your retaining walls are working. You probably don't want to notice if they're not, if that makes sense. So the timely presentation in the end, because it actually was relevant to the flood recovery as well. So typically, reconstruction and rehabilitation works include construction of roads, footpaths, bikeways, buildings and creek bank stabilisation. Retaining wall structures are erected to retain and excavate or field embankment, retain soil at vertical or near vertical slopes, steeper than the natural slope, and prevent slope failure and control water runoff. Embankments and cuttings can be constructed by excavation and use a fill material to create both safer slope. Council proactively manages retaining walls and embankments through routine inspection, visual inspections, elevated working platforms, rope access and drone footage. So it's quite a bit of a way that we make sure that our retaining walls, because they can be quite high, are properly inspected for safety. If the deterioration is substantial and the asset is deemed to have reached the end of its service of life, a rehab option like significant repairs, full replacement or alternative designs are considered. Retaining walls and embankments that have instability issues may have the following visible defects: cracking, overturning, slips, rockfalls, erosion and accumulation of loose material. Weathering and erosion in particular can be caused by water from storms, runoff, waves, tides and infiltration, air, wind or chemical actions or reactions, and vegetation. With natural assets facing the elements also, it is vital that our assets are continually monitored for potential impacts from those. When it comes to the design and rehabilitation of retaining structures, they can take various forms such as stone pitching, block walls, sleeper walls, crib walls, gabion baskets or piled walls, and are used to support and retain materials often at a near vertical slope. They require less space than embankments. Other rehabilitation strategies include slope regressing, erosion control, anchoring or pinning, shotcrete, secured mesh, which allows for bolting mesh over a rock wall, allowing vegetation to grow and nature to take its course. The presentation was very thorough and was actually, as I said earlier, timely considering the issues that were relevant for retention and keeping our roads open and our network, transport network operating properly. I look forward to further contributions.
Thank you, councillor Wines. Is there any further debate? There'll be no further debate. I'll now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
All those against? The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, the report of the 8th, please.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated the Tuesday, 8th of March 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you, councillor Wines. It's been moved by councillor Wines, seconded by councillor Maddock, that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 8th of March 2022, be adopted. Councillor Wines, you've got the call.
Thank you. The Infrastructure Committee presentation was an opportunity for me to quickly update the committee members about the Division's work in assisting locals affected by floods and how our recovery efforts have gone so far, in particular how our infrastructure assets and our road network and our transport network had fared in as a result of the flood. Some of the early data collected by council includes that there was about 314 kilometres of the road network flooded, with over 50 roads of significance closed and over 120 traffic signal faults recorded, with over 70 parking metres damaged or out of action. One of council's most important and reactive divisions is the BMTMC, the Brisbane Metropolitan Transport Management Centre, managing traffic, both unplanned and planned incidents, and this is a particularly unplanned incident, providing traveller information to over, through over 600-plus CCTV cameras and 1,100 Bluetooth vehicle detectors. It receives intelligence from within council and other agencies and uses it to manage the wider network and liaise with other levels of government to ensure that our network works as effectively as possible. Noting this, from September, excuse me, from Saturday 26 February until Wednesday 2 March, the BMTMC managed 30 crashes, 155 abandoned stationary or broken-down vehicles, 119 flooded road jobs for major arterial and feeder roads, and more than 1,300 phone calls. As mentioned earlier, there have been substantial effects on the road network, and even to this day, there is one road that is still yet to be opened, and that's Mount Nebo Road, which has a lot of rural features, and there's still a lot of work to go on that, in particular considering that there are 24 slips along that, 24 land slips along that corridor of various sizes, with around 15 of those classed as significance with heights varying from eight to 15 metres and up to 50 cubic metres of spoil requiring to be removed from each of the locations. But I can say that as of today, all roads but for Mount Nebo Road are open. I can also say that as of today, that all the traffic signals are operating under their normal power. It was earlier this morning that the final traffic signal box was no longer run by a petrol generator. On the topic of traffic signals, during the flood, 129 signals ceased operation. Of these, 78 were due to Enerjex power failures, 31 were due to flood damage, and there were 20 faults, which are yet to be determined but are largely determined to be through things like communication faults. Also, there were three signalised intersections where the lanterns went underwater as well. By Sunday morning, 33 intersections were out of action, and that number nearly doubled to 60 by Sunday evening. The peak of the intersections which were not operating was 129 across the entire city. Can I pay special tribute to the officers who worked very hard to make sure that those traffic signals were operational and that our traffic network could operate safely again? Our traffic signals were fully operational by Thursday evening of last week, with the final two sets of intersections to be done were Land Street at Tuwong and Widdob Street at Nunda, both of which came into operation last Thursday. We are still working to ensure that the proper operation of the traffic signals returns to normal. The traffic signals have sort of two operations. There's the standard operating timing and then the optimised operating timing, which is how you get the traffic to move better during peak periods, you try and get more volume through it. As a result of some of this damage, they have reverted to a standard timing sequence, which means that the train, the traffic system will be operating less efficiently than it normally would, but we are working through each of those to make sure that we optimise the operation of the network through the traffic signal timing. There were flooding and moderate damage to many projects across the city. However, clean-up efforts have not required direct focus other than those officers stationed on-site. There are also three petitions for our consideration this evening, one on local area traffic management in Quinlan Street, Brackenridge. One on local area traffic management in Quinlan Street, Brackenridge. Another seeking a right turn ban from Gladstone Road into Prospect Terrace and Highgate Hill and Brook Street and Dorchester Street, South Brisbane. And a petition requesting council install traffic calming devices in Brenton Street, Norman Park. I look forward to further contributions.
Thank you councillor Wines. Are there further speakers? Councillor Strong.
Thank you deputy chair. I rise to speak in regards to clause A, the response to the 2022 flood event here in Brisbane. Let me first say what I, as I commenced my last foray into the debate in regards to the first, the economic development debate. And that is that if you fail the plan, you plan to fail. And I know the deputy mayor made great points to say that I was blaming council officers during that debate. But let me be very, very clear and I'll say it very, very slowly this time. And I think you'll find the transcript will back me up on this. Is I don't blame the officers for the decisions that were made. It rests with the chairs, the deputy mayor and the mayor. The buck stops with you guys and not with the officers. So let me start with that. And let me deal also with what I think we failed in regards to this particular report. And that is road closures. Now, during a presentation this morning in the committee, we heard a little bit about road closures and I asked some questions of how that goes, how that comes about when identifying what roads should be closed and how they should be closed and who makes that decision. And there's obviously some ambiguity when it comes to minor flooding, minor flooded roads as they call them. There's a bit of ambiguity or miscommunications or just not enough communications between what's actually happening in the minor flooding of the roads in our wards and what gets communicated or gets accepted, right? As something that is actually happening with the state government and their processes to identify and then to broadcast. I understood that and I'm thinking, well, we always, obviously, we've known that for a long time that there is some disconnect there between the two levels of government in regards to identifying. And I suggested, well, the local council would be a good one to verify that it's actually happening. So we're elected, we're supposed to be believable, right? Through the various levels of government. So I don't see why we can't be tasked in doing that little role if that's what it takes. But the other thing I thought was really done haphazardly or not done correctly was when they did close the road off, in some cases that I saw and some cases it was reported to me once I was talking to people about this, is that the road closure signs weren't actually put up. They, in some cases, it was maybe a little bit of safety tape across the road with a couple of cones, which probably works quite well in the daytime, right? But it doesn't work well at night. So I think that's another issue. And I'm sorry if this is whinging, right, deputy mayor. But this is constructive criticism, I'll put it. That's my words, maybe not yours. But I think, you know, if we're going to enter a debate, you don't want me to stand up. Maybe you do want me to stand up and say you did everything perfect, great, keep going. And we'll keep failing in some aspects. And that's the other thing I said in the other debate was, I'm not saying you failed at everything, but you failed at some things. And those are the things I'm going to point out. And hopefully we'll put a submission into Justice De Jersey's review and some of that will be sorted out. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Strong. Further speakers? Councillor Shree.
Thanks Chair. Rise to speak on the report and I'd just like to ask that item C be taken separately for voting, possible?
Item C, serial item for voting?
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, just briefly on item A, I might, I think I disagree with you slightly councillor Strunk in that it's going to be pretty hard to close off and appropriately sign that many flooded intersections and flooded roads within a short space of time. I have some sympathy for the administration on this because I can see that as a logistical exercise, it would be very, very difficult to get officers out to every single one of those intersections and install the appropriate signage. But I do think there's a lot of value in, and this is perhaps something that councillor Wines and others could look at exploring in the future, is setting up a more robust resident reporting system where residents are able to report inundations or flooded intersections or broken intersections in a system that updates real time. Google Maps has something similar to this, but it would be good for council to have a process that's a little more official and perhaps more reliable. I noticed this myself on that weekend when the rains were coming down, where you could see that gradually, as residents realised and reported via Google Maps that intersections were down, Google started to show that and started to reroute people accordingly via the maps. But there was a significant lag and a lot of extra traffic congestion and a lot of extra hassles were caused, particularly on that Sunday, because people took a long time to work out which intersections were flooded and closed. And I think there is an opportunity here. We talk a bit about smart cities and that sort of stuff. There's an opportunity here to use technology to crowdsource reporting of these sorts of incidents in a way that doesn't have to be manually verified by a council officer. Obviously, these sort of resident reporting systems can have errors as well, but it would be a simple matter of saying, look, this is a resident reported system. We haven't yet verified all these closures. But if 10 or 15 residents are all reporting that an intersection's down, that becomes useful information that the council should then share with other residents. So councillor Wines, I hope you'll take that suggestion on board and think about that going forward. Because I completely agree that it wouldn't be, it's not feasible for council to close that many roads in such a short space of time. But maybe we can do a better job of supporting residents to alert one another because even the traffic reports on ABC Radio etc couldn't keep up. Just turning to the petition, clause C, I was really, really disappointed in how this one turned out. It's a petition to basically ask for no right turn signage on peak hour for a few residential side streets in Highgate Hill. And we had literally dozens and dozens of residents. It was close to unanimous support for this change. And for those who aren't familiar with the context, these are residential side streets where you have to turn across two lanes of oncoming traffic on Gladstone Road. So 60 kilometre hour speed limit environment, really fast and dangerous environment where cars are turning right across oncoming traffic and often not giving way to pedestrians who are crossing the side streets etc. It's quite a dangerous area. The council officers, in my discussions with them, accepted that we wouldn't design intersections and road corridors like this today. And through you Chair, councillor Wines, I hope you're really taking this on board. They noted that these designs of the way cars are turning right across multiple lanes of traffic wouldn't be appropriate by today's standards. But they said they couldn't institute these peak hour right hand turn bans because there wasn't a strong enough crash history. And that's a familiar refrain that I'm sure a lot of councillors have heard. But it's really frustrating when, as a local councillor, I can see that there's a significant safety issue. Residents are reporting a significant safety issue. Even the officers acknowledge that the intersection designs are suboptimal, but council refuses to make any changes on the basis that there's not enough of a clear crash history. So I think there's a process problem here and a policy change that's required. Because if lots of residents are reporting a safety issue and the councillor is also concerned about that as a matter of safety and the intersection is also not up to current design standards, that should be enough of a basis to institute changes regardless of whether there's been a big history of crashes reported via Queensland Police and Queensland Ambulance Service. So I'm, yeah, a little disappointed in that aspect, but I'll leave it at that. I won't be supporting that petition response.
Thank you councillor Shree. Councillor Landis.
Chair, I rise to speak on item B and a request for a review of the current local area traffic management plan for Quinlan Street in Brackenridge. Currently, this street has a 50 kilometre speed limit between Depot Road and Barrett Street and a 40 kilometre speed limit north of Barrett Street. Between 2011 and 2019, council has investigated, consulted and implemented many traffic calming devices along Quinlan Street, including splitter islands with pedestrian refuges, several roundabouts and slow points, as well as a left turn only onto Depot Road. The petition requested local traffic only signage, but these have already been installed on all entry points to the area with signs in place at Depot Road, Barrett Street, Dara Street, Shaif Street and Child Street, which cover all entrances to Quinlan Street. To allow further assessment of traffic volumes and speeds on Quinlan Street as requested by petitioners, a traffic survey will be undertaken between Child Street and Barrett Street and this data will be used to determine if any additional traffic calming measures are required.
Thank you councillor Landis. Is there further debate? Councillor McLaughlin.
Oh, thank you deputy chair. I rise to speak on item A in this report and to applaud the work that was done by the BMTMC and the Congestion Reduction Unit in the course of this flooding event. I'll take issue with a couple of things that councillor Shree said. I'd also agree with some of the things that he said. In terms of the rainfall that fell on the city, there's no doubt that in, and it may have been different in different parts of the city, but in terms of the impact on our road network, particularly on the north side, this was clearly a one in 200 year event or more in terms of the volume of water that fell. And that's evidenced by the flooding that occurred on our major road networks in particular. I believe that it's, to councillor Shree's point, to expect officers to get out, to put signs on every flooded road as it occurs is probably not the way that we are geared up to go in that sort of event. And the best advice that people should follow is always going to come from radio, from disaster management systems on radio. And the BMTMC is crucial in providing that advice to the traffic reporters who do a fantastic job during these events. And I listen to commercial radio, I listen to the ABC and I thought they did a fantastic job. If it wasn't anybody who was aware that this was a significant flooding event, I don't know where they were. And that roads were going to be flooded, I don't know where they were. In my area, deputy chair, and this has been mentioned. So this is the front cover of my local monthly newspaper, The Village, The Village News. Amy Street, I'm not sure that signs anywhere there would have been useful in a situation where people are being evacuated in rubber duckies on Amy Street, down near Breakfast Creek Hotel and all along the businesses on Sangate Road. And the businesses along there have all reported that this was a significant event greater than anything that they've seen. The manager of a business called Comet, the water was double the height of 2011, leaving cars submerged up to their roofs. On par with 74, builder Danny St Leger says, reckons recent flooding was on a par with the floods of 74, it's nearly three times as much water as 2011. Another business says this, said that the 2011 flood was a splash in the pan compared to this event. Another proprietor in that area said, it was just so sad for the whole area. We put stock half a metre above the 2011 flood level, but it went above that. Just some of the anecdotal evidence about what was happening in this area, which is evidenced by the flood marks on all the buildings in all this area. The impact on our road network, yes, it was enormous. I believe that there was something like 25 million litres of water pumped out of the inner city bypass tunnel. It was closed for several days and it was back on track. But 25 million litres of water just shows the extent of the flooding that occurred in this area. This was a unique event. There have been comparisons with 2011. I've been, I lived through the 2011 flood in this city and I know what I saw and know what happened to my area. These areas in Albion got flooded then as well. But this was a much greater flood impact than we saw in our area in 2011. The impact on the road network, road infrastructure was much greater as a consequence. I think the measures that have been taken since to get the road network operating again have been fantastic, laudable. The first objective was to get the roads open again so that the material could be got out and the businesses could get on with the job of cleaning up their premises so that they could get back into operation. So I'd just like to say thank you to the BMTMC, thank you to the Congestion Reduction Unit, thank you to all the officers in what was field services, now what is PPI, for their work on the roads. Sorry, I was going back to my time as well councillor Marks. But fantastic that all the officers involved in the recovery did a fantastic job. Could things be done better? Councillor Strunk? Well, yes, always. And that's one of the issues that we'll address during the review of the impacts of this flood. But I think it's important to recognize right from the start that this was a significant and unique event, the likes of which we probably haven't seen in this city since, in living memory, certainly since before 74 and probably not back to the 1890s. Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair.
Thank you councillor McLaughlin. Further speakers? See no one rising. Councillor Wines?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. Very quickly, I just wanted to respond to a couple of notes there. There was a great deal of effort put into making sure that we could get the road closed signs out as quickly and as well as we possibly could. But in many ways, the reason that it wasn't as effective as we'd like is pure logistics and the fact that often to reach these roads, you had to get through other cut roads. And our teams weren't able to in many instances even reach those locations in the manner that we would normally have hoped. So that will be something under review, whether that can be done differently or better into the future. But it was a logistical matter, not a competence matter, I would say. It's purely the ability of the team to get to the location was hampered by just the enormity of just the sheer amount of roads that were cut at that point. Also, in response to councillor Shree, can I draw the council's attention to paragraph or line 36, group 36, that responds to some of his concerns? He said that the reason that it wasn't supported by, this proposal wasn't supported by officers, was to design issues and the issues around lack of accidents. The report says that the overall impact of implementing right turn bans from Gladstone into Prospect, Brook and Dorchester Streets would result in all northbound traffic between Gladstone Road and Stevens Road to divert into Ordenshaw, Emily and then to Ruth, which would subsequently increase traffic turning left from Ruth to Gloucester to access Stevens Road. And there was no right turn permitted from Ruth Street into Prospect and is not desirable to direct all traffic through one relatively modest street. And that was the concern, was that if we were to close those three streets, where would the natural traffic go? Would it be all forced, would one street be penalized to the benefit of the other three? And it wasn't a position that I was comfortable with and that's outlined within the report.
Thank you councillor Wines. We'll now put items A, B and D to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against? The ayes have it. We'll now put item C. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against?
No.
The ayes have it. City.
Mr Chair.
Councillor Landis.
I move that council now adjourn for dinner for a period of one hour, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
Councillor Landis has moved a motion for us to adjourn for dinner for a period of one hour and seconded by councillor Hutton. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against?
No.
The ayes have it. See you after dinner. Councillor Allen. Infrastructure please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday the first of March 2022 be adopted.
Second that.
It's been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Hammond that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 8th of March 2022 be adopted. Is there any debate?
Thank you, Mr Chair. At the meeting on the first of March, the committee received a presentation on the Creative Lighting Programme run out of Design Brisbane. This term, we have three major projects in the Creative Lighting Programme, namely Oxford Street, Mowbray Park and Nunda Village. We recently completed the Oxford Street project in Bolimba, which installed a series of illuminated artworks that line the popular Oxford Street shopping precinct, as well as two large budlit hoop pines at the corner of Riddell and Oxford Street. The series of 10 stylized light boxes designed by artist Belinda Smith drew inspiration from the iconic Peewee bird or the magpie as we commonly call it. It represents their lifelong partnerships and the importance of working together. The local business association was greatly involved in the project. The local business association was greatly involved in the project and the unveiling of the artworks was celebrated at their community uplate event. This project has been a fantastic addition to the local precinct, bringing new interest and activity to the location and helping the night-time traders. The next project, which council is currently undertaking, is in Mowbray Park at East Brisbane. After undertaking extensive consultation with the community, council receives strong support for lighting the large mature fig trees along the park pathway beside the river. We've progressed with a series of chandelier icicle lighting and traditional bud lighting, which will create a vibrant and enchanting space, as well as address some night-time safety issues. I look forward to seeing this project come to life in the near future. The last project on the list is Nunda Village, and investigations and stakeholder consultation will commence shortly. There are some really great opportunities for lighting in this location, and I look forward to plans coming together and seeing what the community favours. I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Allen. Is there any further debate? There being none, I'll now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against? The ayes have it. councillor Allen, clear the report of the eighth of March, please.
Mr Deputy Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the eighth of March, 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Hammond that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the eighth of March, 2022, be adopted. councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. In the meeting of the eighth of March, I provided a bit of an update on the City Planning and Suburban Renewal contribution to the flood response. The team was also obviously needed to be conscious of their BAU activities. We have a raft of activities that we undertake, particularly in Development Services, where we have to be in the field and have to support key projects across the city. And so while we were obviously very keen to support flood recovery activities, we couldn't take our eye off the important work that sections of, particularly of Development Services undertake to support the construction industry in the city. During the week beginning the 28th of February, when the waters started to subside, we had a number of the leadership team in Development Services contributing to the LDCC, so I'd like to thank those officers for their support there, and that was highlighted during the committee presentation. We also had quite a number of volunteers from Development Services and City Planning in general, who donated their time to support the mud army operations. I would also raise the point during the committee update that there were council officers who were impacted by the floods, and I think that, you know, we need to be conscious of the fact that a number of those individuals have a, a challenge, obviously, to rebuild after the flood. So specifically turning to Development Services, we have a number of statutory obligations that we need to fulfil, particularly around DA's, where we need to meet certain timeframes, and it was important that, notwithstanding the, the challenges we are facing as a city, that we continued to meet our statutory obligations, and I'm glad to say we did that. There was obviously a range of normal services that we needed to continue to conduct, like pre-lodgment services, our planning information officers needed to be active on the phones, our plumbing services team needed to be in the field, though we did have a number of cancellations in that week of the 28th of, of February, as you'd expect, but nonetheless, they were, needed to be there. Our engineering compliance guys were active, the Building Construction Management Task Force were active, and they continued to do the work that is required to keep projects moving along. I did also specifically touch upon the engineering services team, who played a key role in helping to support the, the modelling and the analysis and real-time updates on river levels and flooding impacts across the city. And obviously, they, they contributed greatly in that regard. So a really terrific support from the Development Services team, not only in supporting the, the flood recovery and the flood management piece, but also continuing to meet their BAU activities. We also had quite significant volumes through the, the Development Services Unit. We did ninety DA applications were completed, we undertook, six hundred and fifty plumbing permits were completed, so big numbers, and so the work was still being done. On the city planning front, we continued to push ahead with key projects, admittedly with somewhat reduced capacity, so neighbourhood plans and village precinct projects work continued. So certainly, while we did see some dilution of our capacity during the, the flood period, the BAU activity continued to move ahead, perhaps not at the pace that we're, we're used to, but they will quickly pick that up, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Allen. Further speakers? No one rising. I'll now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against? The ayes have it. councillor Davis.
Thank you, deputy chair. Deputy Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, first of March, 2022, be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Davis, seconded by councillor Mackay, that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the first of March, 2022, be adopted. councillor Davis, you've got the call.
Thank you, deputy chair. Item A was a presentation on Brisbane's sustainable water use. The Shrima Council has a longstanding commitment to sustainable water use, and our Clean, Green and Sustainable Strategy highlights the city's key sustainability achievements. Mr Chair, I am conscious that as we speak, many people in Brisbane are still dealing with the aftermath of the floods, but we don't control nature, and although Brisbane was inundated with floodwaters just a night ago, the fact is that until recently, South East Queensland over previous years has been under water stress with low rainfall in our dam catchments. The recent rainfall has resulted in the water grid sitting at ninety percent. However, council will continue its investment in sustainable water use to minimise the impact of any future droughts in the city. Council's strategic approach to sustainable water use includes monitoring water use, reducing water use and replacing potable water with non-potable water where practical. One of the ways we do this is through the Resilient Club Support Programme, which is delivered in partnership with the Brisbane Sustainability Agency. This programme is currently working with one hundred and seventy-four sites across Brisbane. Other initiatives have included establishing a koala fodder plantation in Wakeholme, which includes an irrigation system designed to provide drought protection and lengthened leaf production capacity to support local wildlife carers. We have also been designing and installing an array of stormwater harvesting systems across Brisbane since 2006 for the purpose of more efficient sports field irrigation. Another water smart project is the Better Shade Trees for Brisbane Project, which aims to achieve a fifty percent shade target for footpaths and bikeways in residential areas by 2031. The project will trial three new water smart tree, street tree technologies on a controlled group of street trees over a three-year period, including soap pits to capture water and stormwater runoff, green well water wells and tree frames which hold water and mulch around tree bases, and which will reduce the frequency of watering cycles and provide a more sustainable way to capture and use stormwater. Based on early trials, these technologies are showing promising signs of improving tree growth and canopy cover. Council has also begun to strategically deploy smart water metres on multiple asset types, including high-water using facilities such as pools, parks, gardens and depots. To date, seventy smart water metres have been installed at thirty locations across a variety of council properties to provide water use insights, and more installations are planned. While our city recovers from the recent floods, the Shrima Council is ensuring that we are investing in sustainable ways to mitigate the effects of droughts and use our water resources efficiently in the future. Deputy Chair, item B, the committee received a submission to formally name the sporting node at Booker Place Park, Bell Barry, as Stegman Sporting Complex, after Mr Tony and Mrs Lorraine Stegman. I know councillor Adaman is very supportive and very pleased that these two dedicated community members in Pullenvar Ward are being recognised. Item C was a petition requesting that council rename the wetland area of Donaldson Street Park, Norman Park, to Kapurum Salt Marsh Reserve. Council received a petition with three hundred and eighteen signatures requesting that council rename the wetland area of Donaldson Street Park, and the local councillor was in full support, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Davis. Further speakers? councillor Adaman.
Yeah, thank you, acting chair. I rise to speak in support of item B, the naming of the sporting node within Booker Place Park, Bell Barry, to Stegman Sporting Complex. Tony and Lorraine Stegman's association with the Bell Barry Sports and Community, Community Club is well-known within my local community, and when I outline it to the chamber, I'm sure councillors will agree this is a worthy recognition. Acting Chair, the Bell Barry Sports and Community Club was built in 1984, with many residents from the area, including Tony and Lorraine donating funds to help with its construction. The initial club building had no cooking facility, so on Friday nights between 1984 and 1999, when sport was being played, Tony, Lorraine and other volunteers operated a makeshift sideline canteen. The famous Steggers Burger remains a staple on the club's menu today. Their generosity extended to lending the club funds towards sealing the leased car park, and in 1998, they mortgaged their family home to finance a new kitchen and refurbishment of the club's bar area. Tony was very heavily involved in the administration of the club, and apart from an absence between 2006 and 2009, was on the club's committee from 1987. He was the club's gaming nominee, the liquor licensee when the club was granted its licence in 1994, and was responsible for the associated compliance. He also undertook the club's bookkeeping responsibilities. In the period of his absence, the club suffered some dramatic financial losses, and Tony was asked to return to oversee all operations, including finance. With Tony's dedication and countless hours of unpaid time, this debt was cleared in 2020, enabling the club to become viable again. Without the support of consistent and stable committee and the committee laying their trust in Tony, this could not have been achieved. Acting Chair, Tony and Lorraine have been recognised with the following awards in acknowledgement of their contribution to the community. In 1989, Lorraine was awarded a Community Service Award from the club. In 1995, Tony was awarded a Bell Barry Sports and Community Club Life Membership, and in 2000, Tony was awarded a Medal of the Order of Australia and an Australian Sporting Achievement Award. There has been strong community support for the sporting node to be named to acknowledge Mr and Mrs Stegman's contributions to the club and the community, and it was my pleasure to lend my support to this request. Acting Chair, in conclusion, I should note that the naming of the Stegman Sporting Complex covers the fields utilised by the Mogul Cricket Club, the Bell Barry Touch Football Club, the Mogul Football Club, but I stress, this excludes the main soccer field. Councillors may recall that last year, I spoke in support of the main field in front of the Sports and Community Club being named in honour of long-term Mogul Football Club stalwart Simon Clarke. Together with members of the Clarke family, we unveiled the new signs there just before Christmas, and that will forever be known as Simon Clarke Field. I look forward to seeing members of the Stegman family unveil their own signage nearby sometime in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Adaman. Are there any further speakers? No one getting to their feet, councillor Davis? In that case, we shall put the vote to the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Say no. The ayes have it. councillor Davis, eighth of March report, please.
Thank you, deputy chair. Deputy Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, eighth of March, 2022, be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Mackay that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the eighth of March, 2020, be adopted. councillor Davis.
Thank you, deputy chair. Last week, I provided a brief update to the committee on the flooding event. Deputy Chair, areas throughout South East Queensland, including Brisbane, experienced an unexpected flooding event because of prolonged heavy rain received in the days prior. As we know, approximately eight hundred millimetres was experienced across the city in just four days, and that was a significant amount of rain compared to the mean annual rainfall for Brisbane of just over one metre. The intense rainfall was due to a very slow-moving, low-pressure system which dragged moist air from the coral sea, and unfortunately, the east coast was already experiencing more rainfall than usual due to lanina conditions. The 2022 event saw flooding across the city, including river flooding, creek flooding and overland flow. The Brisbane River flood peak occurred on Monday, the twenty-eighth, at nine fifteen AM, and the height was recorded at three point eight five metres. As a result of this rainfall and major flooding peaks in our river, we saw an impact on our creeks and waterways. Kedram Brook suffered, with sections of the park, bikeway and footpath washed away as a result of the amount of water washing through that waterway. While on the other hand, we've seen some of our recent works along our waterways recover well, such as Hanlon Park and Downfall Creek. Our recent works along Oxley Creek have shown that they are flood resilient with minimal damage. However, we know that the focus will be on the waterway health and creek bank damage. And Brisbane Sustainability Agency partnered up with local community groups and the Defence Force to undertake a targeted clean-up of the creek to prevent any more debris washing through the Brisbane River and into Moreton Bay. Deputy Chair, since 2018, the Flood Resilience Home Programme has assisted two hundred and eighty-six residential properties to receive a home service, and one hundred and forty-four properties have had flood resilient works completed. We've been in contact with a number of residents that participated in the programme, happily reporting that the works conducted in their home had held up against the flood. We heard from a resident in Paddington, who was able to return to their home back to normal within days with no damage to their home, which is exactly the outcome the programme was designed to achieve. I also provided a high-level overview of how our city parks fared during the event. Our field officers responded to events like this in three phases. Firstly, they make the area safe. Secondly, they undertake a damage assessment on each site. And thirdly, they undertake any rectification works. Due to extensive damage across the city, you can appreciate that we are still within the first phase of making these public areas safe, focusing on cleaning up debris. However, our news officers were able to provide some preliminary modelling based on the known river heights to estimate the possible impacts in our parks. As of last week, the modelling had indicated that approximately nine hundred and ten out of our twenty-one hundred and eighty-five parks could have been impacted by either creek or river flooding, and this meant that approximately one in three parks were potentially affected. The second phase of damage assessment will give a better understanding of the exact nature of damage across our parks, and councillor Marks's officers have been out and about on the ground undertaking that assessment work. Because these details will help guide council in prioritising the recovery works. This includes reviewing the type of infrastructure and which weathered this event better than others, and if they didn't, there may be an opportunity during the rectification works, rather than just replace like-for-like, that council explores a more resilient type of asset. In regard to major parks, South Banks being adjacent to the river experienced significant damage. This included flooding to various buildings and assets and loss of power to the site. At the time of the report, sections of the parkland were still restricted due to these impacts. Victoria Park and Rome Street parklands received no significant damage, and both sites have services operating now as per normal. Both our city and Brisbane Botanic Gardens also did not suffer major damage, with only several pathways being restricted due to clean-up and water seepage. Sherwood Arboretum did, though, have some flood impacts. There is still work to be done, deputy chair, but I'd like to thank all of our officers for their efforts to date on this very important early work. I would just like to respond to a question that councillor Cassidy had last week regarding Ocean Crusaders. I understand that Brisbane Sustainability Agency worked together with both the Oxley Creek Catchment Association and Ocean Crusaders to facilitate some community-based waterway corridor litter and debris clean-up events. The first Oxley Creek Waterways Clean-up Event was held on the twenty-fourth of November, rather, October, 2021, at Oxley Creek Common, and was delivered by BSA in partnership with Oxley Creek Catchment Association. OCA also invited Ocean Crusaders to participate. Ocean Crusaders were valuable in supporting the removal of three hundred and forty-three kilograms of rubbish and debris from Oxley Creek at that event. A similar event was scheduled to be held on the sixth of March this year to coincide with Clean-up Australia Day. However, as Ocean Crusaders have been focused on removing and diverting pontoons and other large floating debris from the Brisbane River during and post the recent flooding, they were unable to participate. Brisbane Sustainability Agency is keen to continue to work with and support future Oxley Creek Waterways Clean-up Events, which aligns with the vision for Oxley Creek and collaborating further with OCA and Ocean Crusaders to do so. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Davis. Any further speakers? There being none, we'll now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Say no. The ayes have it. The ayes have it. Councillor Marks, City Standards please.
Mister Chair, I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 1st of March 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 1st of March 2022 be adopted. Councillor Marks, you've got the call.
Yes, thank you Mister Deputy Chair. We were planning on having a presentation from our Ashvelt Aggregate Manager regarding a drum replacement. I'd been out at Riverview Ashvelt Plant some couple of months previously, noticed this big, huge, big round piece of equipment on the ground, asked them what it was, and they said it was a replacement drum for the Ashvelt Plant, and that was going to be replaced when they next had a break in service. And I said to them, I thought that would be a really good presentation along with the video, if they took any video. They agreed, but unfortunately, technical issues meant that we couldn't have the presentation, so I'm hoping the committee will be indulging and allow me to bring that again at another time. Thank you.
Any further debate? Alright, we will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Marks, report of the 8th of March please.
Thank you Mister Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 8th of March 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 8th of March 2022 be adopted. Councillor Marks.
Yeah, thank you Mister Deputy Chair. As is the case with all the other committees, there was a fairly high-level overview of what City Standards had been doing with regard to the flood response, flood event and flood recovery. Something I'd said in the media a couple of times about this being a tale of two cities with river flooding and creeks flooding, I dare say it's actually a tale of three cities because we have creek, river and no flooding. So, we have a number of residents who have no idea what's happened in other parts of the city, and they're going about their normal business, which is quite okay. I know I went to a school ceremony with the student leaders, and there was a thousand primary kids there, and I just kind of asked them to imagine if they went home that night, took out all of their belongings from their whole house and put them on the footpath, and that would give them some sort of empathy of what people in other parts of the city are going through. Look, I won't go into any other detail, a lot of it's been said over this week, last week and no doubt in weeks to come. I just want to again take the opportunity to thank all those council officers out on the ground for doing the job that they have been doing in sometimes strenuous and uncomfortable circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Marks. Is there further debate? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on this item and pick up where I left off earlier in the meeting in detail. The second part of this flood saga, after having previously talked about the experience over the weekend of the 25th, 26th, 27th of February, and now talk about what has happened since in terms of the flood clean-up and flood recovery. On Monday 28th of February, the sheer scale of devastation in my ward became evident. Almost 200 streets were affected across Bald Hills, Brackenridge, Deegan, Sangate-Brighton, Boondle, Zoolme, Otagum and Gibung. On Monday morning, 28th of February, I inspected damage with Stirling Hinchcliffe, a state member for Sangate, visited homes. We started in Deegan, well technically Sangate, on Towne Street and met people there whose houses have been inundated. Cathy Joyce, who'd lived in her home with her late husband for decades, was forced to flee. As sewage washed through her home, she has now had to move to Biarwar with her daughter. Amy and Brent Glennon had just finished a renovation of their home in Bridge Street, Deegan. It had been totally inundated, will probably be demolished now. We spoke to Ivy Houston, who's lived on Station Road in Deegan since 1955. Before that, she lived in Shauncliff since the early 1930s. She'd certainly never seen anything like that weekend before. Her place didn't flood in 1974, or 2011, or 2013, or 2015. On Central Avenue, we saw residents who'd been living there for decades, as well as some who had just been there a few years. They saw pontoons break free, boats wash away and entire homes get inundated. As well, Andy and his son Pablo on Blackwood Road had just finished emptying their home when I saw them in the street. They were living in an Airbnb at the time. Diane, who had seen her family home inundated entirely and lost absolutely everything, was still in shock. Ken and Mary Maddox from Daulu Street, Deegan, were trapped on the second floor of their home, while the first floor and their granny flat were completely underwater. Mary's elderly father had been living in the granny flat, and they don't know now where he is going to live. Kelly in Townsend Street cried as I stood with her, looking at years' worth of possessions and family memories sitting on the footpath. Priya in Daulu Street said the only warning or update she had received were the ones coming from Annika Wells and my Facebook pages over that weekend. The damage really set in for Priya's blind father when he heard the water lapping at the top stairs of their second floor. The uninsured, the uninsured, underinsured and people who rent have been hit particularly hard. Days after losing everything, some renting residents were homeless and still are. The damage is widespread. In some areas, it's easier to find homes that weren't affected rather than ones that were. Streets like Barclay, Drew and Kift, Washington, Beetham, Prince, Princess, Townsend and Bayview Road, Aberdeen Parade, Waratah Court, Poplar Place, Gilly Street, just to name a few, were hit very hard. This flood wasn't contained to one or two suburbs in my ward, it touched all of them.
Point of order Deputy Chair.
Point of order Deputy.
I just ask the relevance, I have no issues with what councillor Cassidy is saying, but it's a GB speech, not the City Standard sit rep that was given last Tuesday for committee.
Well, it wasn't a sit rep given last Tuesday at committee. No, it wasn't. Well, you can't just sit there, you can't just sit there and commentate councillor Adams, really. Referring.
Point of order Deputy Chair.
Can I just deal with one point of order please? Councillor Cassidy.
Just sitting there and talking.
Councillor Cassidy, councillor Cassidy, please. Would you mind coming back to the report please? I have given you some leniency, but please come back to the report.
Thanks Chair, just referring to paragraph three in the committee report, the recovery efforts.
Who called the other point of order by the way? Right, okay, sorrys.
Yeah, thanks very much Chair, just referring to paragraph three, recovery efforts, and paragraph four, particularly council assisting residents with the clean-up and safe disposable household and flood-related waste. That's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, in the report here, it says household flood-affected waste, what this is, is people's lives. People's lives that have been taken out of their homes and put on to the curbside, and I think their stories deserve to be heard Chair. Now, I didn't have an appreciation of how widespread that flood was until I went to the streets forming what locals called the Deegan Dozen. At my own neighbourhood, I only made it back to my own house at 10:30pm the night before. Blackwood Road, Henderson Road, Finney Road, Hickson, Phillips, Stockham and Hassel Roads. And over the other side of Braun Street, in Niara, Biara, Utalong and Daulu Streets. I knew it was high down on the creek, but to see water that was 1.5 metres high, just three doors down from my own home, showed how extraordinary this flood was. I've seen some incredible shows of community support on the Monday after the flood. We saw teams from St Patrick's College and Brighton Roosters down at Deegan lending a hand, getting all of that flood-affected items out on to the curbside. And when someone would finish removing items from their own home, they would then move on to neighbours. We put the call out and found an army of volunteers to help strangers in their time of need. Almost immediately, we saw cooked meals shared around neighbourhoods. For days, people ran on adrenaline, then the reality started sinking in. The task was too big for some people. And again, we put together an army of volunteers in between local residents, St Patrick's College and Nudgy College. We had well over 100 volunteers out on Saturday 5th of March. I saw a lot of smiles, of gratitude and plenty of tears shed over generations of memories out on the curbside waiting for council to come and pick them up. That support has continued, and we're now working with community organisations and police and emergency services on continued outreach and financial support. We've been there supporting our community. We've had visits from Albo and Anastasia and Major General Elwood to hear the stories and learn the lessons of this disaster, to know what went wrong and what needs to be fixed in the future. While my expectations of the community I've lived in my whole life have well and truly exceeded, I have also never felt so distant and less part of council than I did through this entire experience. I was one of the councillors that did not receive the early sit reps from council's LDCC. I struggled to find out how information would be distributed and struggled to find relevant information early on. I've already outlined earlier today the poor communication out of council. There was absolutely no advice or warning for people who were experiencing flash flooding. There was no proper and prior planning for adequate sandbags and having them in more than one location on the north side of Brisbane. I spoke with the Lord Mayor on the night of Sunday 27th of February about the need for people to have advice about evacuations. I then received a call from the divisional manager, from a divisional manager, asking if I knew someone who needed an evacuation. I made clear that there were dozens and dozens of people needing those evacuations, and it became evident to me that council's position was that they needed to look after themselves and make those decisions alone. I was blown away. I remain stunned at how hollow council's ability was to respond to the unfolding crisis and then the clean-up. Not only does council under this LMP administration, Deputy Chair, not have enough staff to close roads that are flooded, we don't have enough equipment to do that. The lack of council workers on the ground have left residents dangerously exposed in events like this. The rollout of curbside collection was so slow that no one in council knew when it would even start, and it became very clear to me early on in the piece, the Lord Mayor was clueless about this as well. We've just had the extraordinary situation of council in the last two days, asking local councillors to nominate streets for a second pass of curbside collection. The very definition of a second pass is to revisit the places that have already been collected. So these requests make me worry that council has kept absolutely no records of which houses have received support to date. There are streets in Boondle, Zoolme and Gibung that haven't even had a first pick-up yet, let alone ready for a second pass over two weeks later. Internal communication is abysmal. Councillors used to get regularly updated disaster response manuals. I don't recall the last one I received. Our old Motorola radios were replaced recently, and we were told training would occur. That didn't. I honestly don't even know what they are for anymore. On Saturday 5th of March, around 3pm, I received a call asking if I wanted a busload of mud army volunteers. This is after spending the day in isolation from council, organising over 100 volunteers to help dozens and dozens of local residents who needed it. And no point throughout that week leading up to that point, did we receive contact apart from the spreadsheet that the deputy mayor sent from the mud army team. So to summarise Chair, I'm wrapping up now. There aren't enough council staff to respond to disasters. There isn't enough equipment in an event like this to close roads and produce sandbags. There was inadequate communication and no accessible evacuation centres for my community who were forced to flee from their homes. Council is the lead agency for disaster coordination. The Lord Mayor has failed. It is no wonder residents in my suburbs feel left behind by this LMP administration. There will be a lot of questions that need answering and a review of this LMP council's response to this disaster.
Further speakers? Councillor Cumming.
Thank you. I'll be fairly brief Mister Chair, Mister Acting Chair. We're very lucky in Winham, we had very little flooding. The Winham Creek burst its banks at a couple of spots, but the water goes into parks and reserves and not into anyone's houses. There was a year or so ago, the Winham Manly Leagues Club did an upgrade and were asked by council to provide a substantial upgrade of Winham Creek, where it runs past their premises. They felt a bit aggrieved at having to pay for it because they thought they actually weren't contributing to the load of stormwater much. That part of Wander Road used to flood quite regularly, and the water was threatening to run into shops across the road. Well, after the upgrade, which the Leagues Club paid for, it flowed very well and there was no flooding, which is one of the, potentially the worst areas in Winham Manly. So that was great that the council, together with the Leagues Club, had worked out a solution to that issue. So well done. My real problem is the sandbags and the lack thereof. We were told a load of about a thousand sandbags would arrive each morning and each afternoon. A truck would be sent down from Balimba, from Redfern Street, Morningside, the depot there, not Balimba, Morningside, sorry. But it only happened once in the morning, and then a couple of days later, some more sandbags appeared. But locals tell me there wasn't anywhere near a thousand. I got the manager on the phone, he said, sorry Peter, that's the best we can do, and you'll have to send everyone up to Morningside Depot. I think that's not adequate, and as councillor Cassidy has also called for, we need more sandbag machines, and we need to ensure that there's a greater range of places where we can pick up sandbags in these sort of crises. And it's not only the Winham Manly ward I'm talking about, the wards of Chandler and Doe Boy look to Winham Manly as well, and suburbs such as the 40% of Manly West I don't represent, Ransom, Gumdale, Wakely, Hemet and Tinglepa, they'd also benefit from having sandbags readily available at Loda. It's a great location to pick up sandbags, and unfortunately, there was none there for most of the crisis time. And finally, the curbside collection, I'd just like to say, we were all set, yeah, the timing couldn't have been any worse for Winham Manly for curbside collection because it was all ready to go when the flood hit. I appreciate other areas are much worse off than Winham, but what I'd like to see with the curbside election is to give us some sort of date, even if it's a bit vague, you know, by the end of March, you'll be picked up, or by the middle of April or something like that. Give us something to work on. People are very patient, some of the streets look an absolute mess and have that for weeks, but you know, patience is a virtue, but eventually people's patience will run out, so if we could get some sort of generalised time that the collection will take place, it would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Grievits.
Thank you Mister Chair.
Just one second councillor Grievits. Councillor Strong, can you hear me? Thank you. You've got the call councillor Grievits.
Okay, thank you. And I rise to speak about this report, and I think there are a number of issues that impacted on my ward, and I want to add them to the public record. I just want to start by saying that I believe our staff did the best job they can with very poor leadership from the administration, from the Lord Mayor and from the LMP, and I think that leadership has permeated down through the performance we've seen of council. And I think it continues to permeate down through the performance we see of this council. Overall, I thought the management of waste was appalling. And I draw, and it was interesting that councillor Marks talked about, it's really about a tale of three cities with flooding. I agree with you councillor Marks, I think it is a tale about three cities flooding, and I see it very politically. I see that the LMP part of the city got looked after very well. The rest of us got looked after recently, and Rockleigh came last. And the communication, I have to say, has been extremely poor. Not just poor, but extremely poor. There's been no effort to listen to local councils, there's been no interest in listening to local councils, and I think that's been your demise. And from my perspective, if you're not going to listen to me, if you're not interested in hearing me as a local councillor, then you can wear the media that's going to come out of that. So, it was interesting, the first thing that I noticed was we couldn't even get the roads blocked or closed. There were no signs available, and apparently all those staff were sandbagging. All the trucks were there sandbagging. That was Saturday morning, I rang flooding through on major roads in my ward, certainly Bow Desert Road, Marshall Road, there are a number of roads, and I just couldn't get signage. And that's amazing that council can't provide signage to say that's too dangerous to cross a flooded road. The second point that I make is that food waste. We had no waste collection obviously during the flood period, and people were throwing their food waste out. Many of their fridges had gone, much of their food had gone, so they needed somewhere to put it. Their bins had floated away or were full of water. So the food waste went out on the road with all their other waste. And the stench from that is pretty bad after it's been in water, after it's been hot, it's very humid. There was rotting food in the streets. The smell was really bad, and I thought this was like a basic requirement of council to ensure health and safety, you know, of our citizens, of our residents, but also of our staff, and we just weren't doing that. So I noted for the rest of the city, the food waste bins arrived on Tuesday, for my ward, they arrived on Saturday. And that was after numerous requests, numerous emails, numerous ringing people up, they arrived Saturday. And that was only after we did some media with the ABC, who couldn't believe that there were no food waste bins in Rockleigh. And residents backed that up with speaking on radio as well. So perhaps the Lord Mayor would like to explain, I know he isn't there again, I think he's out at Rockleigh at the moment. Why there was no food waste bins and why it took the LMP administration so long, took them almost a week to get food waste bins to the people of Rockleigh. And why they didn't bother communicating with me about that, anyway. Second point I'd like to make is on the Monday, it became evident that there were some homes down there with asbestos. down there with asbestos, where people were putting out it was wet asbestos, but it was still asbestos, wrote to the LDCC, what do you want done, what's the messaging in relation to asbestos, never heard back, Cars Officer will get back to you, never heard back. Surely, we went through this in 2011, surely we were prepared for people dumping asbestos when they were cleaning their houses out. There was no communication prepared, there was nothing ready. You know, I sort of wonder, anyway, it just amazes me. Anyway, eventually, I found from council officer, who was able to say, "Well, it has to be tied up and put in pieces of plastic and wrapped separately and put on the footpath." Well, you know what, it was too late. And it was too late because we didn't perform, because we didn't get that message out there. Because we were hopeless, you know, the leadership was hopeless. And then the doozy, doozy for me was no, while there was no communication with me, maybe the LMP thought it's smart and listening to the Lord Mayor tonight, actually say he doesn't want to communicate with me, that's pretty incredible, he doesn't want to communicate with one of the elected members of the city. I wonder, we got a dump, the LMP set up a dump in Acacia Ridge, next to residents' homes on a football field, where a memorial is where a young man died, and they put, there were virtually hundreds of loads of rubbish there. And it was building up for days, so that's where they were dumping the rubbish, I've been told it was for two or three days, it wasn't two or three days. It was for the week. I have so many complaints about that rubbish being dumped for the week. And it was dumped and there were piles of this rubbish and it had everything in it, it had food waste, it had nappies, it had old furniture, it had toilets, it had everything you could imagine. And I wrote to the Lord Mayor and the CEO and the LDCC and said, "What's this about this waste here? Why are you putting waste right next to residents' homes in a park?" And the response I got back, the response I got back from these people, the so-called leading, was, "Well, it's going to stay there until the 3rd of April." Got that in writing, black and white, you know, get over it, it's going to stay there. It wasn't until then, I thought, "Damn it, I can't get anything out of these..." Anyway, I won't say it. So let's go to the media, let's take it to the media. That's the only way this council listens. That's the only way this mayor and these LMP councillors listen. Let's go to the media. And it was picked up nationally. And it was picked up all over the state. And the shame of it was, it just showed what an appalling, appalling way we've handled these floods for our residents. So we took the flood waste away from one group of residents and we dumped it on another who didn't have a problem. And none of you had the gall to ring me. Not the Lord Mayor, not the Deputy Mayor, none of you. So you wear what you don't ask. If you think that it's smart not to consult with the local councillor, even an opposition councillor, then you wear the results of your actions. And I'm glad you did. Because it is appalling what you did to those residents. It's appalling those people couldn't be in their homes because of the stench. There is nothing about good governance in the way you handled this flood recovery, nothing. You know, it just reinforces to me the out-of-touchness that's going on in this echo chamber that you're in. Anyway, I'm really disgusted by what this council delivered. It was appalling, people should be ashamed of what they delivered. And it really shows to me that this administration has no interest and has no passion for our city. And I hope people remember this when it comes time for the next election because they've got a bunch of duds running the city at the moment.
Have you finished councillor Griffiths? Further speakers. councillor Maddick.
Thanks, Mr Chair, or Mr Deputy Chair. Where do you start?
Councillor Maddick, councillors on my left, we just heard one of your fellow colleagues in silence, I think you can offer the same courtesy. You can offer the same courtesy, don't give me the innocent look, please. Offer these councillors the same courtesy, thank you. councillor Maddick.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair, I'm sorry if I'm disturbing councillor Cassidy reading his book. Mr Deputy Chair, I've just, well, we're sitting here at, what is it, 8 o'clock, we've had a city that has been more dramatically affected than 2011. We've had a council and continue to have a council fully committed to the recovery of the city. Officers pulled off from different branches to do other jobs just to make sure that we've got the person power out there to help us in our roles. My ward was one of the worst affected in regards to this overall flood. There are many councillors here with severe flooding in their wards. Many of us on this side of the chamber would prefer nothing more to actually be in our wards right now, supporting our local community and listening to their needs and meeting their needs. Instead, we have to sit here and listen to the absolute garbage, to the diatribe and to the foul language of those opposite. I have never been more disgraced or embarrassed to be in this chamber with the opposition than I am now. Their mistruths, their creation of fact, their exaggerations are absolutely appalling. And I hope that you're still listening over there councillor Griffiths. And councillor Cassidy, I'm sorry if you're going to go get another book to read, that's fine by me.
councillor Maddick through the chair, please.
Yes, Mr Deputy Chairman. We had throughout this city, an cascading effect of weather intensification, from Saturday onwards, all of us were affected in different ways. All of us were dealing with it as quickly as we could, the Lord Mayor with the information that he was receiving from the bomb and the state government and the LDCC and everybody else, all of us as councillors trying to gather as much information as we could to get out to our communities and support them. And we had to deal with those as quickly as we could. And the impact was significant and in some areas, very fast. We had officers out there doing the best they could with the incredible number of streets that were locally flooded. And in some instances, not even being able to get to those streets to put up signage. And then on top of that, we had to deal with helping out our residents, sandbagging wherever we could, with me down at Rosely Village and people's houses, and there are councillors here that will tell all their stories of helping people to sandbag, of community, of residents getting in their trucks and vehicles and whatever they could get to, to get to the sandbagging stations with officers committing themselves, absolutely just flogging themselves, if I can say that, Mr Deputy Chairman, to get those sandbags filled and to help residents out. And then after we had those events on Saturday and Sunday and rolling on to Monday, we had officers continuing to do the work 24/7, we had LDCC baking its back, we had ENC working in all its particular roles around the clock, all of us working together, trying to get the information to the LDCC to coordinate so that we could work in a coordinated fashion to get those results out there. Emails being sent to us, sit reps being sent to us, us constantly feeding that back. Mr Deputy Chairman, we had an extraordinary situation, we had the worst rain event that this city has ever seen. And when you listen to those opposite, you think it was just another day. You thought that it might just be a light shower and that somehow council failed in its duty to deal with what was the most extraordinary rain event we've ever had. And Mr Chairman, I have to sit here as a local councillor and listen to that garbage. We should have finished this meeting hours ago. We have a motion before us still to listen to, that councillor Griffiths chose to raise at like 2 or 3 o'clock this afternoon. We're actually going to waste our time here replicating the same motion that we heard before. I am not in my ward right now, neither of these councillors in their wards right now helping their local residents because we have to listen to the politics of those opposite. How dare they stand here, sit here in this place and politicise the impact that this has had on all our communities? How dare they sit here and chastise this organisation, these council offices, this administration, everyone that has put their shoulder to the bone because we didn't do exactly what they needed, when they wanted it, on their side of the chamber? And we have to listen to that garbage here? I am absolutely ashamed to be in this place with these people. They are an absolute disgrace. I hope that the media of this comes out. I hope that your community see you for what you are. You are wasting our time in this chamber, listening to your garbage and your diatribe and your platform for your next reelection when we shouldn't be out there helping our communities right now. I have to give full credit to this administration, this Lord Mayor, this CNC for what they've done under incredibly difficult circumstances to help this city forwards. The most help we've had, Mr Deputy Chairman, in this hollow Venus, from the federal government bringing the ADF to help us clean these streets. What have we seen from this state government? Nothing! What I do see is picture opportunities from state Labour members going out to particular situations, dressed in their RM Williams boots and their clean shirts and pants, and getting in there and taking a photo of them. And then going back and blaming councillors on this side of the chamber for not doing their job. Mr Deputy Chairman, these people are a disgrace. I stand here, I will repeat that to them, and I know that Cassidy is listening back there, and you keep listening mate, because you're a disgrace to your community. Standing here and telling me about the hardships of your community as if it was distinct from anybody else's, my heart goes out to every resident in this city that was affected by this flood. There are people out there without insurance, there are people out there that cannot rebuild their homes, there are people out there that have lost everything, and we sit here and listen to their garbage when we shouldn't be out there helping them. We need to come together in this chamber as councillors, together for the first time in the history of this council in this chamber, for what is the most tragic event that has occurred in the history of this city. We don't need to stand here and point fingers at each other, I don't want to hear any more garbage from you about what you should have got or what you didn't get over on your side. You need to come to the table and we need to work together. Because this city needs all of us together. We need to help our residents get their lives back together as quickly as possible. We don't need to sit in this chamber and waste our time talking about motions, what about things that we should be working together on. So Mr Deputy Chairman, when we speak about this matter here, how about we get some decency? How about we get some honesty? How about we get some collaboration from each other for the first time ever so that we can get out there, not waste time in this chamber, get out there and support our residents? Because I'm telling you right now, I've got a heap of people in my ward that have gone through stuff just as hard as your people have. I've got people out there that have lost everything. You come down to Milton with me and look at those businesses down there, they don't exist. They can't afford the insurance premiums, they've lost everything. And I'm sitting here listening to you? Are you serious? Mr Deputy Chairman, we need to get real, those councillors opposite need to get real. And we need to start working together and stop picking at each other. Pull yourself together and start working. Start going to the Lord Mayor, going to the chairs, going to the LDCC, because we've got months of this. This isn't days. This clean-up is just stage one. For anyone that was in this place in 2011, you know what I'm talking about. We have a journey to bring a city back together again. Infrastructure to rebuild, people's lives to support, the emotional impact that it's having on them, the financial impact that it's having on them, they just want their lives back. They just want the opportunity to be like the rest of the city that wasn't affected. We can only do that if we stop this garbage and start working together. Mr Deputy Chairman, I'm putting the word out there, I'm hoping that some of this works its way through to the other side of the chamber, I really do. I doubt it will. Because they can't miss the opportunity for the perfect outcome to this whole disaster that's occurred. Mr Deputy Chairman, now is the time. Now is the time to actually act like an adult, act like a responsible councillor, put forward your grievances, put forward your grievances, because they're all legitimate, but let's work together. And let's not exaggerate the stuff that isn't supposed to be. Because there's a heap of stuff out there that we all need to work together on. And we will get there as long as we work together on this. And making sure that we support each other, that we get through this the way we should do, as opposed to those opposite. And good old councillor Griffiths over there who's on the phone having a nice chat with Griffiths or whoever he is. Because this is what this chamber's about. You see, this is what this meeting is about, Mr Deputy Chairman, and I hope these cameras are showing that. He's on the phone over there having a chat with someone because he doesn't care what we say over here. It's all about him, it's all about his conversation, it's all about the representations that he chooses to make and the ones that he doesn't choose to make. So Mr Deputy Chairman, at the end of the day, if I have to sit here and listen to this, well, I guess I have to. But I know that this organisation, this administration, has done its absolute best under incredibly difficult circumstances with the resources that we have. And we're going to continue to be out there and we're going to continue to do the work. We'll leave the politics to them and the doing to us.
Thank you councillor Maddick, your time has expired. councillor Maddick, I understand your passion, but can we have some silence, please? councillor Strunk.
Thank you Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on a couple of items in this particular report.
Mr Deputy Chairman, I'll beat him to the punch, I'll withdraw my statement and apologise to the chamber for my comment.
The statement was cheapskate scumbag. That's what this councillor just shouted out across our chamber.
And I withdraw my statement and I apologise to councillor Cassidy and to this chamber to my right.
Councillors to my right. Councillor Maddick, you've withdrawn your statement.
Mr Deputy Chairman, I wholeheartedly withdraw the statement and I genuinely apologise to councillor Cassidy for the comment.
Thank you very much. councillor Cassidy, did you have a point of order? No, okay, thank you. councillor Strunk, you've got the call.
Thank you Chair, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on a couple of items in this particular report. I suppose the first one that really, and it was listed at a previous report as well, and that was potholes. You know, those things that we all try to dodge and sometimes we don't. Last Sunday, no, Sunday before last, I lost a tyre in one of the potholes in what I call Pothole Alley, which is a boundary road between Rudd Street and Kimberley Road at Richlands. And the reason I call it Pothole Alley is because there's been, well before the floods, there's been a series of substantial potholes right along. And we've made multiple calls on these, even the former councillor for 16 years, Les Bryant, made it his passion to ring me every time he went over one of them. So consequently, when the rain bomb hit my ward, it was, the potholes just increased exponentially. And they still really haven't been fixed yet. And I know that we've been madly going around Brisbane filling as many potholes, but it's that maintenance.
Just one moment, councillor Strunk. We're in this chamber to debate, not have a game of charades across the floor. No, councillor Hammond. We're not playing charades, we're here to debate, we're here to represent the people of Brisbane, we're here to be adults. councillor Strunk, you've got the call.
Thank you. So it's that maintenance, that ongoing maintenance that we've been striving for the suburbs to get, that we see a lot of money being spent in the inner-city area that we're not really getting on those basic items like filling in potholes. So I just, councillor Marks, if you can just take that on board, between, former councillor Les Bryant would love them to be filled in, I lost a tyre on Sunday, or Sunday before last, council had to pay for that of course because it's a council car. But if you, you know, from, on Bounty Road between Rudd and Kimberley Street, if you can try to prioritise that, that would be very much appreciated. So the next thing I want to talk about a little bit is the creek flooding that was happening in my ward. And when I say flooding, that's not really fair because it didn't really flood much. What happened was some, a few years ago, council officer Chris Daly was given the task to make sure that the floods, or sorry, the creeks in my ward, especially in the Forest Lake area, especially those inflows into the lake, to be kept as clean as possible, right, to maintain that flow into the lake without too much, without too much stuff coming into the lake as well, into those traps. But he also did a lot of work on those creek areas around the ward. Now, we're very lucky to have Chris because he grew up in Anala and this was his, Forest Lake was his playground. Lake was his playground, as growing up as a kid, well before the development ever happened. And of course, he knows Duandala and Anala and Durek. So they've done a really terrific job, asset services have done a terrific job, and honestly, we had no flooding out of those creeks. And I went around, like every other councillor would have done here, go around in the pouring rain, just to have a look at what's happening on our wards. And I was just amazed how well they operated, right? So I just wanted to pay credit to Chris Daly and Tom McHugh, that of course is his manager as well. The other thing too is the ADF did a terrific job, I know, you know, they didn't have huge numbers, right, but what they did in those areas they targeted, they did a terrific job. But of course, a lot of our community groups and organisations did a lot of good work there in that, in some of that work as well. And I just wanted to acknowledge a couple of those as well, and I know it's not part of the report here, but I just want to acknowledge those as well. Our uniting church, Reverend Russell, unbelievable work he did with all sorts of issues that he was dealing with, whether it be homeless, because a lot of people are homeless, of course, as we know, and just foodstuffs and clothing and things like that. Also, I want to acknowledge the fundraising that's been happening, and I'm sure it's been happening in other places as well, with our Vietnamese community that raised over $27,000 within a week or so for both the Afghan refugees as well as the flood victims as well. And they got a Ukraine one coming up shortly as well. So they're terrific, they've really helped out as well. And of course, our national seniors who donated a lot of stuff as well to the cause as well. So I'll just finish my comments there, Deputy Chair, and thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? No, councillor Marks, write a reply.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. Not quite sure what to say to all of that, I'm guessing potentially that a lot of that was general business, so that's okay, I'm happy to hear that it's general business in my report. I just have one thing to say, I just want to apologise to the council officers, the one who've been out there working day and night under extremely difficult circumstances, and if they're feeling that their work was not good enough or unappreciated, I apologise to you all, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marks. Councillor Cumming. We will now put the report of the city standards, sorry, my apologies, I'm just still coming to terms with what's happened in this place, on the 8th, for the 8th of March. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
All those against, the ayes have it, thank you very much. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 1st of March 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landis that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee dated Tuesday the 1st of March 2022 be adopted. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. We had a committee presentation on job tracking status and notification, and it was a very interesting presentation, and I really want to thank Shane Hackett for the wonderful way in which he delivered the information about something new and exciting that should be coming our way, hopefully by June 2022. The committee was shown how some of the tracking is going to be able to improve the way that we can provide customer satisfaction. And can I take this opportunity to thank Shane and his fantastic team at the contact centre? As you know, this presentation was made on the 1st of March, and it was a very strange time of things happening, and I know that not only Shane, but all of his team in the contact centre were doing the most magnificent job. And I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, and I hope that they haven't been offended by anything that has been said in this chamber this evening, because I know that they have done the most amazing job. And on that note, I'll leave it to debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Howard. Any further speakers? No one rising, we will now put the report, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no, the ayes have it. Councillor Howard, next report, please.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 8th of March 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landis that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Meeting dated Tuesday the 8th of March 2022 be adopted. Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. Mr Deputy Chair, I could spend 10 minutes talking about the magnificent work that has been done by the Lifestyle and Community Services, but I don't think I have to, because I think that each and every person in this chamber, and not only the people in this chamber, but every resident of Brisbane knows just how hard every council officer has worked to bring this city back. And I think that some of the debate here tonight has just been appalling, I think it's the only word that I can use. So I want to take my time to address Tash Tobias, who is the Divisional Manager of Lifestyle and Community Services. And I want to say to Tash that I want her to tell each and every officer that she represents how much I, as the Chair of this wonderful committee, appreciate what they have all done. And I want to say to her that at least the people on this side of the chamber totally, totally understand the hours and hours and hours and hours of work that have been put into this city. And talk about dedicated to a better Brisbane, I don't think that can be said anything better than the efforts and the work that each and every council officer, not just in our Lifestyle and Community Services, but I know how much those people helped. I know that at the evacuation centres, I know the contact centres, I know that they were just, they were there with the mud army. We really need to understand that this is a team effort. Everything that councillor Maddick said before is just so important. We all have to get behind this recovery, every one of us. And I think that if I can say nothing more than tonight, but through you, Tash, can you please pass on our sincere thanks to each and every council officer that truly is dedicated to a better Brisbane?
Thank you, councillor Howard. Is there any further debate? See no one rising, we will now put the report, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, noes, the ayes have it. Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday 1st of March 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Huang and seconded by councillor Hutton, I'm going to call it, that the report of the Financial and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 1st of March 2022 be adopted. Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. The Finance Committee had a presentation from our Human Resources branch on the various employment programmes undertaken by council. There are eight different employment programmes being delivered this financial year, providing pathways for people entering the workforce and to support the participation of groups facing disadvantage. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the officers in the Human Resources branch and across council for their work in delivering these programmes. I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Is there any further debate? No one rising, I'll now put the report, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Huang, the 8th of March report, please.
Yep, thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday 8th of March 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Huang and seconded by councillor Owen that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday the March 2022 be adopted. Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. In the meeting, councillor Cunningham gave an update on the early response to the flood event from officers in Finance and City Governance area of council. The Chair also provided much of this information to the chamber last week. And I would like to say that on behalf of the Lord Mayor, we thank all the officers involved in the LDCC for their tireless efforts in coordinating the responses to this unprecedented event. And also, as part of the flood recovery, our Corporate Finance Team and Support Services Centre has worked swiftly to implement the Lord Mayor's announcement of rate relief. The online application form went live yesterday, and we have already received many hundreds of applications. We hope that everyone who was affected by the flood and who needs assistance apply for the rebate, and I hope all councillors will assist in promoting the application form. I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Huang, is there any further debate? See no one standing, we will now put the report, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no, the ayes have it. Councillors, we move on to consideration of notified motions. Councillors, I draw your attention to the notice of motion in item five of the agenda. Councillor Griffiths, would you please move your motion? You with us, councillor Griffiths? I think you're still on mute, councillor Griffiths. Councillor Griffiths, can you have a look at the microphone symbol on your laptop? Might have a light on it, can you hit that one?
Sorry, I'm having difficulty.
Councillors, councillor Griffiths, when you're ready, can you move your motion, please? You've just muted yourself again, councillor. There we go.
You got me now?
Yes.
Okay, here we go. Brisbane, can you give me that Brisbane City Council reintroduces a voluntary flood buyback scheme?
Seconded. The motion as read by councillor Griffiths and seconded, sorry, the motion as read by councillor Griffiths has been seconded by councillor Cassidy. Is there any debate?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, yep, you want me, yep, okay. Sorry, the sound is going in and out. Look, I just, this is a really clear, simple motion, and it is to say that the voluntary home buyback scheme was introduced in 2005 by a Labor administration. We did have a Liberal mayor then, but it was a Labor majority. In 2018, the programme was cut by the LMP, even though the LMP had actually commissioned a report in 2011 following the floods then, and that report actually reinforced the need for more voluntary home buyback and for it to be part of a comprehensive programme of dealing with flooding in the suburbs. I believe that that programme made a lot of sense, it made a lot of sense for the residents I represented and many residents, certainly in my area, there were over 50 residents chose to sell their homes and move off the flood plain, and council bought that land back. The land is very low-lying land, and the land, these homes were flooding not just once every 10 years, they were flooding once or twice a year in their living rooms. And the difficulty with that was that many of us didn't, weren't aware of that. But when this expert panel came together, they actually thought that this was a good idea. The mayor at the time, Campbell Newman, thought it was a good idea, and the Liberal majority actually thought it was a good idea too and voted for it. Since then, we've had a change of mayor and we've lost that programme. What's become evident to me and most people is that flooding is going to occur more regularly, climate change is with us, and this is one of the side effects of climate change is the impacts on our environment and on our cities, so I believe we need to be proactive. Hence, I'm calling for the reinstatement of this programme, as well as complementing it with the Sustainable Brisbane Programme, which actually looks at assisting residents to raise homes. And with that programme, I think we can get a balance that's right for our city. I note that neither of those programmes are means-tested, and yes, it costs a lot of money to do that, but it resolves a problem that we're dealing with now every 10 years. And I gather a very expensive problem, not just for us, but for state and federal governments. I would say that I really believe the programme should be voluntary, so residents should have a choice about buying, and the Lord Mayor is right, towards the end of the programme, there weren't as many people selling through the programme, and that was because over time, my experience is people down at Rockleigh or areas that flood see a beautiful green landscape and beautiful parks, and they say what a great place to live, and they're not aware of the flooding impacts or the severity of the flooding impacts there. So I really think those homes are better off the market altogether. The few things I would say in relation to this is that it's very important to deal with this in a systematic way and not be bringing this to the chamber every few years. I think we've actually got to have an approach where we say we've got to deal with climate change, and dealing with climate change is not just about carbon credits, it's also about looking at the way we respond to our physical environment and keep residents safe. Just out of interest, we had a debate earlier today, earlier tonight, where a resident, where I represented a resident and asked for a meeting with myself, the Lord Mayor, and a resident in Galar Street. It's interesting, though, I've had a phone call from that resident who tells me that he's already met with the mayor. So the mayor, during the meeting, this meeting tonight, has actually gone out and met with him, didn't obviously want me there, which I think he'd made pretty clear. And that resident said that the mayor did actually make a commitment to reintroducing this programme and to also extending the sustainability programme. So can I take that as feedback, that it's certainly being looked at by the administration? And I think, I will, and I know the resident is, certainly we're both taking that as a win for getting some common sense back into this voluntary flood buyback scheme. I also understand that the Lord Mayor is looking at it in relation to the upcoming budget. So I don't think that's been a bad day in council to be able to get the Lord Mayor out to a resident in Rockleigh in Galar Street and have him meet with that resident, with his media reviser, I understand, and actually see firsthand what residents in Rockleigh are going through. And I look forward to having the mayor out more times to be with more residents, and maybe I've got to move this motion each week for different residents, so that he'll go out there and visit them and see their problems and see the issues they're facing. I really call on all councillors to support this motion for the reintroduction of the voluntary buyback scheme. It is what we need to do for the future of our city and the future of a changing climate. Thank you.
Is there further speakers? Councillor McGoughlin.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I rise to join this debate, and note that it was under the former Lord Mayor Campbell Newman that the task force into suburban flooding was created back in 2005, and Lord Mayor was, as councillor Griffiths said, saddled with a Labor majority in cabinet. And why did Campbell, why did Campbell Newman as Lord Mayor see the need to have a task force into suburban flooding? It's because this is what the Labor administration had done when there was a Labor Lord Mayor had put into place in response to flooding. Nada, absolutely nothing, nada. So it certainly was a recommendation of the task force that the Lord Mayor then created. When we're in our, the millennial drought, by the way, and everybody thought he was crazy for starting to talk about flooding at the time, but that was what the Lord Mayor introduced through the flooding task force. And I'd like to quote from the annual report from that year, because it wasn't just the voluntary home purchase scheme that was introduced, that was one of the mechanisms that was undertaken under the task force, which included, and I'll read what it says about the voluntary home purchase scheme. The Flooding Task Force Voluntary Home Purchase Scheme facilitates the voluntary purchase of properties from residents so that they can relocate from homes affected by one-in-two-year flood events. Council has created a policy for the scheme. Council has created a policy for the scheme and now has several properties under negotiation. The flooding task force voluntary home purchase scheme is the first of its kind in Queensland at this scale, with council being the first to establish and fund its own voluntary purchase program. But it was amongst several other elements that were also introduced, including investing in local flood advice, forecasting and warning systems, and installing a new telemetry stations in three locations, and making sure people are aware of the results of their data, not covering it up, by the way. Created the compensatory earthworks planning scheme policy for proposed earthworks in a waterway corridor. Developed external education programs to improve the community's understanding of flooding. Reviewed council's legal liabilities around flood risk management and provided flood advice. Spent $15 million on improving the capacity of council's drainage network to reduce local flooding, including the management and clearance of vegetation in local creeks. That's from the annual report, 2005, 2006. So these are the things that were introduced on Campbell Newman's watch to make sure that the previous administration's failure to provide this information to residents of Brisbane was made absolutely clear. It was on his watch that it was introduced. Now, it's important to note that the 2011 Flood Commission of Inquiry did also reference the voluntary home purchase scheme, which council had been undertaking, as a good program, addressing those properties more susceptible to flooding. It also suggested that other levels of government, the state and federal government, consider supporting the expansion of the scheme. And this is what the, the scheme says, what the Commission, the Queensland Flood Commission of Inquiry said. It says this, I quote, "Property buyback programs are expensive to administer, and the lack of available funding is a major limiting factor to their implementation as a flood, flood risk mitigation measure. Given the cost involved, property acquisition by government tends only to occur in very high-risk areas and only where other flood risk mitigation measures are insufficient to protect lives." It goes on to say, "Councils are unable to obtain funds directly from the National Disaster Resilience Program in this regard. It is for the Queensland Government to determine each application's eligibility for funding." So clearly, there's support for programs like this, but clearly it needs to be supported by other levels of government as well. So, under the scheme that was introduced by council, solely by council and funded solely by council, there were 112 programs that were purchased under the scheme since 2006. But the reality is, as we're well aware, that many of those property owners who are eligible did not wish to sell. So that was where the flood resilience program came into place, to help people who were in flooded areas deal with flooding so they could stay in situ where they wanted to stay without being forced to, to move on. And that's what has been going, and that's what's been happening with that particular program. But, Mr Deputy Chair, given the Lord Mayor's support for continuing the voluntary flood buyback scheme, which we all support, I, I would like to move an amendment acknowledging the errors that were in the initial motion and to make some changes to the motion. So, Mr Deputy Chair, I move that we add the words, we add the word supports after the word council, change the word reintroduces to reintroducing, add the words flooding task force, change the words flood buyback to home purchase scheme, and add the words subject to state and federal funding support. So, Mr Deputy Chair, this motion is now being distributed.
Seconded. Councillor McLaughlin, I'm assuming you've got an amendment?
Thank you.
So it's, just, just one moment, councillor McLaughlin, I'll read the proposed amendment that has been seconded by the deputy mayor, that Brisbane City Council supports reintroducing the flooding task force voluntary home purchase scheme, subject to state and federal government funding support. Councillor McLaughlin.
That's correct, Mr Deputy Chair. This is entirely consistent with the Queensland Flood Commission of Inquiry when it referenced buyback and land swaps. And it, it is the reality that the amount of money that could otherwise be committed by council to flood buybacks is insufficient to meet the needs without the support of state and federal governments. So this motion makes absolute sense if we add those words, subject to state and federal funding support, and supporting reintroducing the, the, what was initially introduced as, and, and it shall remain, the flooding task force voluntary home purchase scheme. I support this amendment and I hope that councillors in this place will do so.
Thank you, councillor McLaughlin. Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. The motion was very clear and straightforward, and if the administration didn't want to support that, they could have just not supported it and made that argument. But what councillor McLaughlin, who is supposedly the independent chair of councils, now come down to enter this debate, obviously because this administration doesn't, or the Lord Mayor doesn't trust the relevant chair to do so. This amendment substantially changes the original motion, and councillor McLaughlin's argument for this amendment is that it's consistent with something else, not consistent with the motion that's before us today. So this substantially changes that motion that was before us today, which is that Brisbane City Council reintroduces a voluntary flood buyback scheme, and substantially changes that to say that Brisbane City Council supports the reintroduction of a flood task force voluntary home purchase scheme, subject to state and federal government funding support. So there's the weasel words in there. So this administration, so the Lord Mayor, as we've heard from councillor Griffiths, has gone out to this resident's house and has sold him a pub, has said, "I'll come and meet with you, I'll tell you what you want to hear, be quiet, go away," and while he sends his henchmen in here to do the dirty work, to make sure, to make sure that this administration doesn't deliver, doesn't deliver on this. So councillor McLaughlin gave us a lovely history lesson, and basically explained that when, you know, Campbell Newman was elected premier soon after the 2011 floods and 2012, obviously decided not to, obviously decided not to fund, to co-fund the voluntary, the purchase of, of homes. We've had the federal Liberal and National Party governments, friends of, friends of successive LMP Lord Mayors in this place not come to the party and provide funding support since 2013. And this LMP administration, despite councillor McLaughlin getting up here and saying, and crowing and saying that it was all Campbell Newman, the Liberal Lord Mayor and later LMP Lord Mayor, who did this all by himself, and it was all the LMP apparently, cut the funding in 2018. So they cut the funding to this program in 2018. This Lord Mayor has gone to local residents who have been affected time and time again and said, "Sure, sure, we will reintroduce this program," then sends councillor McLaughlin here to amend the motion that's before us today to make sure that it doesn't, make sure that they don't have to deliver on this program in the budget. So we can, we can just imagine that the Lord Mayor, well, there'll be a line item in there that says, "We'll allocate X amount of dollars over the next four years, subject to federal and state funding for this," so this Lord Mayor, again, doesn't have to deliver on his promises. You can, just like the Green Bridges, that's right. And we know that they're softening up, and we'll see that in next week's council meeting, softening up for the slashing of that project as well. So, Chair, we won't be supporting this amendment because the motion before us is very straightforward. It was a council program that ran for a long time. It's a council program that is appropriate to go forward. And what is happening here today, after we just heard some strange diatribe lecture from councillor Matic about all working together, not playing politics, we see the LMP coming here and play politics, not just play politics in this place, but also play politics with the lives of residents who have been deeply affected, deeply affected out at Rockleigh by what we've seen over the last two weeks.
Just one, just, oh, thank you, councillor Cassidy. Can I have a bit of silence in the chamber, please? I'm having trouble hearing everybody, as well as the machine doing the grinding outside. So, and councillor Griffiths, if you're not speaking, can you please mute your microphone, please? There's a lot of scratching coming from your laptop. Thank you. Any further speakers? I see, I see nobody standing. Councillor McLaughlin, would you like to sum up, please? You have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. Look, I think this change is entirely logical. It, it says that we support reintroducing the flood task force voluntary home purchase scheme, and logically making that subject to state and federal government funding support. It's an entirely, entirely laudable objective, reintroducing the flood, the flooding task force voluntary home purchase scheme, recognizing the need for funding support from state and federal governments. This, this is the essence of the original motion, although acknowledging that it was a home purchase scheme, not a flood purchase scheme. But anyway, so that's, that's been corrected on the way through. It is the flooding task force voluntary home purchase scheme, subject to state, state and federal government funding support, entirely consistent with the sorts of views that came out of the Queensland Flood Commission of Inquiry, entirely consistent with every other examination of the, the voluntary home purchase schemes in flooding circumstances, recognizing that council's resources are limited, and if this is to work, it does need the support of the other levels of government. I, I think this amendment is entirely sensible, and, oh, sorry, the motion is now entirely sensible, and I ask all councillors in this place to support it.
Right, we will now vote on the acceptance, acceptance of the amendment. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division seconded.
Division called by the deputy mayor and councillor Landers. Ring the bells, please, thank you. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Kim, councillor Marks. Victor, can you ask them to move inside, because they're still standing at the desks?
I think that's the picture, I think it's the back.
All right. We're going to settle with that. All right. Yeah. All right. Councillor Griffiths, just for the sake of the record, councillors, please, can you indicate which way you wish to vote, please? Yea or nay?
I'll be over on the, with the Labor team.
To my left, thank you.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 70 in favour and 4 against.
Thank you. The amendment is now the substantive motion. Councillors, are there any further speakers? Councillor Matic?
Thank you, Mr Deputy.
Just one second, councillor Matic. Councillor Cumming, I heard that.
I'll just repeat what I said.
That's not the point.
I apologize, I withdraw.
Can you turn your mic on, please, so I can get that on the record?
I withdraw my comment.
Thank you.
And apologize to councillor Matic.
Thank you very much. Councillor Matic, you have the call. Councillor Owen? Yes, if you're going to ask a question, you rise in your seat and call for a point of order. But we're not going to do that because councillor Matic has the call. Councillor Matic.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chairman. I'm not surprised, I expected something from the Labor Party, that's the way they act. Mr Chairman, Deputy Chairman, I rise to speak in support of this motion and what it represents, because it actually represents reality. It's important to understand the background in order to understand the motion itself. In 2003, Campbell Newman then, as, as the Lord Mayor candidate, made sure that, one of his strongest focuses was around what council was doing at the time with its flooding reports. Because at the particular time, under the Quinn administration, there was a report that they had that was done by the officers in an assessment of overland flow and flooding, a report that was not favorable in their minds as to what impacts that would have on the local community across the city. And so for a period of almost four years, they withheld that report in order to try to work out what they were going to do with it. It actually came to light, and Hedley Thomas at the time wrote an article in the Courier Mail. And the matter had actually been referred to the CCC, well, at that time it was the CMC, and the article was Crime Body Probes Flood Level Cover Up. And the article itself clearly states it, that the Crime and Misconduct Commission investigators have begun probing the Brisbane City Council's cover-up of findings on flood levels. The investigation began as Lord Mayor Tom Quinn, Tim Quinn strenuously defended the council's actions in failing to provide residents with information from the Brisbane River flood study. It has held that study out of public sight for four years. And so that was the history of Labor in council when it came to managing flooding and information to, to, to residents, to cover up the bad news because they didn't know how to be honest and accountable with the electorate, with the voters, on what impacts that would have on their home. So go forwards, Campbell Newman is elected in 2004 in a split council, and he has to deal with a ALP majority. But he's committed to making sure that he delivers on his commitments to Brisbane residents, and one of those is about flooding and about flood reports. And so he wanted to make sure that council was open and accountable in its reporting, that the information was easily accessible, and that residents had the, the information or the ability to also take steps themselves to address overland flow and flooding. And so in 2005, in February of 2005, he announced what was then called the Lord Mayor's Task Force on Suburban Flooding. It was a comprehensive investigation across the city, in particular hotspots. The process was quite hands-on, that it involved residents directly who were impacted as stakeholders. It had experts, community leaders, council officers, and the oversight of, of Campbell Newman as Lord Mayor. And in September of 2005, that report was released, and it covered a number of important factors around, again, accountability and openness of the information for residents, residents having the tools before them to ensure that they could also manage flooding on their land. And the third important factor was what was called the voluntary buyback scheme. So it was Campbell Newman initially who introduced that report to the, to, to the city. He released the report in September, and in November, it came to the chamber as a formal ENC. We heard councillor Griffiths just before say that it was the ALP who actually introduced it. It's important that we do correct the record, but I'll use words not mine, but of a fellow councillor of his at the time, Victoria Newton, who I'm sure is listening at the moment, she's a policy adviser, who says, "Yes, Mr Chairperson, I wish to speak on item G briefly. First of all, I would like to say that I welcome the Lord Mayor's Task Force on Suburban Flooding, or Creek Flooding really as it is known. And I am to congratulate the Lord Mayor, Campbell Newman, for bringing this together and for Civic Cabinet bringing this forward today." So, Mr Chairman, when we speak about what this administration, what this administration historically has done, it is this side of the chamber that has focused on these things. It has never stepped away from its responsibility and its commitment to Brisbane residents in a flood-prone city, and it always continues to do so as it does today. When you interestingly look at the speech of councillor Griffiths on the 15th of November in Ian, in the, in this chamber at the time, he welcomed the report and then immediately started to criticize the Lord Mayor for not providing enough funding, and criticized the Lord Mayor for the timeframes. He said it was a beginning, but it wasn't good enough. In fact, when I listened to him speak just before in this report, I thought he was practically repeating the speech that he gave in 2005, not acknowledging who first brought it in, but simply criticizing automatically, and speaking about the residents of Rockleigh and his ward, as he does as local councillor, but again, not supporting but criticizing. And it's fascinating, Mr, Mr Deputy Chairman, when you look at this, because you would make it think that somehow this administration, or this administration historically has failed the people of Brisbane, and that the ALP has done so much in order to support... the people of Brisbane, and that the ALP has done so much in order to support the people of Brisbane in this particular initiative. But it's interesting the fact that councillor Nichols at the time, who assisted the Lord Mayor with putting the budget together, said this. Thank you, Mr Chairman. It refers to the Lord Mayor's Flooding Task Force, and I think if you're going to have a report that has been prepared, you also need to have an understanding of what was not done that led to the report being here in front of us. Here we have the establishment of the Lord Mayor's Task Force on Suburban Flooding in February 2005. Nothing about a Lord Mayor's Task Force in February 2004, 2003, 2002, nothing any earlier than February 2005. What we had at that stage, in the terms of understanding flooding, was a series of reports in relation to creeks, but it was not available to the public. So, this Lord Mayor at the time introduces this voluntary purchase scheme, the ALP has never even thought about doing something like that. And when he does do it, it's not good enough. And then through the years, it continues to be not good enough, despite the millions of dollars that this administration historically has invested in it. Now councillor Griffiths speaks and has always spoken about this scheme, forgetting the term that it's actually voluntary, and choosing instead to simply put it out there as if people will fall over themselves to take this option up. But the reality of the situation, Mr Deputy Chairman, is actually quite different. In 06/07, when the scheme was introduced, there were 108 properties approached for purchase. The total at that time was 11. In 07/08, 39 approached, eight purchased. In 08/09, 21 approached, 11 purchased. In fact, the numbers continue to be so low, it was not until the 2011 flood that 32 were approached and 25 were purchased. That in itself was a record amount. Of the 347 properties that were approached in meeting the test of a one in two year event, there was only 112 people that took that option up, one third. And interestingly, when councillor Griffiths talks about how his ward is somehow being forgotten, the reality is that his ward had 42 of the 112 throughout that time. So he literally had one third of all the purchases in his ward, as opposed to any other ward that was flood affected or met the criteria at the time. So the reality is very different to the picture that councillor Griffiths speaks of. And this administration has continued to evolve the programme, year upon year, adding funding to it as it was required, reflecting the fact that a lot of people within those flood prone areas, Rockleigh being one of them, knew where they lived, and lived with it, and did not want to sell their homes, because they dealt with it in the ordinary course. And that's the point that councillor Griffiths is choosing to avoid in all of his speeches, about the fact that this is a voluntary scheme. And with the support of the Lord Mayor and with this amendment that we've now made, to properly reflect the reality of the Commission of Inquiry report, it is still a voluntary scheme. So, we have at this point in time, one of the most catastrophic events that this city has ever faced, and so there are now people asking for that option. However, at the end of the day, how many people will take it up, we don't know. But this administration has a long track history of actually listening to and meeting the needs of the community. As councillor Griffiths has just said, the Lord Mayor has met with one of his constituents, and spoken to him about this very scheme. And yet, we're being criticised for it. Mr Chairman, at the end of the day...
Your time has expired, councillor Maddick, thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr Chair, I'm speaking on the amended motion. It just goes to reinforce for me, what snakes LMP are, and how they really need to be out of power.
Hang on, hang on one second.
And what a snake the Lord Mayor is. So to actually...
Councillor Griffiths.
Sorry?
We're not going to use that language.
Snake.
We're not going to call people snakes. We're talking to the amendment, we're talking to the amended motion.
You can give me a warning.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, councillor Owen.
Mr Chair, I find that councillor Griffiths' language is offensive, and I ask you to withdraw.
I won't withdraw it, no. So, I think what is appalling...
Councillor Griffiths, just hold up for one second, will you, please? Can you consider withdrawing what you just said?
No, I won't withdraw it.
Then in that case, I'm asking you to withdraw it.
No, I won't withdraw it.
Okay. Councillor Griffiths...
Can I speak now?
Sorry, just give me one second. Councillor Griffiths, I consider that you are displaying unsuitable meeting conduct, and in accordance with section 21.4 of the Meeting's Local Law 2001, I hereby request that you cease calling councillors' names and refrain from exhibiting that conduct. You have the call.
Are you going to have me escorted out by the police too?
Councillor Griffiths, to the amended motion, please.
This is the only democratic institution in the country that escorts people out by the police.
Councillor Griffiths.
It's an LMP institution, it's just appalling. Anyway, back to the debate.
Deputy Mayor, councillor Griffiths, to the amendment, please. We are here to exercise the business of this council, to the amendment, please.
And that's what I'm trying to talk about.
Point of order, Chair. Just one second, councillor Griffiths, sorry, you've got another point of order. Point of order, councillor Murphy.
Chair, I just ask you to show some leniency on councillor Griffiths. Councillor Owen had to lead the flood recovery in his ward because he was clearly doing other things at the time. I'm sure he was a bit distracted by what's happening here in the chamber at the moment.
Councillor Murphy, I do not consider that an appropriate point of order. Councillor Griffiths, please continue.
Does he get a warning, Mr Chair?
I've just told him it's not an appropriate point of order, can you please continue?
Okay, just like the fairness of the chairing here...
I appreciate that you think I'm fair. Please continue.
I don't actually. The point here is that the administration are running for cover. They cut this funding, they cut this programme, the LMP cutter. All these councillors sitting here, you cut it. It has been in my budget submission forever, it's been in the last two budget submissions to the Lord Mayor. And neither the Lord Mayor has chosen to refund it, or any of the LMP councillors sitting on that side of the chamber. So, it doesn't surprise me that the Lord Mayor went out and visited a resident, and led him to believe that the programme was coming back in this budget. What he didn't tell him was the con that he was putting him through, was that it's subject to state and federal funding. Well, it has never in the past been subject to state and federal funding, the funding has always come from council. And the programme, I believe, should continue to come from council. And yes, let's try funding from the state and federal government. I notice that none of your mates, when Campbell Newman got in and went off to be premier for three years, and caused havoc on the state, he didn't come through with any funding. And I notice your little mate Scomo hasn't come through with any funding, even though he's got $400 million sitting there now. So you can't even get money out of those people, couldn't get money out of those people, so what hope are you going to have of getting money out of other governments? In fact, I don't think, listening to councillor Maddick, I don't think there's any interest in these residents. I don't think there's any compassion for these residents. I think they're seen as residents in Rockleigh who chose to live there in a flooded area and tough luck. That's what I think Liberals are saying. And you may as well just say it upfront, rather than go around in this sort of measly little way that you do it. I'm just astounded that you, it's such a simple motion, that you couldn't support the reintroduction of the entry flood buyback scheme, flooded home buyback scheme. And I think it's probably very deceptive of the Lord Mayor, and I know he's cunning and he's gone out there and met with this resident, and this resident actually thinks council is going to do something about this. Well, the sad thing is, he's fooled, he's duped, just like people thought we were going to do something about flooding in Rockleigh. There's just no genuineness to what you're saying. And, you know, it doesn't surprise me. And I'll continue to be on the resident's side to say that we should be funding this as a council, and we should be resolving these issues of residents who are affected by flooding. Because I've been in their homes, I've seen what they go through, and I think my role in this city is to bring that to the attention of this chamber. And I get it, you're Liberals and you represent wealthy people and you represent, you're very conservative.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
And that's what you believe.
One second, councillor Griffiths.
I get all that, I understand all that.
Councillor Griffiths.
But I don't think there's anything to be mean about it.
Point of order, deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair.
My pleasure.
Can we debate the substantive motion, not play the man? The imputing motive that we have listened to for the last five minutes is totally out of line.
Deputy Mayor, I understand your point of order. Councillor Griffiths, can you please come back to the amended motion, please?
Well, I think I'm saying the truth, I don't think, I don't think I'm saying anything. I don't think I'm saying anything that's not accurate.
Councillor Griffiths, I'm speaking.
I think you've changed the motion.
Councillor Griffiths, I'm speaking!
Sorry, I can't.
I am speaking. When I speak, you stop.
I couldn't hear you speaking.
Can you come back to the motion, please? We are not here to play class politics, we are debating the motion.
Are you participating in the debate?
No, can you just debate the motion, please?
If I want to raise class politics, I'll raise class politics, and if you don't like it, that's your problem.
It's point of order, Mr Chair.
The motion is very much, the motion is very much against the people of Rockleigh.
Please.
This is democracy, you know, people are allowed to actually say things that you don't like.
One person speaking at a time, and when I speak, everyone else stops. Everyone! Those to my left, those to my right, and those in front of me, you stop. Am I clear? I'm not asking for an answer, by the way. Deputy Mayor, your point of order. Councillor Griffiths, this is not funny.
I think you're a joke.
Just one second, deputy mayor. Councillor Griffiths, as you fail to comply with the request, sorry, I've read the wrong one, I'm going to warn you one last time, otherwise I'm going to record in the minutes your conduct. Now, I'm trying to address a point of order which I am meant to do by the Meeting's local law. And if you cannot give the councillors who raised that point of order the respect to stop, so I can hear it, so I can address it as is required by the Meeting's local law, God help you. Deputy Mayor, your point of order, please. No, one point of order at a time, councillor Owen, sit, please. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I just asked for a ruling on the inappropriate conduct of the continual imputing motive when you've asked councillor Griffiths to stop that.
I understand it's a long night, I understand there is a lot of emotion in the room. I am happy to give councillor Griffiths some leniency because I know how impassioned he is about this motion. However, I will ask councillor Griffiths to not call people names, to cease speaking when I am speaking, and to get back to the amended motion, please.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Councillor Owen, your point of order.
Yes, Mr Chair, I'd like you to, I seek a ruling from you in regards to councillor Griffiths' inappropriate conduct, defying your ruling to not call councillors in this place names. He was warned for calling councillors on the side of the chamber a snake, and he has now called you a joke.
Councillor Owen, thank you for your point of order. I clearly believe I have shot a couple of shots across councillor Griffiths' bough now, and if he does not wish to behave, well then we will move further into the red tabs, and I'm pretty sure he's aware of that. Councillor Griffiths, the amendment, please.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Just, in summary, I'm just really disappointed, this has been changed by the LMP who cut this funding, and I think it's a really retrograde step for our city, and it's also a retrograde step for the future of the city in terms of, we know there's going to be massive environmental impact into the future, and it's not a progressive thing to do, we're good at that.
Thank you, councillor Griffiths. Any further speakers? Councillor Davis.
Well, thank you, Deputy Chair, and in all the time that I've been in this chamber, I've not heard anything like I've just heard now. Councillor Maddick spoke during his contribution about all of us seeing devastation in our wards, some at different levels, in my own ward, pockets where people had never seen overland flow before, found that flooding went through their homes. To sit through this debate and hear the language coming from councillor Griffiths in such a demeaning and unnecessary way really lowers the tone of the debate. I'd just like to rise, Deputy Chair, to support the amended motion. And I want to put on record from the outset that the Lord Mayor has been out in Rockleigh tonight, he has been out meeting with a resident in relation to the flood impact on their property, which was the subject of a motion earlier today. And I just want to let the chamber know that I understand that it was a positive meeting with that resident. Deputy Chair, I wasn't here in 2005, and so what I thought I might do is go and get the minutes from that meeting, and councillor Maddick referred to a number of contributions during that debate. And what I can tell you, it's like Groundhog Day, listening to councillor Griffiths tonight, the way he spoke about other councillors' residents in a way that really showed nothing more than class politics, no personal insight.
Councillor Murphy.
I take that interjection, it was disgraceful. The then councillor for, I think it was still Hamilton Ward, councillor Tim Nichols, responded to those class politics claims by councillor Griffiths, and he was 100% right. Whilst we do appreciate that councillor Griffiths is concerned and is passionate about the people in his community, every single councillor in this chamber feels exactly the same about theirs. And to hear what came from councillor Griffiths as if the world stops in Rockleigh is really unfair to all of those other residents that were impacted by the recent flooding events here in Brisbane. The comments from councillor Griffiths that somehow that the voluntary home purchase scheme was some sort of Labour initiative is incredible. And this from the party that brought you the flood cover up. You couldn't get information about flood mapping unless you made a special appointment with a council officer. But it was an LMP administration that made that information available to all residents. It was an LMP administration that continued to update that information so that residents could understand in very clear and easy terms the impacts that could occur in different types of flooding scenarios when weather events occur. I would note, councillor Maddick, some other comments by councillor Newton back in 2005. So the issue is enormous in its task, and of course, that's perhaps why administrations in the past have not ventured forth, because it was a too hard basket item. That's exactly right. This was an item that required some element of courage and risk in a political context to do it, and to bring it forward and to start to address some of these issues. And that's exactly what Lord Mayor Campbell Newman did by setting up the task force. It was an LNP Lord Mayor that decided that council needed to be looking at issues around flooding. Brisbane is built on a flood plain, it is part of our reality. And as I think it might have been councillor McLaughlin said, or might have been councillor Maddick, that the then Lord Mayor was looking well in advance of any flooding before 2011, because he could see that we needed to start to address and consider the impacts of flooding across this city. In his summing up in that debate, the Lord Mayor made some observations, which I... In his summing up in that debate, the Lord Mayor made some observations, which I'd like to share with you tonight. In relation to the discussions this afternoon about the flooding task force, well, I am just fascinated by so many people who got religion so quickly. I used to sit in that gallery for around two years and look down here, and I never heard a peep about these matters. Councillor Griffiths, who was admittedly a more recent arrival into the chamber in 2003, well, I never heard him say any of these things. I never heard him once, ever, ever speak about the needs of his local residents, never once. Never heard him calling for a task force, never heard him point out that there were these problems down in his area, never heard him asking for raising of houses or purchasing of houses, not any of those things. Mr Chair, Mr Deputy Chair, to come in here and start to make the accusations and comments that councillor Griffiths did is simply unacceptable. This is a chamber for debate, and particularly in circumstances that we find ourselves in in the aftermath of a flood, we should be, as councillor Maddick said, be working together. The Lord Mayor today indicated in the strongest terms that he was open to bringing back that scheme, but also to improving the flood resilient homes programme, because it's not a silver bullet buying back properties. And as the chamber heard today in the contributions, that not everybody that might sit or be eligible for their home to be purchased under this sort of scheme wants to move from the house that they're in. So having alternate options for people to consider, like the flood resilience home programme, which has been very successful through its pilot stage, and as we know as a result of these flooding events, hearing back great stories from residents who have participated in the programme, the Lord Mayor considering expanding that. But what we need, Deputy Chair, is additional funding from the state and federal governments so that we can address more properties and provide more opportunity to get people onto the flood resilient homes programme once we get through the pilot scheme. Mr Deputy Chair, I'm very proud to be part of a team and to work with a Lord Mayor that does care about all residents in this city. To hear from councillor Griffiths that the Lord Mayor doesn't care about people in Rockleigh is absolutely shameful. The Lord Mayor was very clear in question time today when he spoke about how he cares about everybody in this city. For people that were impacted by the floods, we all have very special thoughts and our hearts go out to them. So, Mr Deputy Chair, I fully support the amendment that has been put forward tonight, and I expect that the councillors in this chamber will understand that the way that we can move forward and look at purchasing more properties is with the state and federal government's support. We have a budget of $3.1 billion. If we purchased every home that was flooded in this event, the 20,000 homes, you would be looking in excess of $16 billion. Now, I know not 20,000 homes would need to be purchased, but the way that councillor Griffiths was speaking tonight, he'd have no idea how many homes might but need to be considered. He has no idea what the cost would be to the city, so I think it is incumbent on us as a sensible, as a fiscally responsible council, to do what we can within our budget, but to call on the state and federal governments to step up and stump up and help the residents of Brisbane prepare for flooding events in their homes. Thank you.
Any further speakers? I see no one rising. We will now put the substantive motion to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it.
Division seconded.
Division called by councillor, sorry, deputy mayor and councillor, seconded by councillor Landers. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Councillor Griffiths, if you still have your ears on, we do need to know how you're voting, otherwise it will be recorded as a no vote. Thank you, councillor Griffiths. Your intention, please, councillor Griffiths?
I'll go with the Labour team.
Thank you. Plaques, when you're ready, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the vote has been 21 in favour.
Thank you. The motion is carried. Councillors, are there any petitions?
Yep.
Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I present an electronic petition that has been lodged from residents in Stretton and another person who lives in Cooper Roward, about 10 people in regards to the parkway at Stretton.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Deputy Chair. I have one petition on behalf of councillor Shree, which I believe has been emailed through regarding road safety concerns on Ashington Street West End, and also one from residents at Ibis Court, Deegan, calling on council to do rectification works on broken foot paths.
Thank you. Councillor Strunk. No, no. Any further petitions? No, councillor Landers, can I have a motion, please?
Mr Deputy Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Second. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Strunk that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor's general business. Are there any statements required as a result of the Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? I see no one rising, and I'm assuming councillor Wines, you're not standing? You're off? Okay, well done. Are there any items of general business? I see no... Oh, councillor Cumming.
Just very quickly, in her report earlier, councillor Davis mentioned Ocean Crusaders. It's a great local organisation, just want to give them a plug, they're based in Loda. They do great clean-ups in Morden Bay, they've taken tonnes of rubbish off some of the islands around Morden Bay, like Green Island, St Helena and the like, and they've got, they do get money out of the jobs that they do, but they've also got large numbers of volunteers who assist their projects as well. And they're very clever with technology, they've done projects down south in the Yarra River in Melbourne, and they've got developed vacuum cleaners that operate in the water and pick up the rubbish and everything, so they've done a great job. They started in Loda probably about five to 10 years ago, again Ian Thompson and co, and they've done a great job, so I just wanted to give them a plug. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cumming. Are there any further items of general business? I see no one rising to their feet. Councillor Griffiths, no. I declare the meeting closed.